Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. The September 20, 2006 meeting of the City Council is called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open-meeting law. These proceedings are being presented live on KCLV Cable Channel 2 and are closed captioned for our hearing and paired viewers. The council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the city's website at www.kclv.tv. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV Channel 2 and the web the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 p.m. and also on Friday at 4:00 a.m., Saturday at 7:00 p.m., Sunday at 7:00 a.m., and the following Monday at 1:00 p.m. It's our custom now to make this announcement and tell you that the building is protected by a state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler system. So if alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate through the exits here and once outside, assemble on the Las Vegas Boulevard side of the property. And there'll be employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. Now, I make that announcement not because we have any indication whatsoever that there could be an issue, but in an abundance of caution, I've been advised to do so. So before we proceed with the agenda, I'd like everyone to please rise for the invocation. Our invicator in honor of Hispanic Heritage Month is Mr. Silvano Ramos, Spiritual Leader. Mr. Ramos will provide our invocation in the ancient pre-Columbian language of Otomi, native to the Mexican state of Hidalgo. Thank you for being with us this morning.
Yo soy de la comunidad Otomi.
I am of the Otomi community.
Y vengo porque mi gente quiere pedirle a Dios...
And I come because my people would like to bless you.
...que bendiga el trabajo de ustedes.
To bless you and your work.
Para que cuiden bien esta ciudad.
So that you may take care of our community.
Y toda esta nación entera.
In all of our nation.
Que Dios los bendiga.
May God bless you.
Y gracias.
And thank you.
Thank you very much. Before our pledge, I'm pleased to welcome Mariachi Oro, who will perform a very special mariachi arrangement of our national anthem.
[singing] Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light? What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air? They proved through the night that our flag was still there? Oh, say, the death-star's spangled banner yet wave? For the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I budge you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thanks for joining. Thanks for performing outside today. I don't care what anybody says, I like my shirt.
I like the Italian shirt.
I have never been blasted, the way I've been blasted this morning by my fellow council members. I think it goes together. Does it go or not? Okay, forget about it. Okay, this is the ceremonial portion of our agenda, and for the first item, we'd like to recognize the September 2006 Employee of the Month. To assist in making this presentation, I'd like to ask the Director of Information Technologies, Joe Marcela, and Information Technologies Manager Lonnie Richardson to come up to the podium. Fellas? And now, I am pleased to announce that the September 2006 Employee of the Month is Anthony Willis. Anthony, please come forward. I see that. Anthony is a senior GIS analyst with the Department of Information Technologies and has been with the city since March of 1999. Earlier this year, the city was preparing to enter into a contract with an outside vendor to develop an online interactive mapping service. In less than a week's time, Anthony conceived the idea of using a free web service and developed an amazing prototype. As a result of Anthony's innovative work, the city did not enter into the contract and saved $50,000. Anthony has used his technology to develop interactive maps for a number of online services, including traffic cameras, parks, and historic locations. These maps and applications make it much easier for citizens to find information and request help online. Additionally, he designed the maps and applications to be easily modified for other projects, which has increased productivity. So on behalf of myself and the rest of the City Council, I'd like to congratulate you on this honor. Congratulations.
Anthony, we're very proud of you, and we're really pleased to give you this award. What happens in IT is a lot of folks are usually enamored with technology. What's different about Anthony is he's using that technology to enable services for the citizens, and we've got some marvelous services on that website. Part of what's kind of unique and neat is that his contribution has helped our website become number four in the United States, according to the Center for Digital Government, Best of the Web. So congratulations, we're extremely proud of you, and thank you for your contribution.
Anthony, I think you realize that you have the admiration, the gratitude of everybody on the GIS team. You bring energy to every task and project that you take on and volunteer for, and we are very proud to have you as part of our staff. And a special thanks to Neighborhood Services, who allowed us to steal him from you. Congratulations.
Mayor and Council and City Managers, Joe and Lonnie, I want to say thank you for this award. I was really surprised, they got me pretty good yesterday. They had a whole lot of rumors going around that the department we were reorganizing and Joe was gonna retire and a lot of things, but they got me pretty good. I want to thank my family who's here today, my beautiful wife, my brother, my parents. My wife doesn't get on me about sitting around piddling with this stuff on the weekends, trying to figure out some new thing to play with, so I appreciate their support. And the GIS team who's here, Chester and Judy and Bob and all the guys upstairs, and we have the best GIS team in the country, I believe. We do a lot of great stuff. I don't do this by myself, and I'm just part of a great GIS team. So I really appreciate you guys' support as well. And Greg, he started this, he nominated me for this, I want to thank him for his support. Every time I had a question or needed some help with something, Greg was right there. So I really appreciate your support as well. Thank you very much.
And Joe, if Anthony worked a little harder, we'll be number one.
We only have to displace three more cities.
Okay, well, let's do it. For our next item, Councilman Weekly will recognize Hispanic Heritage Month with some special awards. Councilman?
Don't start, man. All right, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Well, today I am very honored and pleased today to recognize some outstanding leaders in the Hispanic community. As the mayor pointed out, we are in celebration of the Hispanic Heritage Month, and today I'd like to bring up and introduce to the Las Vegas community, I mean, many of you already know these folks because they make an outstanding contribution to our community. I'd like to begin by presenting an award for the Outstanding Community Service Award to Sylvia Vasquez. Sylvia, come on down. How you doing? Sylvia's with the University Medical Center, she organizes mentoring programs for inner-city schools and does an outstanding job. Our next awardee this morning is Mr. Eric Lopez, an outstanding student activist. Eric is a UNLV student representative on the Latin Chamber of Commerce Board and has been a key person in organizing college and high school students, and we're very proud of Eric for all of his hard work. Our next awardee is Carlos Zeta. Carlos. Okay, don't see Carlos here, but we'd like to recognize him. He's with Community College of Southern Nevada, is a college and instructor and a mentor to many Hispanic students attending college. Next, we'd like to recognize Ruben Cuean. Ruben's an outstanding political activist, he's run a lot of grassroots campaigns, and we're very proud of Ruben as a young man. He was just awarded his, he's a new assemblyman, ladies and gentlemen. Proud of Ruben. And next, we'd like to recognize Jose and Gustavo Gutierrez. It's a father-and-son team of Tortillas Incorporated for Outstanding Entrepreneurs Award. Los Arcos Tortillas is a, this is a local company, started in 1979, and the first tortilla factory here in Nevada. And next, we'd like to recognize KINC Univision, who assisted us. This year, we hosted our annual Back to School Fair, and it was a huge, huge success again, and we thank everyone who showed their support. But without KINC Univision, I mean, this could not have been possible, and we thank them so much. And today, we have representatives here with us, Chris Roman, Karina Barcina, and Adriana Arrevalo. And we just want to give all of these folks here a round of applause for making an outstanding contribution in celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month. I'd also like to, as we continue this celebration here today, you all saw the beautiful performance here in our plaza area this morning, and in our office, we're continuing the tradition. We annually host a Hispanic Youth Leadership Summit, where we bring about 250 Hispanic students together to talk about different leadership skills and opportunities, education, health, commerce, if you will, and I'd like to recognize a young lady who's been outstanding in my office and helping to make sure that we keep our finger on the pulse in the Hispanic and Latino community. Kelly Benavides, if you'd just come down and be recognized, please. And she's bringing on Carlos with her. Here's Carlos. Hi, Carlos. Good morning. Oh, good morning, okay. How you doing? Okay, all right. This is Kelly Benavides, ladies and gentlemen, one of my liaisons in my office, and want to give her a nice round of applause for all the hard work that she does. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
For our next item, Councilman Ross will recognize some outstanding young athletes. Councilman?
Thank you, Your Honor. Appreciate this opportunity. It's no secret that some of the greatest young athletes in this city come from the And the game is on. It's my privilege today to honor and recognize yet another great group of young athletes from Ward 6, the Lone Mountain Little League 2006 11- and 12-year-old All-Star Team. And, boys, when I call your names, come on up here, but sit right there for a minute. These athletes were selected as the top players from all of the 11- and 12-year-old teams in the league. They had to endure long and hard practices to prepare themselves for the tough competition in the district and state tournaments. After rolling through the District 4 League Tournament, going 4-0 and outscoring their opponents 34-13, they went on to Reno and the state tournament. Over 120 supporters from the Lone Mountain Little League went to Reno, there were more people there from Las Vegas than the Reno teams had at the games, from what I understand. The team needed that support because they were up against some powerhouse teams from the north, but they were like the little engine that could. They believed in themselves and what they could accomplish. But by relying on each other and playing as a team, they defeated those powerhouse teams and emerged as the 2006 11- and 12-year-old Little League State Champions. And I want to, yeah, give them a round of applause. Before I bring them down here and introduce them to you, I want to read a portion of an article written by Kevin Stott from The View about this team. "By winning the state title, Lone Mountain qualified for the West Regional held in August 4th through the 12th at Al Haughton Stadium in San Bernardino, California. In its opener in the Golden State, Lone Mountain was defeated by River Park Little League 9-1, the Northern California representative. Lone Mountain got an easy win in its next game when Snow Canyon Little League, the Utah champs, decided not to play on a Sunday for religious reasons, so the game was awarded to Lone Mountain Little League." The team manager, Dave Hernandez, says this in this article. "Everyone was asking, 'Where's Lone Mountain Little League?'" Because everybody was expecting Pecole or even Mountain Ridge. And our running, pardon me? Or Central? Thank you, thank you, Mayor Protem. And our running joke going up there was, "We're from the wrong side of Interstate 95 because people, because nobody knows where we're from." That was our rallying cry as we went through the final game, because Paseo Verde, they're the big fancy houses, and we're the little blue-collar neighborhood up there. Ladies and gentlemen, and I'd like to introduce to you the 11- and 12-year-old state champions out of Ward 6. And as I call your names, boys, come on down here. Blake Chide. Blake, you hear? Come on down here, Blake. Cameron Coombs. Logan DeRosier. David Garcia. Jordan Godman. Jordan, come on down, buddy. Garrett Goss. Where's Garrett? Brendan Graham. A.J. Hernandez. I know A.J.'s here. Colin McCray. David Sauer. Zach Skipper. Did I miss any coach? Tyler LaBaron. Oh, I did, I did miss one. Tyler LaBaron, come on down here, Tyler. Now, take a good look at these boys. Now, they didn't do it on their own. I'd like Dave Hernandez, Tony LaBaron, and Lico Chavere to come on down here also and represent their team. Take a good look at these faces, because you'll be seeing them on TV one day in the World Series. Dave, you want to say a few words? Oh, thank you, Dave. Say a few words about your team.
Just want to tell everybody, it was just a magnificent group of young men we have here, and, but most of all, want to thank them for their hard work and dedication, but also our parents, league, and our community. It was really how our community pulled together behind these boys that I think that helped talk them a lesson, that when they saw that, how a community, how a group of people can get together for a common goal, how we can really rally around and have that support. And it really helped us out as we went up north to Reno, because it was something else, you know, traveling, going up north against, you know, and the teams up there were just fantastic, but they were able to pull it together, dig deep, and really use that community support. And so I want to thank all of you for the support that you give the youth, and whether it's time, money, whether it's coaching, whatever you guys do, just keep doing it, because we have such a tremendous community here in Las Vegas, and it was just fantastic to represent all of you at the state tournament, and then going into California and have these, you know, teams from all throughout the West talk about, you know, what a great, great group of young men we have from Las Vegas. So again, thanks. It's awesome.
Right on, Dave. Dave, don't go away. Dave, don't go away. On behalf of the City Council, too, we're gonna give you one of these very valuable signed baseballs from the City Council, and it's gonna be of great value one day. Now, these boys, these boys didn't get here just because they've got great coaches and a great manager and they're great themselves, but I want moms and dads to stand up and be recognized for their great efforts in supporting their boys. Thank you, thank you very much.
That's great. Good job, fellas. Good job. Good job, guys. All right, now, Councilman Wilson will recognize a local student for earning a national scholarship. Councilman?
Thank you very much, Mayor Goodman. It is truly a privilege for me to present a certificate this morning to Joseph Sabaski. And Joseph, I'd like you to come forward today, and Jim Hart, would you please come forward as well? Hold your applause, let me tell you about this young man. I want to tell you about an organization as well. This organization is called the First T. The First T is an initiative of the World Golf Foundation. The focus is to give young people of all backgrounds an opportunity to develop through golf and character education, life-enhancing values such as honesty, integrity, and sportsmanship. The First T of Southern Nevada is one of 205 First T chapters across 48 states, reaching more than 675,000 young people. The First T organization of Southern Nevada provides over 2,000 hours of free golf and youth developmental programming through the Danny Gans Junior Golf Academies, Open Clinics, and the Southern Nevada Junior Golf Association Tour. This past year, First T sent 70 juniors to various tournaments around the nation, including Los Angeles, Tucson, Atlanta, Portland, Texas, and San Diego. First T has awarded more than $250,000 in continuing education scholarships. They also granted four four-year college scholarships. First T of Southern Nevada is ranked number four among all the First T chapters. First T partners with more than 40 local golf courses for development and competitive programming. Each year, the Royal Bank of Scotland, in conjunction with Charter One and Citizens Bank, presents Achievers of the Year Awards, and Joseph is the recipient of that award. These awards recognize outstanding participants for succeeding in school and their daily lives as a result of their experience with the First T. The program goal is to positively impact youth by rewarding selected participants for exemplifying one or more of the First T nine core values by demonstrating leadership, community service, teamwork, overcoming obstacles, and improving school grades and attitude. Joseph Sabaski won the Western Region Award for $1,000 and was invited to the PGA Championship in Medina, Illinois, and it was announced at the dinner, he was the winner of the $10,000 So it's my pleasure, Joseph, before I have you and Jim say a few words, to present you with a certificate of accomplishment. And here's your certificate. I also had a set, have a set of very special City of Las Vegas golf balls. They're too small to get everybody's signature on. And also a key to the City of Las Vegas. And before we... Jim, you are the First T Director of Golf, is that right? I'd like you to say a few words, please.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here this morning, and it's always special when we are able to bring one of our young people before you and the community and let you know how well they're doing. Although, I do want to make a slight adjustment to the numbers there. There are actually 250 chapters in the First T network, and we also have chapters that are international, and we were ranked number four of all those chapters. So we're doing some pretty strong things here in Las Vegas. And it's a pleasure to have Joseph here representing our chapter before the city, but we want you to know how special he is and how special his award was. Actually, this award is not so much for golf as it is for living your life. And First T is a golf program for juniors, but we have a major component, which is our life skills, developing young people. And to be very honest with you, Joseph received that award because of that side of our programming, because of every day, the way he lives his life, and he's only 16 years old, but let me tell you, he has achieved some things that many of us take for granted in overcoming some pretty strong obstacles in his life. And for that, he was recognized, and that's a tremendous accomplishment for a young person that's 16 years old that will have that with him for the rest of his life, and he has also represented the city very well in our chapter. So at this time, I'd like to present Joseph.
Thank you, Jim. I'm a junior and, I'm a junior and magnet student at Cannon Springs Leadership and Law Preparatory Academy, and someday I wish to become a lawyer. In which a scholarship will help me pursue my goal. At this time, I would like to thank the City Council for holding this special meeting, and also the First T and the Royal Bank of Scotland. I especially like to thank Danielle Glad for nominating, nominating me for the award, and of course, to all the First T coaches, Jim Hart, Mark Fritz, Mark Wilson, and many more. If I thanked all of them, we'd be here all day. Most importantly, to my family for all the support that they have given me throughout the years. Also, the Cannon Springs Golf Coaches, Coach Myers, Coach Taylor, and Coach Hernandez for introducing me to the game of golf. I am very humbled to have received this award. I know that there's a lot of kids that have gone through a lot of troubles, difficulties through their life. As the years go by, I try to practice the First T's nine core values: respect, courtesy, judgment, integrity, honesty, sportsmanship, perseverance, confidence, and responsibility. I will attempt to teach all these values that I have learned to everyone I meet in my life, especially the younger participants of the First T. This very important scholarship is greatly appreciated and will help me with my future schooling. Thank you.
Good job. But a couple of things. Number one, as Councilman Ross so appropriately did, Joseph's family is here and friends, so would you please stand up and be recognized? Let's have a round of applause for them. And secondly, Joseph, how many holes in one have you accomplished? Four, five, six?
It's all luck.
It's all luck, okay. Well, you're gonna strive to get that first hole in one now, right? Okay. One more big round of applause for Joseph. Great job. Wonderful.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you so much. Sure. Thank you.
Great message.
Thanks so much, Joseph.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Absolutely. Now, for our final item, we'd like to proclaim September as National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and I'd like to ask Juliana Pisani, the Vice President of Operations for the American Cancer Society, Great Western Division, to join us at the podium. Welcome. As many of you know, I'm very active with the U.S. Conference of Mayors, and six years ago, at the Conference of Mayors, we designated September as Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, and in 2002, this designation was recognized on a federal level by President George W. Bush. Prostate cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer among men. This cancer attacks both young and old and poses a stronger risk to those who have a family history of the disease or who are African-American. The U.S. Conference of Mayors is dedicated to saving lives through informed decision-making, screening, and treatment. So on behalf of myself and the entire City Council, we'd like to proclaim September as National Prostate Cancer Awareness Month to raise awareness of this deadly disease.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and the American Cancer Society would like to encourage all men to gather information about their prostate health. Talk to your doctors. See if you are at risk of getting prostate cancer. By calling, and we encourage you to please call the American Cancer Society. And just like our lovely city that is open 24 hours a day, this number is 24 hours, seven days a week, 1-800-ACS-2345. Thank you again.
Thank you for coming down. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. That's great. That's it? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You practice, I practice.
Whatever.
For everybody else?
Yeah, I never got no hug either. Out here in front of God and everybody?
Hey, thank you very much. Great job.
What's that?
Said invite me out to a game, would you?
Okay.
Great job, Coach. Great job.
Thanks.
I'm all business.
How are you?
You're having a down. Congratulations on your brother.
Yeah.
For everybody else?
Yeah, I never got no hug either. Out here in front of God and everybody?
Hey, thank you very much. Great job.
What's that?
Said invite me out to a game, would you?
Okay.
Great job, Coach. Great job. All right, folks, we'll start with our regular agenda, which is item number 10. Any items from the morning session that the council, staff, and/or the acting that wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have item number 41, is Appeal of Work Card, Mohammed Shilfreea. The Metro was asked for that in advance until our October the 4th, 2006 meeting. And our number 42 is Appeal of Work Card, Daryl Damon N. Lee. Metro was asked to strike. And item number 73 is Bill 2006-54. The Recommending Committee requested to strike. Are there any other items we need to bring forward at this time? Hearing them, Your Honor, I make a motion, we take these items, bring these items forward and take the appropriate action, please.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Post.
One second here.
Yes.
I'm sorry, let me go back if I can to items 43 and 45. Mr. DeFury is here.
You want to have those pulled?
Mm-hmm.
All right. 43 and 45, Mayor Protam?
Yes. Item 43, Discussion of Possible Action Regarding Six-Month Review of Bear Wine and Critical Off-Sale License. Saba Shishani doing business at Bell's Market, 720 West Owens Avenue. Saba H. Shishani...
Excuse me, pardon me. See, the Councilman, Councilman Weekly made fun of my shirt and my tie, and he completely fouled this part of the agenda off, so don't listen to a word he said. Let's continue with the consent agenda.
I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, please. The motion has been made. If Councilman Weekly would please vote, we could get on with this meeting.
I think I make a motion about the tie and shirt.
All right, motion carries. Post. And motion carries. Thank you.
It's gonna be a fun day.
Are we okay, Ms. Ennis?
I...
All right, we're having a little difficulty with our screens here. All right, item number 11 is Approval of the Final Minutes by Reference of the Regular City Council Meeting of August 2, 2006.
Yes, Your Honor. No addition or deletion. I make a motion for approval of the minutes, please.
All right, please vote. Post. Motion carries. Good. All right, items 12 through 37 are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine, they're recommended for approval by the departments, and they may be enacted in one motion. Are there any items that the council wishes to bring forward on the consent agenda?
We have one lady out front.
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, Ms. Ennis.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Claudette Ennis, Director, Human Resources, for the record. I'd like to bring forward item 25 on the agenda.
All right. And Councilman Ross, did you have a...
I'd like to bring in agenda item number 35 forward, Your Honor.
All right. Mayor Protam? 25 and 35.
Yes, Your Honor. Item number 23...
25.
25 is Approval of Ratification of the Contract Between the City of Las Vegas and the Las Vegas Police Protective Association, City Marshals Unit. And item 35 is R-68-2006, Approval of Resolution Encouraging Cities to Determine the Public Safety Impacts Resolting from Transportation of High-Level Nuclear Waste.
All right, Ms. Ennis, did you want to be heard on item number 25?
Yes, please, Mayor. Item 25 is the ratification of the collective bargaining, ratification and approval of collective bargaining agreement between our Las Vegas Police Protective Association, our Marshals Unit, and the City of Las Vegas. There was an error in the fiscal impact on that item, which was listed as $1,526,000. Inclusive in that should have been an agreed-upon settlement for a pending EMRB case between the parties. That settlement cost is approximately $175,000, and it would have made the total fiscal impact at $1,700,000, $1,701,000. And I'd like to make that correction.
All right, the record will reflect that.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Could I have a motion?
Are there any questions on item 25? I make a motion, Your Honor, to follow Ms. Ennis's recommendation for approval, and I'm just tickled to death.
Good, let's vote, please.
Okay, and this is on item 25.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Post. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Do you want to read 35 again?
Yes, 35 is R-68-2006, Approval of Resolution Encouraging Cities to Determine the Public Safety Impacts Resolting from Transportation of High-Level Nuclear Waste. Councilman Ross, like brought that forward?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I think... Val, you gonna handle this?
Yeah. This item was on the agenda to ask the city council for approval of submitting to the National League of Cities and the Nevada League of Municipalities, Cities and Municipalities, a proposed resolution or resolutions encouraging cities within the transit path of nuclear fuel to conduct safety studies and to urge Congress to fund those studies. Because the word "resolution" was used, this item was put by mistake on the resolutions calendar, and so we wanted to pull that off, and all that the staff would like you to do is approve their submitting resolutions to those two bodies requesting those items that cities perform studies and that Congress fund those studies. If you have any questions, Mr. Olivas is here to answer them.
All right, thank you very much. I just have a statement, and that is that we have taken similar action with the Conference of Mayors, or a similar resolution that was presented to them several years ago, and I think that the city council is probably the most active and proactive in America as far as our opposition to having high-level nuclear waste transported across this country. Many people say that Yucca Mountain is our problem because it's 90 miles away from Las Vegas, but the truth of the matter is, the real danger out there is the transportation of this nuclear waste, and that's the entire nation's problem, and the federal government has not addressed it, they ignore it, and there has not been adequate training along the road, and I think that the fact that we are once again taking an active role with the League of Cities, Nevada League of Cities, it's the right thing to do. So, with that, I would move for approval with your permission.
You bet.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Okay, good. Very good. All right. And now we have the consent agenda?
Mm-hmm. Your Honor, if I could, I make a motion for approval of items 12 through 37 of the consent calendar with exceptions of 25 and 35.
All right, thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, at this time, yes, folks?
Your Honor, in regards to item number 12...
Yes?
Sorry.
What would you... What's your desire?
Your Honor, I'm Robert Smith. I'm with Representative VFW Post and Wordy Organizers of the Las Vegas Veterans Day Parade.
Yes.
And we wanted to express our thanks to the committee for helping us this year. We also have a presentation we'd like to make to you for your, to thank you for your support in prior years' parades. And when we submitted our financial requests this year, the amount of money that we submitted our request for was reduced in this number, item number 12, from $25,000 to $16,000. The $16,000 is the same amount of funds that the city has funded us the prior three years, and due to increasing costs and things, we really wanted to request some additional funding this year from the city, and we'd like your consideration for that request. You know, we feel that the Las Vegas Veterans Day Parade is really one event that the community really has an opportunity to come together to say thank you to our veterans for everything that they've done for our country and our community here. And the parade needs the funding to be able to continue to put on a first-rate parade like we have in prior years, and we just felt that we wanted to put an extra plea in for that additional funding for the committee this year so we can put on a first-rate parade for the city.
All right, I appreciate that. What I'm going to suggest is that you call my office, get together with me, I'll have the city manager's office there, and we'll be able to discuss this at that time.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor.
We have plenty of time to do this. November 11th is Veterans Day.
November 11th, yes, sir.
Very good. So, we'll be in good shape.
Okay, and I thank you, and we have a photograph we'd like to give you from picture of the mayor last year when he was being our grand marshal.
Thank you, I appreciate that. That's cool. That's very nice. Thank you.
Put on the overhead.
Thank you.
Put on the overhead.
Well, let me see it first before you put it on.
No, put on the overhead.
It's a good picture.
Very nice picture.
Want to see what I'm wearing?
It's the same tie.
Same tie.
It is. It is the same tie. It's my only tie. All right, thank you so much, but call my office, and we'll get together real soon.
I will, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
It's not the same shirt.
Boy, I'm taking such abuse today. There's been a request, and I'm going to grant it, of course, to call item number 55 at this time. Bring that forward. This is Discussion on Possible Action to Name a Park Located at 650 North Tenaya Avenue. Dr. Jackson?
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Council. At the regularly scheduled Parks and Rec Advisory Commission meeting that was held on September 13th of this year, the Park Naming Subcommittee recommended a name for the 10-acre park site located between Washington Avenue and Summerlin Parkway on Tenaya to be submitted to the city council meeting today. The name that was unanimously voted on by the Advisory Commission is the Bill Brier Family Park.
Wonderful, that's great. Let's have a round of applause on that one. Yes, sir.
I'm Jim Brier, and on behalf of my family members who are here...
Why don't they come up with you? Please come up, folks. The community...
Can I introduce them as they come up?
I would love that.
Okay, we have my sister Linda and her husband Larry and her son Mikey. My dad's brother, my uncle Vince, is with us today. My brother Don, my brother Bob. Kids, Christian, Whitney, Jillian, and my dad's wife Susan and her daughter Lori. And I'm Jim Brier, and on behalf of my dad, I would like to thank you for this honor.
And it is an honor. Bill Brier was one of the great mayors of the city of Las Vegas, and when I came into town back in 1964, I met him, and we're so lucky to have had him in our community. He was not the mayor at the time, Orrin Gragson was the mayor, but Bill Brier was a person who was loved by everybody who came into contact with him because he was a kind, gentle, jovial, outgoing, wonderful human being, and I can't think of anybody that I admire more than Bill Brier. I really mean that. He's... I consider him a friend, and the fact that Councilwoman Tarkanian was kind enough to push this forward, and the council has supported this, I can't think of a nicer day. My only regret is he's not standing here with us because he would have loved this. This was his kind of thing, and our prayers are always with him, that he will be able to recognize this honor that the city is trying to bestow upon him.
We will be certain to pass along the results of today's action.
Thank you very much, and good luck to all of you.
Thank you.
Yes, we need a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I just say a few words about Bill?
Absolutely.
For the motion? Because sometimes, as the years pass, it's not as clear to us the contributions people have made, so I would just like to state that Bill Brier served as the mayor of Las Vegas for 12 years, 1975 to 1987. He also served as chairman and member of the Clark County Commissioners, as well as president of the State of Nevada Association of County Commissioners. In addition, he was a member of the Nevada State Legislature. Born in Long Beach, California, Bill was raised in Sacramento and San Francisco. He moved to Las Vegas in 1955 and has spent the rest of his life active in our community's activities. He has served on the Colorado River Commission, the El Dorado Valley Advisory Board, and the Board of Directors of the Las Vegas Convention and Visitors Authorities, as well as chairman of the Civil Disaster Control Board. Active in Boy Scouts for Toma, Knights of Columbus, Elks, March of Dimes, and founder of the Las Vegas Arts Commission, he has been honored with many achievements and leadership... of the Las Vegas Arts Commission, he has been honored with many achievement and leadership awards. In his spare time, his biggest focus has been helping the youth of our community, particularly in soccer, football, and Little League, and I know when my, uh, sons were, uh, young, they had the privilege of being involved in some of the activities Bill was supervising. Bill's greatest love is love of family. It's particularly fi- fitting, and because of that, it's particularly fitting that a park in his honor be named the Bill Breer Family Park, and I so move.
Very good. We hear the motion? Let's vote on it, please. Post, please. Motion carries, and congratulations. Okay, item thirty-eight is a report from the city manager on emerging issues. Dr. Stobbe?
Uh, Mayor, Council, I really don't have anything to report, so...
All right.
I'd be happy to receive any comments or input from the council.
Fine. Uh, on this item, would anybody like to be heard? All right, thank you. We'll go on to thirty-nine. Item thirty-nine is being trailed to be heard following counsel item number fifty-seven. Item forty is being trailed to be heard with development agenda item number three. And we'll go to forty-three, which is discussion and possible action regarding six-month review of a beer wine cooler off-sale license. Saba Shoshani doing business as Bill's Market at seven twenty West Owens Avenue. Mr. DiFiore is, um, representative of the business here?
Your Honor?
Yes?
Um, Mr. DiFiore, if it's okay, I understand that, um, your representative who's speaking on behalf of you is on his way. I've received a phone call on that, so if we can just trail this momentarily, I'd appreciate it.
No problem. We'll trail forty-three.
And that'll be forty-three and forty-five, please.
All right, trail them.
Thank you.
Very good. We'll go to forty-four. Forty-four is discussion and possible action regarding change of ownership, location, business name for a tavern license, and a new restricted gaming license for fifteen slots from Rice Patty to Nevada Restaurant Services, doing business as Dottie's Number Twenty-eight at fifty-one ninety-one West Charleston Boulevard. This is in Ward one. Mr. DiFiore?
Mayor, members of the council, um, I'd like to make an amendment to the, uh, item here on the agenda. When it was adjourned, we did not have suite numbers, uh, for this location. We do now, and that would be suites one-ten and one-fifteen.
Very good, thank you.
And in your backup, you have a, um, copy of the police report that was, uh, recently provided by Metro on Mr. Esti, and, uh, one of the concerns that we have, Detective Weeks is here in the audience if you have any questions regarding this, but there, there has been, uh, a disposition, I, I believe by the State Gaming Control Board, uh, on Mr. Esti on a recent incident, and, uh, as such, uh, we're willing to go forward with a temporary license to make sure that the conditions that the Gaming Control Board did place on Mr. Esti is, uh, taken care of, uh, during the next, uh, six-month period or following that.
All right, very good. Mr. Schreck?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Frank Schreck representing the applicant, and with me is Mr. Esti. Uh, the one condition I think that remains is the completion of, of an ethics course. The problem, uh, that we've had, and, uh, the Gaming Control Board is well aware of it, because we documented it, is there are no ethic courses...
I thought you were going to say there are no ethics.
Well, there are no ethics courses available in the, in the community colleges, uh, in any of the, uh, other areas that we looked. Uh, we finally tried to get one at the law school, but, uh, they require a graduate, uh, college degree to be enrolled. We do have now, uh, he's located because he's by state, he, he has businesses in Oregon and Montana, he is enrolled and will commence an ethics course at Portland State University on...
Tuesday.
On Tuesday.
Okay, that's good. Very good.
We will complete that in satisfaction of the Gaming Control Board's condition.
Terrific. Okay, Mr. DiFiore, your recommendation?
Well, having, uh, said that, I think, uh, we'd still recommend a temporary license, and certainly, uh, if that, uh, course is completed, if the council so wishes, and grant me the authority to issue a permanent license upon satisfaction of this course by the State Gaming Control Board, I would certainly make that part of my recommendation.
Very good.
That would be sufficient.
Very good. All right, any comments or questions, folks? All right, Councilwoman?
I'll move to approve the temporary license with the condition that you added there.
All right.
Which was if it was completed, then it would be moved to...
Issue a permanent license upon the completion of that.
That's right.
Very good. That's the motion. Let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. All right, uh, oh, Councilman. Forty-five wants forty-six. Item forty-six is being trailed to be heard this afternoon with item number one-thirty, so we'll move on to forty-seven. Forty-seven is discussion and possible action regarding a new beer wine cooler on-sale license subject to the provisions of the Planning and Fire Codes and Health Department Regulations, uh, for Fuji-san at eighty-five forty West Lake Mead Boulevard. This is in Ward four. Mr. DiFiore? Come on up, folks.
Mayor, members of the council, um, within your, uh, police report, you do have, um, an area of concern with regard to the investment of the, one of the applicants here. I know that, uh, Metro has diligently attempted to work with the applicant, uh, to be able to, uh, uh, follow the paper trail on these, on this investment, which is, uh, about forty-five thousand dollars worth. Um, I'm not so sure that this is possible. Uh, Detective Weeks is here to answer any questions on that, um, and certainly, uh, the applicant is here to explain, uh, possibly where that, uh, additional forty-five thousand dollars came into play in the investment. Um, my recommendation would be, uh, uh, possibly to hear them and hear, uh, what they have to say with regard to that, and then provide the council with a recommendation following that.
All right, fine. Do you understand what the problem is?
Yes.
All right, uh, we're trying to find out where forty-five thousand dollars came from, which is going into your investment. Are you able to tell us?
The forty-five thousand is, uh, from the member, Susanna Suhadi. It's what the savings has been, uh, like five years, since my parents come every, like, twice a year, they bring the cash and we not even put in the bank. We put it, uh, he, she put in the saving box and, and when we need the money to open the, uh, business and then she bring the money out and show like, uh, forty-five thousand cash in the bank.
Did you pay the forty-five thousand for the business?
Uh, yes. Part of the Susanna Suhadi is the cash, uh, money, it's not from the lawn, that's why the money is come from, is like a saving, we put in the saving boss, uh, box, and then...
Right, in other words, you're saying that the monies were brought in by relatives through San Francisco several years ago and placed in a safety deposit box, never deposited in a bank?
Yes, from Indonesia, yes.
And then, uh, when you bought the business, you, uh, uh, took the money out of the safety deposit box, and now you're claiming you have the forty-five thousand dollars, uh, towards the business, is that it?
Yes.
Okay, did you know whether or not the folks, when they brought it into the country, filed a currency transaction report?
Uh, it's, it's never, uh, over like a ten thousand, but they come like twice, my parents come twice a year. Last, been last three years, so they, they bring the, uh, cash, so...
Does it make it six times nine? Yeah, it does make it. They could have done it that way. Six times nine? Fifty-four. Right. Okay, uh, Detective Weeks?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, Detective Tony Weeks with the Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department Special Investigation Section. Uh, what the applicant is, is telling you is the information that the investigator found through the investigation, that the parents since nineteen ninety-nine have been coming to the United States twice a year, bringing an undisclosed amount of money, and no, they did not, uh, fill out any transaction report, they did not, uh, declare it with customs...
But they don't have to, do they, unless it's in excess of ten thousand?
Yeah, oh, unless it's over ten thousand dollars, that is correct. So during this period of time, there was actually, uh, more than the forty-five thousand dollars is what they disclosed in the investigation. However, the, that, we can't determine exactly where the money came from, and that was the issue.
Okay. Well, they say it came from their folks?
Yes, sir.
I've got to take them at their word, I guess, but why not? Okay, Mr. DiFiore? What's your recommendation?
Uh, unless there's another recommendation by council, uh, then, uh, based upon this disclosure and, and description, uh, they will recommend a permanent license.
Okay. Any comments or questions? Councilwoman?
Mr. DiFiore, are you comfortable that the applicant is aware of the business of the industry, Metro and the city's focus on this industry and what we look to avoid? Are they comfortable with that component?
Um, I believe so. We do that during the, uh, the administrative process of the application, and we do follow-up in the field, uh, with, uh, a site check, and, uh, uh, we certainly, uh, are welcome, welcoming them to any questions that they may have on the operations of the business, work cards, AA cards, health cards, and so forth, so we can certainly can go over that with them, uh, after this meeting.
And, and ma'am, understanding, uh, that you and your family are investing some large amounts of money, I would encourage you to work with Mr. DiFiore to clearly understand our regulations, our rules, and our expectations of running this business.
Yes.
And you'll do that? You'll work with Mr. DiFiore?
Yeah, I will.
Right, Your Honor, I would move to follow staff's recommendation for approval.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries. Do you want to tell us, uh, ladies, what kind of restaurant is this going to be?
It's still under construction, it's been nine months, but I don't see it's go progress yet, so I don't know when this be open.
What kind?
The Japanese restaurant.
You have a specialty?
Uh, green tea, yes.
Green tea?
Yes.
That's a specialty?
Yes.
I think we got to get you a liquor license. All right. Okay, good luck to you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Thank you, everybody.
Okay. All right. Good luck. Okay. Councilman, when you are ready for your items, just let me know, okay? Good. Item forty-eight is discussion and possible action regarding a new corporate entity, change of business name and change of location for a nonprofit club general license from IBPO Elks, Tommy J. Stanton Lodge, Number seventeen thirty-five, uh, located at twenty-three sixty, uh, North Martin L. King Boulevard to IBPO Elks of the World, uh, at nine oh-two West Owens Avenue. This is in Ward five. Mr. DiFiore?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, I defer to Councilman Weekly, uh, for this discussion.
All right, Councilman Weekly?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. Um, I, um, attended a very spirited, uh, meeting on last evening, um, with this item, and I want to thank, uh, Mr. Al McCurry and members of the Elks, um, so very much for, um, hosting my staff and I there to discuss, um, what their plans are for the neighborhood and the continued services that they do in the neighborhood, but to also, um, hear concerns that we have as it relates to this application here today. Um, in discussing, um, the concerns with Mr. McCurry, um, we've come up with a, um, what I consider a fair compromise here, opposed to, um, denying this application and, and saying that we don't feel like this is going to be a good fit for our neighborhood. Um, I think that, um, what we're going to do, um, in the interim, um, is to, um, have a temporary license at this location for six months with a six-month review, okay? So the license will be approved with a tempor- what, what, I'm sorry, with a, um, six-month review, and then we discussed, um, the, um, hours of operation, in which I'd like for Mr. McCurry to put those on the record, please.
Mr. McCurry?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning, sir.
City Council. My name is Al McCurry, I'm the president of IBPO W, and exalt the rule of Tommy J. Stanton Elks Lodge. Uh, the, we didn't get what we wanted, but the compromise is acceptable. Uh, we, we are going to, uh, also compromise on our hours, uh, from three PM in the afternoon, Thursday through, Sunday through Thursdays, and three PM through one PM, uh, one AM on Saturdays and Sundays, uh, pardon me, Friday and Saturday. And this is an acceptable compromise.
All right, thank you very much. All right, any comments or questions? All right, Councilman Weekly?
Um, and, Your Honor and Mr. DiFiore, if there are no more questions or any concerns?
Um, just clarification on the hours of operation. Uh, as I see it, with, it's three PM to one AM, Sunday through...
Sunday through Thursday, it's, um, Sunday through Thursday, it's actually till midnight.
Till midnight.
Friday and Saturday till one AM.
Okay. All right, that's the motion then. Let's vote, please.
Thank you.
Post? Motion carries. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, item forty-nine is discussion and possible action on a review of conditions of a massage establishment license. This is Capstone Wellness Center at six-twelve South Jones Boulevard in Ward one. Mr. DiFiore?
Mayor, members of the council, the applicant has requested, uh, consideration for a review of the conditions. Uh, currently, uh, the conditions on the license include that, um, uh, the applicant is the only independent massage therapist or massage therapist, uh, allowed to perform massage on the premises, and her current hours of operation are from seven AM to seven thirty PM, and she's asking for consideration, I believe, for an additional massage therapist that would be performing massage while she's on the premises, and additionally, additionally to that, uh, extension of the hours, uh, for closure of the business at eight thirty PM? Eight PM? Eight? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Amick?
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council, Tom Amick, thirty-eight hundred, Howard Hughes Parkway, um, here on behalf of Vicki Smith, who's with me here this morning. We appreciate, uh, council hearing our request, uh, and Councilwoman Tarkanian taking, uh, the time to come out and visit our establishment. Uh, we appreciate that very much. The, as, as Jim had stated, we have a, a, a room, an empty room at our facility. Vicki would like to be able to utilize that room. We would have, uh, four licensed therapists, but only Vicki and one other person could be there at any one time, so only two, uh, therapists onsite at any one time, and then the extra half hour, which would, uh, have our business open from seven AM to eight PM instead of seven thirty.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions? All right, uh, Councilwoman?
I'll move to approve staff's recommendation.
Okay, let's vote, please.
Which was the extension?
Post? Motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Jim.
Item fifty is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new massage establishment license for R. and B. Royal Palms Inc., doing business at Square Salon at two thirty-one North Buffalo Drive, and this is in Ward two. Mr. DiFiore?
Mayor, members of the council, the, uh, applicants today do meet, uh, consideration for approval of the, uh, new massage establishment license today, and, a temporary approval of the massage establishment license today, and my recommendation would be to, uh, approve it, uh, with the authority granted by the council to, um, allow the director or designee to issue a permanent license upon a favorable police, police report, or extend the, uh, temporary license, uh, if the police investigation has not been completed during that time.
All right, thank you. Folks?
Good morning.
Please identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Barb Garcia Grove. I'm one of the owners of Square Salon with my husband, Richard Grove.
Richard Grove, uh, president of Square Salon.
Be happy to hear from you, folks.
Uh, Square Salon's been around for several years, almost, uh, twelve years now, and, uh, we just bought it from Rob and Patty Hollis. They did have a current massage establishment for one masseuse upstairs with a facial. It offers, uh, hairstylist, manicuring, uh, an esthetician, it is, massage place, room is right next to the, uh, esthetician room.
I just have one question. Can you get a bagel while you're having a massage?
Absolutely.
All right, very good. It's right next to the Bagel Cafe, that's the reason I asked the question.
Yeah.
I mean, that's a, that'd be neat, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Bagel, no.
Right afterwards, right afterwards.
Okay. All right, any other, yes?
Councilman, with your permission, could they also, uh, add to the services for those coming in asking for a massage and a bagel to get rid of any ugly ties that show up in the area?
I think he looks handsome.
Oh. I can't wait to get my massage. All right, Councilman Wilson?
Since we're having so much fun today, for the record, I have nothing to do with any comments regarding your shirt and tie.
And I will not forget that.
I encourage my colleagues to leave it alone.
Thank you very much, Councilman. Thank you.
Secondly, my motion is for approval notwithstanding any requests for any bagels, because I don't think it would be a neat thing, I think it would be an ugly thing, to have a massage and a bagel at the same time.
All right, we are getting out of line here.
My motion is for approval consistent with staff's recommendation.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Post.
Whoops. I must know, I'm voting no because Councilman Wilson lied. He lied about his-- he lied about everything.
Forget it, folks. Motion carries. Good luck to you over there.
Thank you very much.
Yes, fine, thank you.
Okay, item fifty-one is being trailed to be heard this afternoon in conjunction with item one oh eight. We'll move on to fifty-two. Item fifty-two is being trailed to be heard this afternoon in conjunction with item one twenty-nine, and we'll move on to item fifty-three. You want to go back? All right, forty-three and forty-five, both at the same time? All right. We'll call forty-three and forty-five together. I'll read them both. Uh-oh. I see Mr. Brown is here, so I'll turn this over to the mayor pro temp. I have to abstain because of a partnership interest that we share in a building on West Charleston.
Thank you, Your Honor. Item number forty-three, discussion and possible action regarding the six-month review of a beer wine cooler off-sale license, Sabah Shashani doing business at Bell's Market, seven twenty West Owens Avenue. This is in Councilman Weekly's ward, and item number forty-five is discussion and possible action regarding a review of package-- of a package license and a restricted gaming license for seven slots at Shashani Jargie's doing business at Family Food Two, sixteen oh two H Street. This is also in Councilman Weekly's ward. I see the applicant's present, Mr. DeFiori, please.
Mayor, members of the council, on both of these items, there were conditions that were placed on the license, and I'll read those into the record so that we can address these as we discuss this. One condition is to hire a licensed security firm to address the loitering in the parking lot and those issues. Number two was to install a video surveillance system to aid in monitoring activity inside and outside the store. Number three was to post signs inside and outside the store which notify the patrons of the video surveillance system. Number four was to have the applicant's licensees work with Metro and security to enforce trespassing of undesirables on the premises. And number five was to enforce no loitering and no alcohol consumption laws within a thousand feet of the establishment. In the report on Bell's Market, Detective Weeks is here in the event that you have any questions, it does list a high number of calls for service, but also a high number of those calls for service were self-generated, meaning that Metro made it in their rounds of the area that they cover to go buy the stores. In the business as known as Bell's Market, several of the calls for service that were generated outside of Metro were called in by the employees or management of Bell's Market, which did result in, I believe, some citations and arrests that were made. I think the report reflects that they're making a cooperative effort to comply with the conditions and work with Metro to clean up some of the problems that have existed in the past. Council does have an opportunity today to do a couple of things. One is to extend the permanent license with conditions that were imposed, extend the permanent license with amended conditions, or extend the condition-- conditions on the license or amended conditions and have a six-month review from this date. And having said that, I'll defer to Mr. Brown.
Are there any questions, any comments? Mr. Brown, please.
Good morning, Jay Brown, five twenty South Fourth Street, representing the applicants on forty-three and forty-five. The applicants are present, and first, brief apology for my lateness and tardiness this morning, I'm sorry. I've had numerous conversations with Councilman Weekly, he's very concerned about this area. He's expressed to me those concerns, and I think that he'll do a better job of speaking for himself than I was for speaking for him, but I know that he'd like to see this review continue, whereas we'd like to have our permanent license, we certainly want to work with the councilmen in every way. I'm glad to see that business licensing acknowledges that. We would ask if it's at all possible, Councilman, we'd like to use our own security firm. We've had a security firm that we did as part of the condition. We don't want to eliminate the condition of security in any review that you'd ask for, but if it's at all possible, we'd like to be able to just hire our own people if they report to us. We can demand more of them in this difficult area, and if it was also possible, we'd like to do this from two in the afternoon until our closing at ten o'clock at night. But with that, I'll let you do the talking.
I'd probably like to also refer to Metro on that as well, because they've been very helpful, and I appreciate their support in helping us to try and address some of these issues here. My only concern, and again, maybe Metro can help me out on this, Mr. DeFiori, is that security that you all have used personally in the past have just really not been good security, and I think that, you know, as security, people go out and do their jobs and not kind of get afraid when they find themselves in a midst of confrontation, and so that just kind of concerns me a little bit. But if I can, Mayor Pro temp, I'd like to--
Absolutely.
--refer over to Metro, please.
Councilman Weekly, to answer your question about the security, it has to be a licensed security firm that you hire for the security. It can't just be employees that don't have any experience with security whatsoever. So it would have to be a licensed security that they would have to hire or keep in place, which is what I think they have right now.
Is that what they have, Mr. Brown?
I guess my only response would be if it has to be a security firm, there's nothing to discuss. Our concern is that frankly, the security firm sends people like me, a little overweight and a little old, who aren't really up to handling that area, and if they could at least be selective, they could probably do a better job, and I'm just wondering, since we're going to probably go to the six-month review based on our conversation--
Yes.
--if they could, assuming it's legal, if they could hire their own security, then we're going to have a six-month review, and if they take advantage of the council's good nature, if they're fortunate enough to get that approved, they're going to have a problem in six months. So that's all, I'm just saying, if it's at all legally possible, we can make sure we have the right kind of people there that are doing the protection.
You know, Jay, and I'll say this real quickly before I refer back to Metro, is that I appreciate the progress that the store operators have made thus far, and that has a lot to do with the fact that we have been following up on them. Just let me get-- help everybody to understand, the two stores are located on the corner where, I mean, we have a severe saturation of alcohol on the corner, and we have a severe amount of crime that happens in this area. The last application that we just heard from is going right across the street, where we're discussing bringing more alcohol on one block. And so, you know, we have a lot of problems on that corner, and these guys who are standing here before me can attest to that every single day. And so they chose to operate a convenience store on a very, very serious block, and to be able to loosen up some of those conditions, Mr. Brown, it concerns me very, very much. And you have a lot of people that live in the neighborhood, particularly a lot of elderly people that still live there, that want to ensure that as they're driving down the street, and then even those folks who, children, are walking to and from school or to the bus stop, want to make sure that their kids are safe, and we want to make sure that these folks do not take it for granted that they have to provide some licensed and professional security guards on that corner there. I mean, and that's just no if and or buts. I mean, it is what it is. I mean, there's not a lot that we ask of these guys. I mean, at one store, I mean, we have no landscaping, I mean, it'd be a different story if these guys were even acclimated in the community, doing things in the neighborhood to work with Little League teams or to give back in the neighborhood. I mean, I mean, come on. This is take, 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 take. You got to give. And that's just it in a nutshell. Yes, ma'am?
In answer to the question--
Ma'am, we need your name on the record, please.
Excuse me.
We know who you are.
Detective Tony Weeks, Las Vegas Metropolitan Police Department, Special Investigations. As I said previously, it does have to be a licensed security. I would make a suggestion that if you are unhappy with that security company, that perhaps you look at another one that is licensed or direct your comments to the owner of that security company and ask to someone else be sent out that is more of your liking or more of your-- to do a better job for you. But it does have to be from a licensed security company.
One last thing on the subject, only because they've asked, and again, I don't want to beat this to death. Is it all right if that security is from two o'clock in the afternoon until ten o'clock? They seem to have a concern about having to spend that money in the morning when there really aren't, you know, problems in that area.
And that's presuming that the hours of operation or the closing of the business is at ten PM?
That's correct.
Councilman, you have any concerns?
I really don't have any problems with that. That's the peak hours where we have a lot of concerns and a lot of issues.
That'd be great, thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay. I guess my recommendation would be that we would continue with the conditions that were imposed with an amendment to the condition on the security firm, which would allow them to have security there from the hours of two PM to ten-- two PM to ten PM daily, and that we would have a review in six months, which I believe would be March twenty-first, two thousand and seven.
Yes. Mayor Pro temp, if the applicant agrees to that, that'll be my motion.
Matter of fact, I would just say from two to closing, because sometimes they may open on a weekend until eleven, so let's just make it real clear, it's two o'clock to closing. The security will be there. Rather than having a cap at ten o'clock at night, I'm just suggesting that we do it from two in the afternoon to whatever time they close.
That's fine.
Councilman, if I could just say one thing. You know, this is a temporary license, and so I will support Councilman Weekly's request or his motion, but it just behooves me to think that you might want to have the security there more during the day, so there's not any more extra problems and stuff. So if you feel comfortable in making it from two to closing time, then I can support that, but it is a temporary license, so.
Mayor Pro temp, if I may, this is a permanent license, we are just establishing a review.
A review, that's fine too, though.
You're right. Your point's well taken.
That's my motion, Your Honor.
Okay, we have--
With all those conditions as amended.
We have a motion on item number forty-three. Are there any questions or comments? Cast your vote, please.
That's on forty-three?
Yes, uh-huh. Please post. Thank you. Item number-- item number forty-five, please.
I move to follow staff's recommendation, please, with all those conditions as amended, please.
No question on the motion, please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
All right, item fifty-two is being trailed to be heard this afternoon in conjunction with item number one twenty-nine. We'll move on to item fifty-three. Fifty-three is a discussion and possible action to approve the revised Civil Service Board rules as agreed upon between human resources personnel and bargaining unions. Ms. Ennis?
Mayor, Council, Clodette Ennis, Director of Human Resources, again for the record. This item was previously brought before you, and just as a quick reminder, it has been fourteen years since these civil service rules and regulations had been amended. They were outdated, cumbersome, and we needed to address some of those outdated issues. We spent the past two years in collaboration with our city employees association in reviewing these issues and items. We've made three major changes that we bring before you today as a recommendation. One in the area of veterans' preference points. Rather than having individuals participate in a declared war, they simply have to have now been on active duty and have an honorable discharge in order to receive the veterans' preference points. We've also changed the processing for the extension of the probationary period and mutually agreed with the LVCEA that if an individual is to have his or her probationary period extended, the city now has the opportunity to do that with the mutual agreement of the LVCEA. And then we've made the processing in terms of the eligible list easier by reducing the number of-- the number of groups that we have. So primarily, those are the changes that we're proposing to you today. We have the agreement and concurrence of all of our labor organizations, and we believe we have addressed an additional question that some of you had had relative to a point of employ. So I'm available to answer any questions and am requesting your approval of this item.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions to Ms. Ennis or any comments at this time? All right, seeing none, motion, please.
Yes, Your Honor, we'll follow Ms. Ennis's recommendation for approval.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you all for your support.
Thank you for the report. Item fifty-four is discussion and possible action to name the community center located at sixty-six oh one North Buffalo Drive. This is in Ward six. Dr. Jackson?
Good morning, once again. On September thirteenth, the Park and Rec Advisory Commission recommended a name for the new ninety-eight thousand square foot community center located on eighteen acres in Centennial Hills Park. The amenities include indoor/outdoor swimming pools, two gymnasiums, a senior center, and space for a variety of multi-generational activities. The center is on North Buffalo Drive near Deer Springs Way. Unanimous vote of the commission was to name it Centennial Hills Community Center.
All right, are there any questions? May I ask this, when you have-- when the committee meets, is there any input from the councilmen from the particular ward to the committee?
Certainly.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Very good, then. With that, Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Your Honor, and just to help stiffen the record here, when you say that ninety-eight thousand square feet, you're supposed to say almost one hundred thousand square feet.
Almost one hundred thousand. Stand corrected.
You can also say the state's largest--
State's largest. City's largest, department's largest.
Must be nice.
World's largest.
You got it. Move approved, Your Honor.
Very good, let's vote. Post. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, item fifty-six, this is report on leisure, two thousand and five, two thousand and six, citizen interest survey on public parks, programs, and recreation amenities. This pertains, of course, to all wards in the city. Dr. Jackson?
Good morning, again. I am pleased to be able to present to you our report from our recently conducted leisure services survey. Now, this survey was conducted starting in mid-two thousand and five through early two thousand and six, and it was prior to the redistricting that occurred in June. However, we are very confident that the ward boundary changes that occurred don't in any way inhibit the responses that we received, because they do represent all the constituents of the city. And the survey respondents were selected randomly from each ward, so that everyone in the city was represented. I'm happy to report that our response rate was quite good. The national average is usually about three percent. We had an overall response rate of seven percent. The information on this survey is certainly going to enhance our ability to make decisions internally, and especially with our new capital improvement process that we have ongoing. Leisure Services has not presented to you for some time now. We do have a slideshow to present, so we do ask your indulgence as we go through it. And here today to present the overall findings is Dr. Brian Scott of Moore, Isafano, and Goldman, MIG Incorporated. Dr. Scott has twenty-five years of experience in comprehensive community development with an emphasis in parks and recreation planning. His Parks and Rec experience includes a dozen comprehensive plans and individual park designs in Oregon, Washington, Idaho, and Nevada. Dr. Scott, after he concludes, will be available for any questions or comments.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Brian Scott, I represent Moore, Isafano-Goldsman, a comprehensive park and recreation planning firm based in Berkeley, California. I come from our Portland office, it's nice to be here with you this morning where it's a little warmer than it is back home. I want to just take a few moments to share the results of this survey that we've been working on with your leisure services department for the last year or so. It becomes very clear from this that Las Vegas is a community that has strong needs for parks, both active and passive recreational activities, as well as indoor and outdoor recreation needs. My firm does about a dozen park and recreation surveys a year in cities all over the western United States, and it's clear when we compare the results here to results in other cities that the citizens of Las Vegas are using your recreation facilities more than folks do in most cities. They express a strong desire that you maintain and improve what you have first before expanding new facilities. While, as in many communities, big-ticket items like swimming pools are always popular, we've got a strong response for basic amenities in the parks, such as trails, playgrounds, basketball courts. Also, an expression of more interest in expanding programs like concerts, fairs and festivals, arts and crafts, and indoor swimming. One of the things that worked out really well with the leisure services department was the work the staff did and volunteers to get a lot of responses to this survey. As a result, we feel a very strong confidence level on the results that I'm about to share, and I'm hoping this little gizmo is going to make this go forward. There it goes. So we've been working on this for just about a year with the city of Las Vegas, led by the leisure services department and their staff and volunteers from some of the programs. The purpose of the survey was to look at citizens' recreation habits, look at how citizens feel about your facilities, your programming, your policies, and your planning. It had questions related to outdoor facilities, indoor facilities, park use, priorities in different funding scenarios, programs and services. We also cross-tabulated that with demographics of the citizens that were answering, policy questions, senior needs, and then one of the MIG signature elements is this matrix of various recreation activities, where we ask people how much they participate in recreation activities and how much they'd like to, and then we can compare that with other cities. We also offered a Spanish-language version of the survey for citizens that preferred that. We got a big sample, and we cross-tabulated it within each ward, so we actually have a verifiable sample within each ward of the city. The results, we distributed twenty-two thousand surveys, got almost eighteen hundred back, giving us a two-point-three percent margin of error with a high confidence level. As you can see, it was pretty widely distributed across all the wards in the-- level. As you can see, it was pretty widely distributed across all the wards in the city. The most responses in Ward One and Ward Two, the most Spanish-language responses in Wards Three, Five, and Six. The top active recreational activities that people expressed preference for, swimming, walking, hiking, weight training, going to the gym. In terms of passive recreational activities, reading, listening to music, family activities, arts and crafts, gardening, and gourmet cooking came up as top choices. One of the interesting things is when we asked people what they were currently participating in and then asked them what they'd like to be participating in, we noticed that concert...attending concerts, fairs and festivals, arts and crafts, and indoor swimming were things that citizens that responded to the survey would like to do more than they're doing now. Another thing, nine out of the ten activities that we looked at were participated in more frequently than other communities that we had. So really, high participation in recreational activities in Las Vegas compared to other cities. People also responded very strongly to the importance of parks, naming it as second only to home as a place they like to spend their free time. The facility priorities, the first thing, we've got a very clear response that citizens would like you to first focus on upgrading existing facilities and maintaining existing facilities before building new facilities. Desire for more basic park amenities, as I mentioned in the introduction, trails, playgrounds, and basketball courts came up as things that people were looking for. Top indoor recreation facility needs, indoor swimming pool came up more strongly than the last time you did this survey. Also, weight room, fitness room, a gymnasium, arts and craft center, aerobics and exercise were things that the community expressed preference for. In terms of outdoor facilities, support for outdoor facilities across the city, especially strong in Wards Three, Five, and Six. Strong support for water play features, indoor swimming pools, and sports fields. Another interesting finding was that when people were asked if they had use for facilities for disabled responses, more than half of the people that responded to the question said that either they had a disability or had a family member with a disability. So clearly, there's a lot of need for universal access in Las Vegas recreational facilities. Programming priorities, youth programs came up first, followed closely by senior programs as well as health and fitness programs. One area where we think is an opportunity to learn from the survey and implement it was asked about whether they use the senior centers or not. Those that said they didn't strongly stated they weren't really familiar with the offering. So there's an opportunity there to put more public information out there about what's available at your senior centers. And then another question, this is always one of my favorites, is we ask both youth, over ten-year-old in the household, as well as adults, to fill out the survey, and we ask them about youth facilities, and it's always interesting to see what the adults say the kids need versus what the kids say they need. The kids had a stronger interest in dances, activities and events, organized sports, gathering and hanging out, with places where they saw that as more important than their parents. Funny thing, drop-in sports and life skills didn't come up as strong with the kids as they did with their parents. Funding priorities, we asked a question if funding had to be cut. We got a strong message back, first, reduce or eliminate new construction before you cut maintenance and hours at existing facilities. So in summary, what can you learn from a survey like this? How can you use the data? Well, one thing it does is it gives you a chance to look across the board at what citizens are saying in a balanced, scientific sample because you always know that if you're discussing a particular recreation program, all the people that like that program are going to be standing here telling you how great it is. This is a chance to get a balanced sampling, kind of balance out the special interests. It also can help you set priorities by ward, give you a starting point on planning for new facilities, and identifying barriers to participation. We would make three comments that we think you can take away from this. Strong support for the park system and desire for maintaining the park and recreation system. Improvements to existing parks and facilities come first before building new facilities. Priority on enhanced trails. Picnic areas and playgrounds would be high-value projects for expanding the system. Thank you for your attention. I'd be glad to respond to any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions to Mr. Scott? Or any comments?
Yes.
Yes, Councilwoman Wilson?
Thank you.
Sure.
First of all, I received the hard copy of this, Ms. Jackson, and it's a wonderful, wonderful book. I want to compliment you, sir, on your work product. Yes, just full of information. It just really helped me out. But my question is this, there's some really important information and some insight into areas of improvement. So my question is, what are we going to do as a result of these findings? What are we going to do to make improvements?
Well, my next step starts tomorrow, believe it or not. I do have a departmental retreat with my senior and mid-level managers, a whole day retreat where we go and assess what we've been doing and what our future direction is. This survey certainly will help us with that. I also have a series of departmental meetings. I meet with my entire department at least two sessions once a year to disseminate this information, and it also is my goal to not have this be a book that sits on the shelf and collects the dust because there's really too much in this particular one that is more unique to the ones that we've done in the past. That give us a lot clearer idea of who the people are that we are not serving, who have not come across our doors. We know we're in the business of pleasing people, and we're not going to please every single one of them, but we have had a tremendous growth in this valley, and this has clearly indicated here that there are lots of people with a lot of other ideas of things they want to see done that we have perhaps tackled. And also some clear indicators within the wards. So this does become part of our budget strategy, our strategic plan strategy, our goals for the future, financial decisions, even the performance evaluations that are done within all of the divisions, as well as, in most particularly, our marketing efforts. We are in the midst of a recruitment for a marketing supervisor now, and we are searching and have recruited for someone with a specific marketing background to help us get more word out about what our department is offering and what we do. So we welcome the constructive criticism that the survey has offered us, and we did look behind the scenes and between the lines to see what's really being said.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Can you tell me, Dr. Jackson, or maybe the manager could tell me, have we had to use eminent domain in order to acquire land for our parks?
Not, to the best of my recollection, we never have, no.
Good. I guess we need land. We usually get it from, what, BLM or...
Primarily, our new parks have been built on BLM land, yes.
Very good, okay. It was interesting to me that a hundred percent of the responses indicated that there's at least conditional support as far as a tax measure for improvements to the parks. Where in the report do we find that?
The findings by Ward, a section of the report which is the fourth section, breaks down the specific tables of results for how people...well, actually, it's the appendix A is where the data is, the fifth section of the report.
That's usually a pretty good indicator as to how serious the folks are about answering these questions when they say that they would even consider taxes to assure an effective park program.
Mr. Mayor, that's very correct, and compared to other communities where we've done this, we thought that a hundred percent response to at least conditional support for new facilities was stronger than we usually see it. Usually, there's a certain percentage that won't do anything. I'm having trouble finding that.
Okay, that's okay. When you find it, if you'd be kind enough to advise my office.
It's in the key findings sections here.
Page eight, in the executive summary, it's summarized, and we'll figure out where the backup data is for it.
Right, I saw it in the summary, of course. I'm trying to find the backup material for that. If you come across that, please let Dr. Jackson know.
We'll let you know.
She'll let me know. Very good. Okay, yes, Councilman Brown?
Dr. Scott, likewise, it's a great body of work. I'd be interested if you could just comment on a couple more general questions, not so much specific to the wards of the city, but especially in comparison to other municipalities that you've worked with. Are we on the right track as far as what we do focusing our budget dollars and capital investments and programming compared to other cities?
Well, what we did for the city of Las Vegas was survey the citizens. So what I'm prepared to speak about is what your citizens told us. We didn't do an analysis of your programs.
Then let's go beyond this report. I just, if you could, or you'd be willing to just offer an opinion on the condition of the industry. We get feedback sometimes as far as what we offer recreational and leisure activities. Dr. Jackson and her department enjoy a wonderful reputation. But we also find, as I'm sure most cities, that those dollars are shrinking, they're becoming far more competitive, and just from an industry perspective, private sector versus public sector, competition or conflict in those. Overall, what do you think as far as the recreation industry as a whole? Are cities refocusing efforts or they continually going out and doing what we do, try to build the facilities, the community centers, the senior centers? Just, I'd be interested in your perspective.
Well, we're seeing a real split between central cities and suburban jurisdictions. A lot of the suburban jurisdictions, the population is growing rapidly, and there's more income, and we're seeing a lot of new facilities getting built there while central cities are struggling to maintain the infrastructure they have or keep up with it. Las Vegas is a different dynamic with your population changing as rapidly as it is. Having any idea what you're doing is, I think, a remarkable accomplishment with the demographic changes you're experiencing. It seems to me that your staff are really on top of trying to align investments with the desires of the citizens and keeping facilities up. It was great to hear you naming a new community center today and a new park, so we think your investments are going very well.
Okay. Without hiring you to do more, I'd certainly look...this is wonderful, but I think as Dr. Jackson goes into her strategic planning retreat with her staff, my concern has always been that as we as a city and certainly as a state, we're starting to see some ballot initiatives. We had property tax rollbacks. I've always been concerned with recreation activities being the first to be cut. We've seen it across the country and how we as a city and especially as a department can become as strengthened as possible anticipating those additional pressures as far as budget constraints. I've read and seen a lot of examples where cities are in a position where they have to close parks, close community centers, lose funding, and I guess we can't talk today or unless we hire you to do additional research. But I'd be interested in how, with your background and experience, how you'd recommend to the city to become stronger, to get in front of that curve or anticipate the day when it comes that we're under even more pressure to start eliminating or cutting back, and where traditionally the industry of recreation and leisure has been able to succeed in fighting back those pressures, or where they've relented and given up some components to strengthen other elements of their overall strategy.
Well, one of the things, as we designed this survey and worked with your leisure services staff on the nature of Las Vegas and the citizens we were trying to get to, one of the things that is a complicated thing in this...it's complicated in a lot of regions, but it's especially complicated here, is where exactly the city limits fall compared to where the economy is and where people live. If I was going to make two recommendations about how could you strengthen the future of parks and recreation in this area, it would be getting a pretty direct link between system development charges and development investment and funding for the services through leisure services and parks. I would think that should be connected. And second, I would try and develop a regional partnership that gets Las Vegas and North Las Vegas and unincorporated Clark County working together because, you know, one of the complexities, you take a city with an irregular shape like Las Vegas and then ask citizens whether they use the facilities. They don't know whether the facility they're going to is in Las Vegas or North Las Vegas, and they don't care. You know, they just want to go to the park or they want to go to the community center. And trying to get that as a stronger regional partnership so you're sharing resources, I think, would be the logical way to go. I know that's politically complicated, but...
Well, another reason for consolidation.
Thank you, your honor, and again, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Okay. Hope somebody in the business community hears the word consolidation and begins to start a campaign so we can really become a real city. Okay, yes, did you want to be heard?
Very interesting. From parks to consolidation.
You have to...
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. I request a public copy of the Citizen Interest Survey Report. Thank you.
Very good. Be made available. Okay, any other comments or questions? All right, no action is required, but it was a great report. There's no question about that. There's tons of information, and I really try to find that area about the taxes because that's remarkable. To me, that's remarkable.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, item fifty-seven is R. seventy-one dash two thousand six, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Pursuant to the Provisions of NRS two sixty-eight point oh-six-three, Finding that the proposed sale of city-owned property located generally at the northwest corner of Stewart Avenue and Mojave Road to Urban Lofts, Roman numeral five, limited, is for the purpose of redevelopment and is in the best interest of the public. This is in Ward Three, and this is a companion item to City Council item number thirty-nine, which is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Sale of Approximately Two Point Eight Three Acres of Vacant Land Located at the Northwest Corner of the Intersection of Stewart Avenue and Mojave Road from the City of Las Vegas to Urban Lofts Fifteen Limited for the Purpose of Redevelopment. Ward Three, of course.
Scott Adams, Director of the Office of Business Development. There are two items here, and the reason we had to trail the resolution is that, or actually trail the purchase and sale agreement item is under state law now. We must make the resolution a finding before we actually enter into any agreement to actually dispose of property. So there are two items. One is a resolution of finding that's required now under the new provisions of AB three twelve that basically state that finds that this action that we'll be taking is a redevelopment disposition. Recently, we...this site, and I do have it on the overhead here, this respects property the city owns on the intersection of Stewart and Mojave. That site was added into the redevelopment area. But I think what I'd like to do is put on a few...
Where's the detention facility?
Facts here. One, the site is in the redevelopment area, and if you see from the overhead, it's directly across the street from the city's jail, immediately adjacent to the Coca-Cola plant and right next to the interstate highway system. And I commend these gentlemen for stepping up to the plate and proposing to redevelop this site because clearly I think it meets the test of a site that is in need of redevelopment. The proposal is for fifty-four units of owner-occupied for-sale townhomes. The project will create about thirteen and a half million dollars of private investment, create about two-hundred-and-fifty construction jobs, and put about thirteen and a half million dollars of taxable investment on the tax rolls. Those are things that are in the resolution of finding that I wanted to state for the public record because I think it's important to establish the finding and the record that's in that resolution. So with that, I would recommend approval of the resolution of finding, and then I'll actually get into the details of the actual item itself for the purchase and sale agreement.
Very good, thank you. Gentlemen?
Good morning. My name is Frank Robertson. I'm with Urban Lofts, and this is Trinity Slotman with me. We're wanting to build fifty-four townhomes on this land. We looked around Las Vegas to see what was available, and Economic Development pointed this parcel out and said, you know, it's across the street from a detention facility. So selling townhomes there is probably going to be a little bit difficult for us in some ways, but we feel like we bring a product to the market that shows value. We have three other projects already in the city of Las Vegas, and happily, we've just sold our first townhome to a teacher, which is part of, I think, what you were trying to do with, you know, teachers...
Is that in the eleventh and Stewart area?
Yes, it is.
And you're all framed over there now?
Yeah, we're in the process of framing right now on our first park.
And for those who aren't aware, we call these the Tin Homes. This is a very interesting product that was brought to our attention about two years ago, I guess.
Well, we're trying to bring attainable housing to Las Vegas, and we're wanting to move forward in that. move forward in that direction by acquiring another parcel that happens to be owned by the city, and moving forward with that idea.
Okay, thank you very much, it's very exciting, we appreciate it. All right.
On the resolution, Your Honor, I make a motion for approval, please.
Let's vote, please. Post. Yeah, I'm, wait a second, it's my fault. Okay, post, please. Motion carries, thank you. Astronomist, were you okay?
Yes.
All right, very good. And item 39, would you like to address that, Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir. This is a standard purchase and sale agreement that we use on a lot of our projects. It really comprises the site, which is a 2.83 acre site. Urban Lofts is paying us appraised value. The appraised value of the site is $1,480,000 for the 2.83 acres. The resolution that we just passed was really because we didn't use the auction process. We went through an RFP process in selecting Urban Lofts, but they are paying appraised value, so we weren't asking for any exemption as to appraised value. They are planning on building 54 units of fee simple townhomes. I have on the overhead some shots of information that they provided in their proposal to us during the RFP process. There's a sketch of their site plan and a few shots of some typical townhomes that they've built in other cities. This agreement comprises a six-month escrow period for the actual close of escrow for sale of property. They have one year after close of escrow to start construction, and then two years after commencement of construction to complete the project. They have tendered their $25,000 earnest money deposit, and we do reserve the right to reenter the site should they not be able to perform after that one and two-year period. If they were, for some reason, didn't perform, we would be able to reenter, take the site back at the site, at the price we sold it for, and get the property back into our inventory. So the site will require some, and the reason for a lengthy escrow is they will require some entitlements in terms of the site zone CF, it'll need to be rezoned and go through the city's entitlement process. With those provisions, I would recommend approval of the purchase and sale agreement as presented before you.
Could you give me an idea as to what the cost of the home will be?
They'll be in the, probably the late 200s is what our price is at the moment.
And how many square feet?
Two thousand.
Two thousand. Very good. Well, I hope you get the word out to the, to the teachers, that the, for some reason, we don't have very good communication with the teachers, because we have programs that we're offering them the kitchen sink, and they're not taking advantage of them as far as rental subsidies and as far as benefits on mortgages and the like. And I hope that we can have a better line of communication with them, because this product that you have is just ideal. I mean, it's very, very urban and central, it's a great product.
If, Your Honor, could provide us with some information on what those helpful things could be for teachers, we'd be happy to, in our marketing, to try to promote that and to bring that to the forefront.
Okay, well, Dr. Shelby would be happy to get something lined up between you and the school district, because I think that we're missing the boat if they're not going to take advantage of this. Okay?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Who is it that you contact in the school district when you have these projects? With whom are you working?
Georgianne Rice.
Georgianne Rice?
I'm sorry, Councilman, I can't tell you. Orlando was not here right now.
Oh, okay.
It's been Georgianne.
Is she the right person, Councilwoman?
Well, yes, except several times, things have gotten lost down the cracks over there in Human Resources. I don't know if they're overloaded or what, but...
Because this is a great program for teachers.
It is, it is.
And we're, we want to be part of the solution to the educational issues that we have in the community here, and this is a way we can contribute, so we'll try to do something for you and with you, okay? Did you want to be heard?
Tom McGowan, local resident. The principals assert that they are headquartered in Houston, Texas, which is fairly close to Nevada. Just a stone's throw. This is an excellent product. It is not prefab, it is not modular, and it is adaptable to almost any neighborhood in this city. A fabulous, needed program, not only for teachers at their R and E in Nevada, but everybody else. If necessary, I'll become a teacher. In fact, I'll promote this product for you.
We'll save one for you.
In a very cost-effective manner, cost-effective manner. So my recommendation very strongly is approve the item without further hesitation. Thank you.
All right. Mayor Broton?
Your Honor, it's been brought up. We have proposed new school a block away from this location here. It's also about a block and a half away from your location at Eastern and Fremont Street. My question is, you have two proposals on, you have two projects on Eastern Street, or on Fremont Street. Where are we at on those projects?
Trinity Slotman with Interurban Construction and Urban Lofts. We hired a new engineer to take over on Eastern, and our new engineer is moving along very nicely in Fremont. We got through a training study, so we're looking probably about five, six weeks on starting Fremont, and maybe January as far as starting Eastern and Fremont.
This program that we got for the school, the teachers, is about $500,000 that we allow them, $30,000 or whatever for a down payment. They have to work at an at-risk school, support this when we first enacted it. We did enlarge upon that, but we have two elementary schools in this area, well, actually three elementary schools, we've got a brand-new high school. I just think that if we, if you got in there and got these built right away, that we would have a lot easier time selling them. This location here, on the overhead here, I see, is this a three-story structure that we're looking at here?
Yes, it is.
Are we going to have three stories down there?
Yes, all of our townhomes are three stories.
That's great. Ronnie's got a better picture than I do. I'm sitting here looking at Ronnie's, it's really pretty. I've really been interested in these ten homes, as the mayor called them, for quite some time. I really can't wait till we get one completed. My staff went down to Houston and looked at them down there, and they just come back and raved about what the insides look like, the floor plans and stuff. And so I hope that this is a huge success at this location, because there's some fourplexes just to the west of this location. I hope you go in there and try to purchase some of those and build some more. That would certainly help you. We do have, it's, we've been in there with our staff for the last year, so we're trying to get some of them cleaned up and stuff. We're going to have some vacant property there on the corner where the school is now, there on 28th Street. Roy Martin is moving to the south and building a brand-new school. They're going to start construction there any time, and we're going to be tearing that school down that the city owns, a couple pieces of property right there on the corner. And so I'm really interested in making sure that not only are we going to, you know, be upgraded by your project, but I'm also looking at trying to upgrade other areas around you there. And so, oh, and we do have a high school just across the street from the detention center, too, that has many teachers there, too. It's an at-risk school. And so it's a great location, it's a great product, Your Honor, and I would make a motion to approve item number 39 with all of staff's conditions, please.
Very good, let's vote.
Thanks, Trinity.
Mayor Broton, I'll tell you, working with Trinity has been a jewel for us.
I've worked with him a hundred times.
Yeah, they've been real great. We had an opportunity to send our staff back to Houston to go and see these...
Your staff went down, too?
Absolutely.
Susan Rado went down, they was awesome.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You know, I would suggest for the schools that are already there, those teachers probably have places already, although no one's coming in. If you're going through the central office, who is Georgianne Rice, who's very capable, but that's a big, big generic place where people are coming, but usually if a new school is going to be built, and as Councilman Reese said, you said there was a new school going up near there? Councilman Reese?
Well, they're replacing, there's a brand-new high school, this is the second year, and there's a brand-new middle school starting construction there, they're replacing...
Well, what hap- excuse me, what happens is that they will appoint the principal of the new school about a year before the school opens. And during that time, she is recruiting and she's talking with people one-on-one, and I think that might help if you can find out who, and you can through the district, who the new principal is, and how to talk, and then talk with them. What I'm trying to say is, there is a problem. It's amazing to me that we haven't gotten more use from educators of these places. And as you look at it, it seems to me it might be that they're not hearing about it at the right time. Well, if you get to the principal who's out there recruiting the teachers at the time, maybe before they even moved to the area, and she can use that information and let each one know, that might help. Just a thought that it might help.
Well, we have, we have John S. Park Crestwood Elementary School for try at risk schools, we have the brand-new Hollingsworth Elementary School, we have the brand-new Sunrise Acres Elementary School, and when these teachers are relocated at these locations, and we have the Robert Lunt, we have the Canvero, we have the new high school, we have Roy Martin, we have probably, I guess, I don't know how many teachers are in each school, but in this area here, we haven't had any new housing. There's no apartments for rent, there's no new houses to buy. And so, to me, it's, the houses on Fremont Street are in between four of those schools. The ones on Eastern and Fremont Street are in the same location, and these are the same location. And so there's many, many teachers that haven't had the opportunity to buy a house, or maybe even rent a house. There's no, there's no houses for rent, no houses to buy, no apartments in these areas here. And so I think it's great that these people are going to be able to have the opportunity to buy in three different locations, and I just hope that the school district does. You know, I hope you do meet with them and talk to them and get this, because we will help them, and I think it's, I think it's great. It's just to see something like that right there, to have one of my kids buy a house like that, to me, it's just awesome. You know, they, it'd be, not only my kids, but myself, I would even live in one of those. Maybe have, maybe I'll come and look at it. Anyhow, I make a motion for approval, sir.
All right, let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries, good. All right, good luck, fellas.
Thank you very much.
Let's get them built.
Yes. Item 58 is being trailed, to be heard in conjunction with Redevelopment Agency items number four and five, and we'll move on to item 59. 59 is discussion and possible action on the fifth amended and restated bylaws of City of Las Vegas Community Development Recommending Board. Anybody from the city want to address that? Is Mr. Harson here, or...
Your Honor, I'll be happy to. It appears that the City Council, per the Department of Neighborhood Services, the City Council approved the removal of home investment partnership and low-income housing trust funds from the community development recommending process, and the proposed amendment reflects this council action in their bylaws.
All right, thank you very much, Astronomist, thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Thank you.
We'll follow Ms. Astronomist's recommendation.
All right, let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries, thank you. Item 60 is appointment of members to the City of Las Vegas Community Development Recommending Board. The Department of Neighborhood Services recommends the following: reapportments, Tony Brujes, Betty Craig, Rulia Davis-Hogard, Doug Damasi, M. Dean Dupalo, Ken Evans, Israel Fuentes, Jay Heiner, Barbara Hofsummer, Debbie Consora, Pam Kowalski, Mark Leffgawitz, Tony Mayorga, Tom McGrath, Peggy Pound, Alejandro Rodriguez, Chris Som, D.J. Stutz, Marshall Washington, and June White, and new appointments, Ann Blue, Melina Burnett, Alan Carter, and Tammy Wilder. Is there a motion to follow the recommendations of Neighborhood Services?
No question to comment, Your Honor, I'll move to a point.
All right, let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries, thank you. 61 is the Park and Recreation Advisory Commission. Brian Sitters' term expires January 8, 2009. He resigned August 10, 2006. The options are to appoint a new member to fill Mr. Sitters' vacant seat, and this is Councilwoman Tarkanian's appointment. Councilwoman?
Yes, I move to approve Pauline Kennedy for this appointment.
All right, there's, that's a motion, let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries, thank you. Item 62 is Park and Recreation Advisory Commission, Chris Lazaro. His term expires December 12, 2006. He resigned August 23, 2006. Margine Shay, her term expires December 11, 2008. She resigned August 8, 2006. Our options are to appoint a new member to fill Mr. Lazaro's unexpected term, unexpired term, pardon me, and appoint a new member to fill Ms. Shay's unexpired term. Councilman Brown, do you have a recommendation for Mr. Lazaro's seat?
Thank you, Your Honor, we've received a couple inquiries, and so I would ask to hold my component of this agenda item in abeyance for two weeks, so we have a chance to talk to those applicants.
Okay.
I would follow that request also.
All right, so Councilman Reese and Councilman Brown both moved to obey for two weeks.
October 4.
To October 4. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Good. Okay, we go on to the next book. Thanks. Thank you. Item number 63 is Bill Number 2006-44, Annexation Number ANX 12504. The property is located at 6820 West Anne Road. Councilwoman, do you wish to have it read?
Please, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Bill Number 2006-44, An Ordnance to Extend the Boundaries of the City to Particularly Describe the Land to be Annexed, to Make Its Inhabitants Subject to the Law's Obligations and Benefits of the City, and to Provide for Other Related Matters.
Thank you. Is there a motion, Councilwoman?
Move to approve.
Let's vote, please. Post, please. Motion carries, thank you. 64 is Bill Number 2006-45, Annexation Number ANX 13642, property located at 5745 North Rainbow Boulevard. Councilwoman, do you wish to have it read?
Please, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Bill Number 2006-45, An Ordnance to Extend the Boundaries of the City, to Particularly Describe the Land to be Annexed, to Make Its Inhabitants Subject to the Law's Obligations and Benefits of the City, and to Provide for Other Related Matters.
Thank you. And your motion, Councilwoman?
Move to approve.
Please vote. Motion carries, thank you. Item 65 is Bill Number 2006-46, Annexation Number ANX 13790, property located at 6585 and 6574 West Cheyenne Avenue. Do you wish to have it read?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Bill Number 2006-46, An Ordnance to Extend the Boundaries of the City, to Particularly Describe the Land to be Annexed, to Make Its Inhabitants Subject to the Law's Obligations and Benefits of the City, and to Provide for Other Related Matters.
Thank you. And Councilwoman, your motion?
Move to approve.
Please vote. Post, please. Motion carries, thank you. Item 66 is Bill Number 2006-47, Annexation Number ANX 13936, property located at 4901 Jean Avenue. Councilwoman, do you wish to have it read?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Good.
Bill Number 2006-47, An Ordnance to Extend the Boundaries of the City, to Particularly Describe the Land to be Annexed, to Make Its Inhabitants Subject to the Law's Obligations and Benefits of the City, and to Provide for Other Related Matters.
Thanks. Councilwoman, your motion?
Move to approve.
Please vote. Post, please. Motion carries, thank you. Item 67 is Bill Number 2006-49, Authorizes a City Director of Finance of the City of Las Vegas, Nevada, to Perform the Duties of the City Council Relating to the Apportionment, Combination, or Reapportionment of Assessments in the City's Special Improvement Districts. Councilwoman?
I'd like to have it read, please.
Thanks.
Bill Number 2006-49, An Ordnance Delegating to the City Director of Finance the Duties of the City Council Relating to the Apportionment, Combination, or Reapportionment of Assessments in the City's Special Improvement Districts Pursuant to NRS 271-425, and Providing Other Matters Related There, Too.
Thank you. And your motion, please.
Move to approve.
Thank you, let's vote. Motion carries, thank you. 68 is Bill Number 2006-50, Establishes a Regional Sewer Connection Charge as Means of Funding the City's Share of an Alternate Conveyance System to be Built and Operated by the Regional Clean Water Coalition. Councilwoman, do you wish to have it read?
Please.
Thank you.
Bill Number 2006-50, First Amendment, An Ordnance to Establish a Regional Sewer Connection Charge as a Means of Funding the City's Share of an Alternate Conveyance System to be Built and Operated by the Regional Clean Water Coalition, and to Provide for Other Related Matters.
Thank you. And your motion, please?
Move to approve.
And that's as amended.
As amended.
Right, let's vote. Post. Motion carries, thank you. Item 69 is Bill Number 2006-51, This Amends Ordnance Number 5847 to Delete Certain Provisions Related to Sleeping Quarters Within 500 Feet of Any Deposit of Urine or Feces. Councilman Ross, do you wish to have it read?
I do, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Bill Number 2006-51, An Ordnance to amend Ordnance Number 5847 to...
Bill number 2006-51, an ordinance to amend ordinance number 5847 to delete certain provisions related to sleeping quarters within 500 feet of any deposit of urine or feces, and to provide for other related matters.
All right, thank you. Councilman Ross, your motion, please?
Does there be any public comment?
I'll take public comment.
I'll be there, Your Honor.
My motion is to approve, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And I compare with Councilman Ross, a couple related questions. Does the ordinance apply to porta-potties and mental devices? Are the sleeping quarters interior inhabitable or exterior and uninhabitable? Are the urine and feces of human origin or of domestic animals' origin? And I request a public copy of that ordinance. The point of these questions is to illustrate sometimes bills are put together, may not necessarily cover all the bases. If you were to cover all the bases, you might find some interesting aspects of this particular ordinance, this bill. So, I approve it, and I approve you utilizing any opportunity you may have to study matters in greater depth before you vote on them. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, there's been a motion. Let's vote, please. Motion carries, thank you. Items 70 through, well, 73 has been stricken. So, items 70 through 72, which are bills 2006-31, 2006-52 through 2006-53, are eligible for adoption at a later meeting. So, we'll move on to new bills. New bills, items 74 and 75, bills 2006-55 and 2006-56, will be heard at the Recommending Committee meeting on Tuesday, October 3, 2006. Would you please read those?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Bill number 2006-55, an ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city, to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide for other related matters. And bill number 2006-56, an ordinance to clarify the applicability of recently updated development standards pertaining to walls and fences, and to provide for other related matters.
All right, thank you. Councilwoman, will you be available on October the 3rd to consider this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Ross, will you be available?
Yes, sir.
Very good. So, I'll sign these bills to the two of you, and I appreciate that. The council meeting will remain open to hear council item number 40, to be heard with agency item number 3, and council item 58, to be heard with agency items 4 and 5, and we'll move on to the redevelopment agency and call to order the redevelopment agency meeting of September 20, 2006, and this meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. Item 40 is a report and possible action of the redevelopment agency comprehensive capital improvement plan, five-year projection, awards 1, 3, and 5. And council item 40 and redevelopment agency item number 3 have the same verbiage, so I'll read those items as well, if I can find them. I'll find them. Okay, item 40 is right behind. Uh-oh. All right, oh, the same report and possible action of the redevelopment agency and comprehensive capital improvement plan, five-year projection, 1, 3, and 5. Okay, and agency item number 3, same verbiage? Okay, that'll be report and possible action of the redevelopment agency comprehensive capital improvement plan, five-year projection, awards 1, 3, and 5. Okay, I think that's it. Mr. Adams?
Yes, Scott Adams, Director of the Austin Business Development. The reason why we've really got two items here, one on the council agenda and one on the RDA agenda, is that the capital improvement program that I'm going to be presenting includes properties that the city owns, and therefore revenues from those properties, as well as redevelopment agency tax increment finance revenues. So, part of what we're considering is matters of the city, and part of what we're considering are matters of the RDA. What I want to do is give you a very brief overview of something that I think has been done for the first time in the city, and that is a comprehensive capital improvement program, looking at revenues of the redevelopment agency, both on the land side and on the tax increment side. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about why we need one, what the scope of it is, what those revenue projections are, and then what the recommended expenditures are that we've been working on. In terms of the scope, this is a five-year plan. It looks over the next five fiscal years. It looks at both TIF revenue and land sales. Again, that's the reason why we have the joint agenda. We've also run a projection on the 18% set aside. Obviously, I think I've mentioned this before, that as our tax increment revenue increases, so does our 18% set aside. That's established by state law. We've put together an expenditure program. It really is essentially sub-funds of an overall tax increment fund in terms of targeting money to specific initiatives. And then, there is a separate City Hall sources and uses summary, and when we get to that, you'll understand that a little bit better. Why do we need a CIP? Well, we have realized substantially higher levels of land sales and taxable development downtown. I would have to say, I'd use the term, we've turned the corner as it relates to redevelopment agency, to the point now where we're really starting to generate, and we can see through projections, the generation of tax increment revenue. There's also a need in redevelopment to look at reinvesting a lot of that proceed back into the redevelopment area to continue the process of redevelopment. Redevelopment is a process, it's not a static action. And then, to implement strategies for the districts that we've divided our redevelopment agency in our downtown into, and to complement the development that occur in those districts and areas, and then to follow on past catalytic investments. You, as a council, and past councils, have invested heavily in the redevelopment agency and in downtown, and we need to follow those investments with additional investment to ensure long-term payoff to the citizens of the City of Las Vegas. In the revenues, we're looking at four different revenue sources. We're looking at those projects where we've actually entered into a TIF rebate on. Those are projects that most of are under construction, they're at least under their first phase of construction, but we only get to capture 41% of the taxes. If you remember, the 18% set aside goes into that fund, the other 41% gets rebated back to the developer, so we get to capture 41%. We also have a category where we have projects under construction, and we're claiming or projecting that we'll realize 100% of the tax revenues from those projects. Those we can estimate with a great deal of confidence, because the project's under construction. And then, the third category is the softest category of revenues. We have so many entitled projects downtown, it is very difficult for us at this point to project when those projects are going to go under construction and when we'll realize tax increment revenue. So, we've taken a very conservative view on those for purposes of the CIP and said we're projecting only 25% of the residential projects will get built and realize a revenue over a five-year period. And then, finally, there's a category of commercial projects. We're a little more confident on those, we've looked at those, and we believe that they'll get built sometime over that five-year period. They're a little more certain than the frenzy that we've realized in the entitlement of residential projects in the RDA. This is the first category, TIF rebate projects. Those are those projects, projects like Allure, the World Market Center, the Factory Outlet Mall, the IRS Building, where they've had at least the entire project, our first phase under construction, and over time, we'll start to see an increase in revenues from those as they get into their latter phases of development. World Market Center is a great case in point, where they've completed Phase 1, they're nearly complete with Phase 2, and they're about ready to start Phase 3. So, as each of those phases gets under construction, goes on the tax rolls, we realize additional tax revenues. The next category are those projects that are under construction where there was no TIF rebate. We get 100% of the TIF rebate, less the 18% set aside. Now, if you notice here, we have a small projection in the first year, and then it jumps, because we anticipate that all these projects will get complete, will go on the tax rolls, and then we have a relatively uniform projection. What's going to happen, though, is as more of these speculative projects start construction, we're going to get more and more of that into the pipeline for revenue for redevelopment agency TIF revenue. That's this category here. If you notice, we're looking at a very small, early-year projection for revenues under our entitled and proposed projects, and we believe that 25% of those will start, will make their way into the pipeline and develop revenues. So, that really starts to jump after the first three years. Those projects, then, will become ones that are under construction, and we have very high degree of confidence of what those revenues will be. I think the interesting thing about these is these are residential projects, and you can estimate those much more accurately than you can commercial. When you sell condo units, they actually go on the tax rolls for the actual sale price of the units, and that's what they go for. On a commercial project, they're less definite. The assessor often discounts the value of the project before it goes on the rolls to reflect soft costs and other things, and it's not quite so scientific. And so, with our residential projects, once they go under construction, we've got a handle on what they're selling your units for. We have a pretty good idea what they're going to generate in tax increment revenue. And then, the final category are those commercial projects. We have some of those in the pipeline now that will generate some revenues, and then we have considerably more in that pipeline in the future that will come on in the next years, 3, 4, and 5. This is, as all those revenues go up, so does our 18% set aside. This really shows what would happen over this five-year period to set-aside funds. Now, in our capital improvement program, we are not proposing any use of those funds. Those go into a separate fund in the city, and they're used by the Neighborhood Services Department for the development and creation of affordable housing. We are projecting the use of only two properties in the CIP for general initiatives under the redevelopment agency CIP, and that's our CityMark project and our Bulldog site. Those we're projecting to be sold in this year and the next year. We're actually on track for the CityMark project, because we've actually closed down that, and they owe us funds as they sell units per the terms of our agreement. And this is what it looks like over time. Starting out rather modestly, although the $15 million in '06-'07 is a considerable increase over past years in the TIF Special Revenue Fund, you can see that should these residential projects, these little softer ones, start to hit the tax rolls, the redevelopment agency would start to realize fairly significant volume of dollars, which is the reason why we need a capital improvement program, to really start to guide those investments in the future. City Hall, this was a very, very difficult one. The city manager had tasked us with the task of how do we look at our real estate assets downtown and in the redevelopment agency, and how does that convert to a principal amount in terms of equity that we could use towards the development or construction of a new city hall? So, what we've done, within the confines of this plan, is reserved the use of the sale proceeds of all of these properties committed towards the development of a new city hall. And they're all there itemized individually, and what it shows is that we could bring to bear out of equity in our own property about $200 million in total value against the development of a new city hall. I think the real fundamental issue here is when do they get sold? Will they sell for what we're projecting it for? I think we've been fairly conservative here on a per-acre estimate. And then, how do you convert that, those sale proceeds that might occur over a three-to-five year period, into the money you need at the time you build city hall? But it's very clear that we have that equity available in our real estate assets, that we could pledge towards the development of a new city hall should we desire to do so. So, what we've done, out of respect for that project, we've not committed the use of these resources to any other project in the CIP. And then, this is a summary of how we propose to reinvest these projects. It's hard when you're looking out five years to really get an understanding of specific projects that we might want to fund, especially the third, fourth, and fifth year out. So, we've created a category of projects for those council wards that are in the RDA, and those are simply allocations of funds that could be made available for projects within wards within the RDA. From there, we go into land acquisition and so forth down the line, into a number of initiatives, all designed to support and reinforce the continuing redevelopment, not of just the core downtown area, within the Centennial Plan area, but the entire RDA. At the tail end, you'll see a map that depicts all this geographically, and you see that it's pretty well uniformly distributed throughout the RDA, and especially on those areas surrounding the core of downtown. This is the expenditure detail, and I'm not going to go into that in individual detail, but this really takes that last slide and breaks it down by year into specific initiative. And as I mentioned before, we're really, with the exception of a couple projects, like the Fifth Street School, and then we have a school site land assembly there, we have really looked at allocating funds into initiatives, things like an Eastern Corridor Initiative, an MLK Corridor Initiative. And at this point, haven't specifically defined how those dollars get invested. The idea is that they would go into that initiative for that particular corridor on very specific projects that could be done along those areas, in furtherance of redevelopment objectives. So, it's really more of a budget of the overall redevelopment agency fund by initiatives. Some cases, there are some specific projects. In most cases, they're fairly high-level initiatives that we propose to invest the dollars in over the next five years. As you can see in the lower right-hand corner, if our projections come out on target, there's about $125 million that could be invested over the five-year period in projects in the redevelopment area. I think one of the projects I'd like to highlight is the school land assembly project. I think the idea there is that part of what we're doing in the RDA is capturing taxes that would normally go to other taxing entities. And this is in recognition of the fact that some of those taxes would normally go to the schools. And what we're doing is proactively saying, we would like to work with the school system and identify the fact that there may need to be a new school somewhere in the RDA to support what's happening in the redevelopment of especially the downtown area, and work towards assembling a site that could be used by the schools to build a new school to support redevelopment. Therefore, sort of working with them on what was the preemption of their revenues. And then, there are a number of other projects. We continue our visual improvement program. We continue our brownfields initiative. We've allocated additional funds for land acquisition. I think this is very consistent with your recent workshop that you just held, where you talked about being more proactive in land assembly and directing more funds into that process. We've also got funds for undergrounding utilities. The Public Works Department is doing a Clear Skies project. That's going to need some funds available to work on a block-by-block basis with development interests, as they build their projects to underground utilities, consistent with that overall underground master plan. So, this is just a plan or a guide that we would use over the next five years, and how we would reinvest these revenues back into the redevelopment area. I think the caution here is, on the revenue side, there is one very large line item there, which is the entitled residential projects, which is fairly soft. So, this, one thing I should mention, that was the scope of this plan, is that this is effective July 1st, and we'll be continuing to update this every year, probably mid-year as well, to get a handle on what projects actually are under construction, and we can nail down as more firm revenues. So, we'll be continually revising this every year as we go along to give you a better snapshot of where we stand as we move through this process. Then, finally, this is a visual depiction of each of these initiatives. In some cases, they're corridor initiatives, in the case of MLK, of Fremont, of Eastern. In some cases, they're district projects, like the Entertainment District. Well, the Cultural Corridor is sort of a wide district, a wide corridor initiative, the Arts District. So, we've got pretty good geographic distribution throughout the RDA of how we plan to reinvest these funds back into the RDA. That is the end of my presentation. Staff recommends that both the City Council and the RDA both accept and approve this capital improvement program as presented.
Thank you very much, Mr. Adams. Terrific report. When I had my briefing yesterday by Mr. Van Gorp, he pointed out to me that when he came on board, what was that, about seven years ago?
Five years ago.
Five years ago at the agency. The agency was in the hole. I think they were $70,000 in the red. Is that correct?
Seventy million dollars.
Seventy million dollars in the red. Seventy million dollars in the red and now we're, what, in the black?
At least on an annual basis, yes. We're making all of our payments. Yes, sir.
Right, and now we're in the black.
That's correct.
Pretty darn good. Pretty darn good. All right, any other comments or questions? Did you want to be heard?
Yeah, great.
Okay.
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident, I request a public copy of the CIP plan.
No problem.
And also congratulate the director and staff, notably Mr. Van Gorp, for their excellent efforts over the past five years and beyond. Not seventy thousand, seventy, seventy million. And now you're looking at 200 million. Well, that's a start and a good one, but keep in mind, these projects are holistic. The city is holistic. You think of it that way and all of it will thrive. Don't do it in streaks. Make sure it's all integrated. Thanks.
Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. Adams, on the adoption of the CIP, is there enough flexibility built into objectives and specific project elements to allow us to move priorities or funding in different years depending on if a project is accelerated or things push back project timelines?
Absolutely. I think that's the reason why we've left it at a high level in terms of initiatives, to give you the flexibility of, of funding individual projects at a more fluid basis. And then these are just budget line items that, just like anything else, you can move things around and have that flexibility. So clearly, that's why we've established it the way we did.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Thank you very much. May I have a motion on Council Item Number 40, please?
Yes, Your Honor, I'm going to accept the report, please.
Thanks. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. On, may I have a motion on redevelopment item number three, please?
I'm going to accept the report, please.
Thank you. Let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you. And that's it. We'll move on to Council Item Number 58 and redevelopment agency items four and five. Council Item Number 58 is R 72-2006, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Consentings to the Undertakings of the City of Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency in Connection with the Commercial Visual Improvement Program Agreement between the Redevelopment Agency and Irvington Properties LLC, the Aruba Hotel and Spa located at 1215 South Las Vegas Boulevard, to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the Redevelopment Agency. Agency Number Four is RA 72006, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Resolution Finding the Project Proposed by the Commercial Visual Improvement Program Agreement between the Redevelopment Agency at Irvington Properties LLC to be in compliance with and in furtherance of the goals and objectives of the Redevelopment Agency. And Agency Number Five, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding a Commercial Visual Improvement Program Agreement with Irvington Properties LLC Providing Funds to Assist with Improvements to a Commercial Building Located at 1215 South Las Vegas Boulevard, Not to Exceed $50,000 Redevelopment Agency's Special Revenue Fund. All of these items are in Ward Three. Mr. Adams?
Yes, these three items are all respecting our visual improvement program grant request for the property at 1215 South Las Vegas Boulevard known as the Aruba Hotel. This project comprises about $100,000, $101,000 worth of signage and awning improvements to the face of the building that are visual from the street. You have on your overhead a, a before picture on the upper part and an after picture below to show the neon signage and blade signage as well as awning work that they're going to be doing in, as part of this. The funding would be split 50/50, up to an amount not to exceed $50,000 by the city through the visual improvement program by the redevelopment agency. This is one that also has a facade easement, as I've described previously. We hold that for five years. It amortizes over that five-year period such that should this property ever be redeveloped, then we would have some residual amount that comes back to us if it were ever redeveloped or removed during that five-year period. That was put in place for the protection of the redevelopment agency. The first resolution is one to be found by the city council, which basically consents to the actions taken by the redevelopment agency on this matter. The second resolution is a resolution of the redevelopment agency, which finds these actions consistent with redevelopment plan, that no other reasonable means of funding are available. And the third item is the actual approval of the funding and the agreement with the property owner for the funds and all the provisions respecting how those funds get used on the site and protections regarding the redevelopment agency. We do have with us here today Mr. Bob Russell, who's representing YESCO on behalf of the property owner. And staff recommends approval of all three items.
All right, thank you. What is on the side of the building?
I'm sorry?
I can't, I can't make out, I can't make out what's on the side of the building there. Can you help me?
That's the one, Scott.
What was it called? Thunderbird Lounge? Is that what it says?
Yeah, Thunderbird Lounge.
Okay, very good.
This is the south elevation, the pictures. It was supposed to have a north elevation.
Very good. That helps me.
What's inside the glass there?
This will give you a much better view.
Okay, now I know.
Inside the glass are olives, two thick, those will animate left to right. Animation on the bird and on the blade sign as well.
Tell the mayor there's gin in there.
There is gin in there.
Okay, all right. That looks, that's really going to look nice down there. That's a great sign. All right, any questions of Mr. Adams?
Yes, sir.
Yes, please.
Mr. Adams, who makes the findings that are necessary for this to qualify for the, the funds and specifically that there's, I don't know the verbiage, but that there's no reasonable alternative means to pay for this? How do we go about making that?
That, that's a difficult one. That's probably the most difficult one that we do. I, I think we proceed under the assumption that, that this is an incentive and an inducement to get the property owner to make these visual improvements that they otherwise don't find economically feasible to do, otherwise they would have already done them. And so by providing 50% matching funds, we're inducing the owner to invest where they otherwise wouldn't invest and there would be thus no other reasonable means of funding available. That is essentially the argument under which we move forward on these kinds of projects. I think the, the feeling is on the smaller property owner projects, they probably better meet that test than on the very large-scale projects where they can bring in institutional investment capital and, and very large scalability to fund and finance projects. With the little guys, so to speak, it's much, much more difficult for them to meet day-to-day operations and then on top of that, put money back into the, the visual improvement of their property.
Very good. Any other questions? All right, Counsel Reese, do you have a motion on Council Item Number 58, please?
On Council Item Number 50, I make motion for a follow-up statement for approval.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. And on Agency Item Number Four, please.
No questions, Congress. Make a motion for approval, please.
Thanks. Let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries. Thank you. And finally, on Agency Item Number Five.
Same motion, Your Honor. Motion for a follow-up statement for approval.
Thank you. Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Thanks for coming down. We'll close the city council meeting and we'll move on to Agency Item Number Six, which is a report and possible action regarding redevelopment agency projects currently under contract or in negotiations. Mr. Adams?
Okay, this is a continuation of our quarterly series of PowerPoint updates. I'll give you a quick heads up. Some of the pictures we have in here are dated mid-August because we had these ready for our last council meeting. So they've, we've rolled this presentation into this meeting. And, and actually, some of the progress is way beyond what you see in the pictures here because they've, it's, there's been a month elapsed, but, and I lost, there we go. I'm going to start with World Market Center. World Market Center is virtually complete with their second phase. We've all seen it. It's one of the largest buildings in Las Vegas. We're working very diligently with them on items they need to finance their third building and their plan is to finance and go forward with their third building sometime later this fall. And this gives you a, a visual depiction of all the phases put together. This is something we haven't shown in a while to kind of remind you of the scale of this project, that the World Market Center is truly a world market. It will comprise 12 and 1/2 million square feet when complete. Union Park moves along very nicely. I'll get into some of the individual projects. This is the, the new Newland Master Plan that we're moving through with Newland. We have interest in virtually every block now in Union Park at some level of interest by some developer, in some cases, multiple developers. This is still just a placeholder. Smith Performing Arts Center, do, they do have their architects on board. We're working very diligently with them on, on fitting a new design for the Performing Arts Center into the relocated site within the master plan and how that all works within the whole scope of the, the 61-acre master plan. The Alzheimer's Institute is moving through the city's permit process. We understand they will have a groundbreaking in October that could be for some grading and pre-construction groundbreaking and the actual groundbreaking on the building itself, where they're actually going to start construction of the facility should occur sometime in January. They're very well into the city's permit and approval process and our cities, our, both the building and safety department, planning and development, and our fast-tracking and are working diligently to follow that project. The World Jewelry Center is one that's also, we understand, having a great deal of success. They've indicated us tremendous success in signing up interest for their first building and we understand they'll be making some formal announcement on the results of that success sometime in October. Newland Properties, if you remember at a previous meeting, we amended our agreement with Newland to revise their block reservation from the related master plan to the new master plan. That's depicted here in red. They are working very, very diligently on their first-phase master plan, which is the center two blocks of this six-block area. That would include housing, retail, as well as a boutique hotel. And they've actually lined up and identified the boutique hotel developer as part of their project. The Premium Outlets, this is one of those pictures where a month goes by and there's a lot more progress. This is what the garage looked like on the left-hand side. It's, it's, when you look at it, it looks almost done out in the field. They are going at tremendous pace in getting that garage built. On the right-hand side is their master plan for the expansion of the outlets where they would build out into the parking area and then have two garages, one on either end of the project. They're working to get the garage built as quickly as they can, their first garage, so they can start moving all of their customers into that garage so they can actually start in the expansion on the actual surface parking area where customers are parking right now. The Water Authority Building is topped out. It's moving along. They're doing interior work. They're doing some cladding work on the outside and that is going to very soon look very much like the sketch on the left-hand side. And, I mean, I think I can back up on this, but we're now at some 80-some entitled projects downtown representing 16,000 residential units. So I thought I'd just walk you through a few of the entitled residential or completed residential projects. This is a shot of Soho Loss, which is now open, looking towards the west, towards Newport Loss, both of which are charity development projects. The other thing we're doing, and one of the reasons for this shot, is we're working to move forward with streetscape improvements, rebuilding in the streets and sidewalks, connecting Las Vegas Boulevard to Long Hoover, at least between these two projects, and then looking beyond that to, in the future, all the way to Main Street. This is Newport Loss.
Your Honor, if I may, did you say, how many entitlements are downtown now?
Well, I think this slide said 86 for about 16,000 units.
16,000 residential units in the downtown area.
That's correct. I would caution, though, that some of those are very speculative and that's in my CIP revenue report, I, it's hard to say which of these are going to be the next ones to go in the ground. One of the big issues that the developers are facing right now are rapidly accelerating construction costs.
But those are exciting numbers, still the same.
Yes, if we get a small percentage of those, we're still going to get a lot more housing downtown. Right now, we have almost 2,000 units under construction in the down, in the downtown area. And I, they're not, I, I just came back from New York in the National Economic Development Conference and I don't know of anybody that has that many units, even New York, under construction in their downtown area. The Alert Towers, this is the sketch on the left, their first tower on the right. I think I mentioned this before, that one of the, the great things about this project is when you're coming up Sahara now, it fills in that void between the stratosphere and the north end of the Strip. And it creates a density in an, an urban scale that wasn't there before. And it really changes the character of that area. Jewel is another project where they are, you know, they have a outstanding contractor, Turner, that's just moving along very quickly. This project is very vertical now. They're almost to the second floor in a lot of their work, coming out of their garage level, their ground level of the garage. And we're very excited about this project. They continue to sell units at a very brisk pace. I don't know why I keep skipping ahead. That one that I skipped past was the Semi-Off Project. We've been working with them on a scaling back of their project. There's one where they looked at construction costs and they determined that the best way to proceed is on a scaled-back project, 55 feet or less, five stories, underground parking. And that way, they're able to keep their construction costs lower and make their numbers work a little bit better. Sandhurst is another one that we're hoping we'll get financed to very soon. This is our sales building on the right and their site and their sketch of their project on the left. It's about 400 units. Streamline Tower is another one that's under construction. This is a construction site. We all see it out our windows of City Hall every day. It, it is moving along very quickly. Martin Harris is a very large contractor. They're moving along very, very quickly. They will soon be at a level where then they start pouring a floor like every week or two, just like we see projects on the Strip. Hewitt Art Central is one that's now in sales. This is Eddie Haddad's project. This is at 200 Charleston. Evolution Towers, another one in sales. It's also in the arts district, really at Casino Center, Third, and Charleston. Lochtein, the reason I bring this one back in is that Lochtein is moving forward with tenant improvements for about half of their ground floor retail space. They have secured two tenants for the ground floor retail space, so we're going to start to see some activity in the ground floor retail of that building. I think that's one of the reasons why we have that policy. It puts sort of the burden, what, we give them a lot of things on the other side, no height limits, no setbacks, a lot of gives, but on the other hand, we ask them for ground floor retail. And then it puts pressure on the developer to fill that ground floor retail and create an active urban ground level in our downtown. You asked at a previous meeting to talk a little about some of the older projects that we worked on. Campage Place is one of those. These are, this is a little over 300 units of efficiencies. These, this is truly affordable housing. They're furnished efficiencies that rent for about $100 a week or $400 a month. So they're fulfilling a need for affordable housing in the downtown area. City Center Apartments is another one of those. This is actually mixed income. It's a combination of market rate and affordable units within the same project that receive federal home funds. And then we also have ground floor retail in this project. So it's mixed income as well as mixed use with ground floor retail on the base of this project.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Not to interrupt you, but if you don't mind, Your Honor.
Not at all.
Is there a waiting list for these two properties?
I believe both of these are all full. I, you know, I think one of the, the issues we've got is a lot of these projects that they come online at a very low rental rate, they have no problem at all getting rid of those units in terms of renting the units out because we do, rental rates in the Valley are just accelerating at an increasing rate.
If I could, Your Honor?
Yes, Counsel.
Just for Counsel Ross's edification, I had a person that I knew that worked at the 7-Eleven and he had applied for Campage Place and he was on a waiting list for over nine months. He finally got in. He just, he was just ecstatic about it.
And, and I'd like to throw in my two cents, that there was some concern with projects like this, that there may be issues as far as crime is concerned. Absolutely not.
Counsel Ross tells us $100.
Right, yeah. There were some bets taken on some of these, some of these projects and they're, they're not crack houses. They're pretty nice places to live. They're pretty nice places to live.
Fremont Village is another one that is actually now in the permit process. This is at Fremont and Bruce. This is proposed to be a rental project. There's some consideration maybe for condominiums, but this is another project that's moving forward into the permit process. Urban Loss, we just approved the Stewart Mojave Site. These are the three other sites they have. On the upper left-hand corner is their 11th Carson Site. You know, this is another one where 30 days makes a big difference in the photos. If you go out there now, there's actual roof lines and they're starting to look more like finished units. With a stick-built product, they can move very quickly through the construction process and they are well beyond what it shows here in mid-August. Moving to the Entertainment District, we're in the last phases of working with the Entertainment District Corporation on the streetscape plan. We'll be bringing to you in October and November the special improvement districts for maintenance and security, as well as the capital dollars to move forward with the development of the district. Beauty Bar continues to do well in the district. Griffin, this is what it now looks like. Their sign is up. We've been showing you the sign, a sketch of it for quite some time. It's up. The brick front is on the building. There's a lot of brick in the interior. It has sort of a medieval theme with the Griffin as its sort of mascot. They should be opening their club fairly soon. Next door is the Tattoo Parlor. Now you can start to see where their signage and their facade improvements, they sort of fit in to the overall visual neon elements of an entertainment district. Take One Nightclub, their improvements are complete, their awnings, they're neon and they're continuing to survive and do well with weekend entertainment, live entertainment. Downtown, this is another one that's moved along very quickly. Their brick facade is now done on Michael Cornway's Club, which is the rear building behind the 7-Eleven building on the corner of the Boulevard. It's fairly nondescript. He's done this on purpose. He didn't want a lot of gaudy signage and he wanted just a plain brick wall, an awning, and then a very, very low-key cocktail bar with live entertainment inside it. 601 Fremont is in the permit process as well for tenant improvements for 10,000 square feet of club space. They'll be bringing a club called Emos from Austin, Texas, live entertainment venue that will be coming into this facility. We're very excited about this, along with a few other things as well. This starts that first phase of their overall development plan, which you see on the left. That, when open, will give us our fifth club in the district on one side of the street and fifth with live entertainment. Neonopolis continues to look at its alternatives for how we could reposition itself. We've looked at three or four different alternatives with the property owner as to how they can fill the building with new tenants and reposition and rename the project. The Block continues to do very, very well. I think this is, you know, one of the outstanding examples that shows that ground floor retailing and entertainment works if you do it well in downtown. Frank Wright Plaza is representative of all the property that wraps around the post office. We continue to work with the owners of the Lady Luck on the development of a master plan for that site. We'll be bringing something to you fairly soon on that. They've been going through some revisions to their master plan for our review. Hennessy's is open, doing very, very well. Same with Mickey Finn's. Paul Hennessy has committed to the entire second floor there. He's in permits, the permit process for Club Brass, which will be the second-floor jazz club. And then he's actually working out the details now of the pint for the corner. And the pint will have a window in it where you can see out of the pint down onto the street and then up into the club. And his mantra will be, "Come party at the pint." Looking at East and West Las Vegas, now that we've resolved some of the property litigation at the properties behind 5001 Decatur, we're now moving on a fast-track basis with the developer on this project. We're actually in earnest purchase and sale agreement negotiations for this. And we've also been meeting with Mark Fine's team. He has very quietly assembled a very, very large amount of property along the MLK corridor. And then when you look at that property combined with the holdings of American Nevada and a few others, really represents, I think, one of the next frontiers for downtown redevelopment. Skipping over the interstate into that area along the MLK corridor as a great opportunity for our next phase of redevelopment. We, I have been working very aggressively with DLC Urban Core on their plan for a grocery-anchored retail center in Enterprise Park. There are two very interested anchors in this center. We, with the developer, have been making contacts directly with these grocery anchors. In fact, our real estate tour last week brought one of those. Real estate, the heads of real estate, one of the largest chains in the country, was on the real estate tour. We had very detailed discussions with them about anchoring this center. They're still very interested in anchoring this center. We're trying to do everything we can to get them off the fence, make a decision, and make a commitment to anchor the center. Edmund Town Center is the same thing. Edmund Town Center has their Von's, former Von space vacant. We have had a grocery anchor interested in that space. The issue there is, we do not control that sublease. That sublease is controlled by Safeway, which is part of, you know, which was the owner of the Von's chain. And we've been a little bit frustrated and there's somewhat unwillingness to move certain types of anchors into that facility. And we're going to continue to push hard with them to accept the interest on the part of the anchor that we've been able to bring to the table. I think at the end of the day, between Edmund Town Center and the DLC Urban Core project and the fact that we have at least three legitimate anchors interested in those two sites, we have a very, very high probability of bringing a grocery store to West Las Vegas. RLT Corporation is open and operational in the Enterprise Park. The FBI Building is moving along very, very well. This is a shot taken in mid-August that shows that it's, they're really starting to finish up the exterior work, some of their grounds work, their fencing. The Urban Chamber, we understand, realized a recent financing commitment to fund the gap of funding needed to complete their project, so we anticipate they'll be moving forward. I think, you know, not just the big guys in terms of large-scale condo developers have realized frustrations with rising construction costs, even projects at this scale have seen their, during their development period, the rise of construction costs frustrate their ability. It seems to be a moving target, the cost of construction as they move forward through even some of these smaller projects. Although that didn't frustrate Gwen Brema and the Expertise School of Beauty, she just got out there and did it. This, as I said, this is a sketch on the left of what it was going to look like and on the right is what it looks like. Looks exactly as she proposed she was going to build it. And then Foundation for an Independent tomorrow, we just heard that they received a major gift from a patron towards the development of their facility. They are now able to move forward with their project towards construction. They've been out fundraising. That major gift, that lead gift, gives them the ability to move forward. And we'll be seeing them into our development process here very soon as well. Stewart Mojave, we just handled that on the council and council meeting agenda today for 54 units for Urban Loss. And then I'm going to quickly go through some of the casinos. El Cortez, we've been working with them on a gateway from connecting the Boulevard with some new signs that picks up on their retro theme into their site, so they have a Las Vegas Boulevard front door. Fitzgerald's, we continue to work with. Their parent company has tremendous interest in investing in downtown. We're working with them on a number of issues. Lady Luck continues to work through their financing and they will soon be in the permit process to actually start the improvements behind the demolition work that they just completed for their property. And the Golden Nugget continues to move through their development process. They've been working their pool area and some of their interior work, adding new restaurants and continuing to move forward achievement of their master plan. Fifth Street School moves along very nicely. We're looking very seriously at how we can use tax credits on this project to bring as much as $1 million in tax credits into funding the needs for renovation of the school. The Bulldog Site, we just completed the RFP process on that, narrowed through the selection committee, the selection to one developer will be, we're actually in E&amp;A negotiations with that one developer and we'll be bringing an E&amp;A to you very shortly on this one. And then the Milan Brown Parking Garage is moving along very, very well. And that's going to fulfill a very critical need for parking in the area around the criminal, the regional justice center. The Stratosphere continues to express interest in their expansion plans for a new hotel addition and expansion of their convention space. And then we're monitoring the progress of stations at the Castaway Site. They have not formally brought anything forward yet at this point, but we continue to monitor this site because this is going to be a major, major project. This was added to the redevelopment area and our redevelopment area expansion and we're wanting to see as what they're going to be moving forward with.
On the Castaway Site, I met with Mr. Nielsen about three or four weeks ago and they're planning a 20,000-square-foot restaurant-casino with, Scott said it'd be about $90 million. And then they're going to leave the rest of it for future expansion or redevelopment of some kind. But they're just going to start with the 20,000. I've seen the renderings of it. It's kind of in the Hispanic motif. I thought it was really, really nice. I told him that the city was supporting, so.
Great. And that's the end of my report.
All right, that's terrific. Any comments or questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Counsel Wilson.
Scott, I'm asked all the time about the so-called Old Courthouse. Can you give us an update?
That's a, that's a really good question. The Old Courthouse was one of the several sites evaluated for the potential development of a new metro headquarters. And I believe it's still somewhat in play for that reuse. I've been hearing, and Doug may want to elaborate on this, that they may, that even if they don't build metro there, the county still wants to keep it in their, their portfolio for potential reuse, maybe for other county facilities down the road.
I can add a little bit to that. The county's also looking at it in metro as well for possible jail, downtown jail space. That would hopefully be in combination with the metro headquarters, so it wouldn't just be a jail building. Those are the, that's the leading contender for reuse of that site.
How ironic, the old county jail used to be there in the courthouse.
There was a letter to the editor recently that it is becoming blighted. And I was going to, as a matter of fact, when Mr. Harson's here this afternoon on some of these blighted properties, I was going to suggest that perhaps he look into that because we don't want that centrally-located facility to, you know, to be shabby and hurt us in our downtown area. I personally have not seen the blight, but that's, that's what the letter to the editor commented upon.
I would like to mention as well, I think I alluded to earlier that I was in New York at the International Economic Development Council Conference and I was able to tour some real estate holdings of a couple of the investors who are investing in downtown. And it's always a good thing, I think, to go to these other cities, see what some of our sort of partners, so to speak, have done in these other communities to really establish their validity as an investor and as a real estate developer. In this case, the ones that I toured were incredible and clearly established the credibility of these investors in terms of what they're planning to do in Las Vegas. So we'll continue to do that as we get out and travel, make sure that we're, we're seeing the other side of who it is we do business with here in the city.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Just a little bit of an update. This past weekend, I went up to Lake Tahoe to meet with 30 physicians who are the world's leading experts on neurodegenerative diseases that are part of the Alzheimer's Think Tank. And the plans that they have for that facility, in addition to the iconic architecture that's going to be the focal point, I believe, of worldwide attention, inside there, they're going to have the greatest minds imaginable. The number-two man from GE was there and he was observing the type of presentations that were forthcoming. And he said he's never seen such genius in one room at one time. And we'll be getting a white paper from Zaven Kachatorian, who is the director of the Alzheimer's Think Tank. And we'll make that available to all the council and the city because I think we're going to become a very special place as far as medicine is concerned with what's happening over at the Cancer Institute and the Alzheimer Think Tank. It's just, it's just awesome. Okay, any other comments or questions? Do you want to be heard?
Yes, briefly. Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. This is socioeconomic engineering. Describe the incoming downtown population, if not today, within the coming months. Because they'll be here eventually, but they're not going to be like it was before, in any sense of the word. You're looking at higher-income strata. You're looking at geniuses, et cetera, in Alzheimer environments. Now, one question crosses my mind. We once had an occasion, off the record, to very briefly mention a plot of land for the Jerry Lewis Spinal Injury and Pain Hospital. And there was a gesture in Carson City about the ability of the doctors to be investors in their own hospital, for example, where they'd make referrals. What is the current status of that and the projection? Mr. Lewis, throughout his entire life, at least for the last 40, 50 years, has done a great deal of fundraising for a very worthwhile cause. And it seems to me that this city, beyond a key to the city, which is emblematic, of course, and well-deserved and honorable to give, but this city can do a lot more than that. So before you forget, with Alzheimer's, like maybe you won't, see what you can do about putting Jerry Lewis and his Spine Injury and Pain Hospital on the map, right here in Las Vegas, Nevada, where it belongs. Thank you.
All right, just an answer to your observation there. Dr. Wenger, who was the doctor, the neurosurgeon who was involved with Mr. Lewis, he has a facility that's associated with Sunrise at this point in time. Okay. May I have a motion to receive Mr. Adams' report, please?
So moved, Your Honor.
Okay, let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Okay, this is time for citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Redevelopment Agency. No subject may be acted upon by the Redevelopment Agency unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. So if you wish to be heard, please come up, give us your name, and we'll put the three-minute timer on. Thank you, Ms. Ronus. Yes, sir.
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. Contingent upon private adoption and implementation of my Neonopolis proposal, Neonopolis can and will be successful beyond previous expectations and will be the all-important linchpin conducive to the continuity of pedestrian patronage interest between the Fremont Street Experience, the Block on Third Street, Neonopolis Fremont Street, or East Fremont East, and the Streamline Loss. I would say again, community development is a holistic process and the key determinant of successful redevelopment is community, emphasis, exclamation point, double exclamation point. What you have downtown is a work in progress. In no sense should it be permitted to fly apart like a paper, paper pinwheel. You need to think of this as omni-inclusive, omnipartisan. And if you don't have all of your projects underway, under public participation and public scrutiny, meaning public participation inclusively, if you don't do that, you are heading for serious issues in the future. And the future means day until tomorrow. So what I'm recommending here is, in reminder, for example, the Bill of Rights applies to all persons in the United States, not just to teachers. If you're going to have a, an exciting upscale downtown community reinvigorated, you're going to need a lot of reinvigorated people, meaning locals as well, not just those who came out of state or some other part of the universe. You're going to have to need better people in this city or region because they're going to have to do the jobs and perform in a way that corresponds to... to have to do the jobs and perform in a way that corresponds to the influx of, quote, "upscale socioeconomic strata" that are coming here. Otherwise, and they come here to the bedroom loft and head right away for breakfast, lunch, dinner, and whatever else they might want to do, to the fabulous Las Vegas Strip, where they're also, to best of my understanding, building a downtown called the center of some kind, Community Center, MGM, I believe it is. You can live with those people. Finally, how will you guarantee the non-disruption of public cat bus service during the three-days NASCAR event in April of '07? I've heard an awful lot lately on the news about the NASCAR and how speedy it is and how wonderful it is. But I have no idea how anybody who lives south of here, this particular area, will get north to the VTC and then back south again without being, encountering a 180 mile-an-hour speeding vehicle. Maybe you know. I hope you do. Thank you.
Okay, would anybody else like to be heard? All right, seeing none, we'll adjourn the Redevelopment Agency meeting, and we'll be back here, let's say about 1:10. Welcome to the afternoon session of the City Council meeting. We'll go to item number 76. Any items from the afternoon session that the council staff or the applicant wished to be stricken or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have item number 79 is EOT 15236, applicant owner Cash America, Inc., of Nevada, extension of time of an approval, approved special use permit to allow a pawn shop at 6890 North Durango Drive. The staff has asked for that in abeyance until our October 18, 2006 meeting. Item number 90 is another extension of time, 15238, applicant owner Cash America, Inc., of Nevada, extension of time of an approved special use permit to allow a financial institution at the northwest corner of Durango Drive and Dora Lane. Applicant has asked for that in abeyance until our October 18, 2006 meeting.
And that was item 80, sir.
80, yes. Item 81 is another extension of time, 15239, same owner, extension of time of an approved special use permit to allow a second-hand sale adjacent to the northwest corner of Durango Drive and Dora Lane. Has been asked to hold in abeyance to our October 18, 2006 meeting. Item number 96, the special use permit, 13271, applicant C R E M Corp., Inc., owner Toffey Enterprises, LLC, special use permit for a retail establishment accessory, package liquor off sale at 8251 West Charleston Boulevard. Councilperson Wilson asked that to be held in abeyance until our October 18, 2006 meeting. Item 101 is variance 15051 and variance 15050. And I got a look at my book here real quick because I added this on me. 100 is a variance public hearing applicant, EGJ Management, LLC owner, Rancho Drive, LLC, request for a variance to allow the total square footage of proposed accessory structures to exceed 50% of the floor area of the main dwelling and to allow that an accessory structure in front of the main dwelling. And SUP 15050 is a public hearing applicant, EGJ Management, LLC owner, Rancho Drive, LLC, request for a special use permit for the proposed addition of three habitable accessory, accessory structures and one non-habitable accessory structure at 8100 North Rainbow Boulevard. They've asked to strike them two items. Excuse me. Items number 110 and 111 is rezoning 15031 and site development review 15030, applicant owner 3100 Mead LLC, request for rezoning and a site development plan review for a conversion of two existing storage buildings to a light manufacturing facility approximately 300 feet north of Mead Avenue and 980 feet west of Rancho Drive. The applicant has asked to hold that in abeyance until October the 4th, 2006 meeting. Are there any other applications this time we need to bring forward or take action on?
I believe, Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Excuse me, I believe item 130 has also received a request by the applicant for abeyance to October 18.
Item 130 is being asked to hold it in abeyance until when? 130 is a special use permit, 15442, public hearing applicant owner BF Trust, request for a special use permit for a proposed package liquor off sale establishment at 519 St. Lewis Avenue. Then that would also be asking for, item number 46 on the morning session to be held until October 18 also.
Item 130 is tied with the morning item?
That's what I'm just saying.
Forty-six, yes.
So both of those?
Both of those are, there's a motion to obey them, yes.
Until October 18.
No problem.
Okay.
Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm here representing the applicants on item 91 and 99. We're enjoying the staff recommendation and Planning Commission recommendation for approval on both of those, and we went, only wanted to review a condition. We have been approached by Mr. Lewis from the City Attorney's Office in conjunction with discussion with Margot to hold that for two weeks to see if we can resolve that condition. So at this time, we'd request that items number 91 and 99 be held.
I would ask Margot, why are you asking that to be held?
I'm not, sir.
Oh.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor Protem, this is, we had a conversation before the, the meeting about whether, well, the condition is this. The condition is you need to go and get a final inspection done on your billboards. It is, to my understanding, the Planning Department and the Building Safety Department have, have worked something out such that the building or the billboard companies should agree to this condition. And it, it looks as if the people that are representing the billboard companies need some time to take a look at what the, the Building Safety Department's come up with in conjunction with planning. And what I was hoping was, instead of having a discussion about this on the record today on more than just these two items, but maybe a third and a fourth, these two billboard companies could come in in the next two weeks. We can talk with them about what our solution is, and then we can hear it two weeks hence.
Well, I, I have, I have concerns myself. I don't understand what's going on either. I mean, I, I get briefed from, from one, and then I get briefed from another, and it's, this is something that's just came up. And I don't know, to me, if a billboard's been up for 30 years, it's not going to fall. And where this, uh, final has to be on this building permit or where it's at or why they don't have a copy of it, you know, maybe it was burning a fire or something 29 years ago. I don't know. And I think it's, it's, it's not right for us to put a, an onus on a billboard company to, to find a, a final. You know, I don't, I don't know what's going on here.
Well, all I can say is this, that this past week, I've had at least three of my council members come to me, and they say, what the heck is happening here? And I said, I have no idea, which is not an unusual statement for me to make, but I said, I have no idea what you're talking about. It makes no sense to me that we're trying to recreate history 30 years later, and we got to resolve this because it apparently is very disturbing to the folks on the council who are being faced with these billboard issues in their wards. So I'd like to get it resolved sooner than later. That doesn't mean to say we have to go forward today, but I think we have to really work out this issue.
Well, Mayor, if you'd like me to explain exactly what the issue is, I'd be happy to do that today, or we could wait.
Well?
Well, the mayor, the mayor won't be here on, on the 4th of October. That's why I'm saying what I'm saying is we got two council members won't be here on October the 4th. And no, I don't think we have to figure out, I guess, what's going on in a public forum, but I just wanted to find out, for my own knowledge, is why all of a sudden are we trying to do this?
Indeed. Several of these boards have been up for periodic reviews before the council a number of times, and each time they've been up before you, they've been approved without this condition being?
I know, but now, this issue has risen its ugly head, and we have to resolve it one way or the other because it's, as I said, it's disturbing the council members, and I want to get it resolved, but I, I would like to be part of the resolution process. I'm going to be over with the NBA Euro on the 4th, so I won't be here, but.
If you'd like me to, I'd amend my request instead of holding it for two weeks, to hold it for 30 days.
Is that all right with everybody?
Yes, I was just going to say, it's only a short time, and maybe you'll work out
the problems that'll help all the others in the same situation, right?
There's a lot of similarly situated boards. This condition started appearing on each and every staff report roughly about the same time that the.
Well, then, let's have.
Well, that's a short period of time, then, if you could solve all the problems.
Yeah, let's try to get it 30 days from now. What, what day would that be?
October 18.
Okay, we'll be back by then.
Okay, then, we're, we're talking about item number 91 and 99?
91 and 99, right.
Okay, item number 91 is RQR 13791, a band site and public hearing applicant, Clear Channel Outdoor Owner, McIlhous Trust, required three-year review of an approved special use permit, allowed a 40-foot-high, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise advertising billboard signed at 1535 Northeastern. And item number 99 is the same, RQR 15054, public hearing applicant owner, ECD Holdings, LLC, request for a five-year review of approved variance V dash 0068-90, which is allowed a 40-foot-tall, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise advertising billboard signed 290, 290 feet from an existing billboard where 300 feet is the minimum separation required at 1200 East Charleston Boulevard. Councilperson Weekly, did you have one also?
Yes, she's here right now.
Lazovich?
Hi, Jennifer Lazovich, 3800 Hardee's Parkway here today on behalf of Lamar on item number 92. We'd like to ask that to be held for 30 days for the same reason.
Okay, item 92 is RQR 13989, a band site and public hearing applicant, Lamar Advertising, owner City Parkway, I, the 4th A Period, Inc., required three-year review and approved special use permit. This is in Councilperson Weekly's ward. So we have added 92, 90, 92, and 99. The request is hold them in abeyance for 30 days to our October 18, 2006 meeting. Are there any other items we need to report at this time? We also had items 130 and 46 from this morning. Will be heard October 18 also. Are there any other items? Any corrections? Seeing none, Your Honor, I make a motion to bring all these items forward and take the appropriate action, please.
Thank you. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 77 is a public hearing to consider the report of expenses to recover costs for abatement of nuisance located at 1221 Fremont Street. The property owner is Tian Fu Su et al. This is in Ward 5. It's a public hearing, which I now declare open.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Devin Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. Purpose and background of this is the public hearing. The condition of the property was a public hazard and a detractive nuisance. The Department of Neighborhood Services declared this property in violation and started legal notification, but no corrective action, action was taken, nor an appeal filed with the Department of Neighborhood Services hired ADS Environmental and Construction, Inc., to remove cans, bottles, litter, trash, debris, refuse, waste, et cetera, all high-dead, dry weeds, grass, vegetation exceeding eight inches in height from vacant lot and around the perimeter, and posted no trespassing, no dumping signs on site. To date, there have been five inspections conducted at this location. The value of the property based on the sale date of April 1986 was $393,750. The recommendation is that the City Council approve the report of expenses in the amount of $1,380 in order that the above charges be filed and recorded against the property, constituting a special assessment and lien. authorize that the notice and lien of assessment be duly recorded with the County Treasurer.
All right, thank you very much. Is the property owner here or a representative? Tian Fu Su? All right, it's a shame. I'd like to ask them why they allow a, maybe a multimillion-dollar property to, to look that way right in the center of the city. All right, are there any questions of Mr. Smith? Folks, a public hearing, anyone want to be heard? Be happy to hear from you. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. This is Councilperson Weekly's word.
Thank you, Mayor Goodman. I'd like to thank Mr. Smith and his staff very much for their assistance in these issues that we're having in the neighborhood. And so with that, Your Honor, on item number 77, I move to follow staff's recommendation for approval, please.
Very good. Let's vote, please.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Post. Motion carries. Thank you. Item 78 is a hearing regarding the six-month review from the denial of the appeal on the notice in order to comply for property located at 1752 East Charleston Boulevard. The property owner is Charleston Plaza, LLC. It's in Ward 3. Anybody from Charleston Plaza, LLC here? Why don't you gentlemen come on up, and we'll hear what Mr. Smith has to say, and then we'd be happy to hear from you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Devin Smith, manager of Neighborhood Response. Quick briefing outline on this is the, this report is a six-month review of the automotive repair business, Autocraft LLC, located at 1752 East Charleston Boulevard. Zone limited commercial C1 with special use permit U 226-91 and variance 186-91, allowing use of minor automotive repair and transmission exchange only, and with repair conducted inside the building with no storage of vehicles on the premises. Original date of the council's appeal denial to the notice and order for zoning and nuisance code violations was January 18, 2005, with a subsequent review reported to the council on March 15, 2006. As of today, total of 32 monthly, weekly, and daily inspections were conducted by code enforcement during the last six months. On June 20th and June 21st, 2006, the officers failed two re-inspections, resulting in a total of $120 in reinspection fees and $150 in civil penalties assessed. The code violation, the code violations observed by the officers was storage of unregistered vehicles on site. Officers had three vehicles towed from the location. All fees have been paid in full by the owner as of July 19, 2006. All subsequent inspections verify compliance with zoning and nuisance codes, with no additional major auto repair of engines, no repair activity outside the building, and no storage of unregistered vehicles in properly vehicle inventory. Neighborhood Response recommends a minimum of one-year review with a continuing monitor to the property by code enforcement.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Robert Ross, representing for Autocraft Auto Service. Appreciate what you had to say there. During the past six months or a year that we've been discussing this, this situation, a lot of our business comes from used car shops around the city. There's four of them. And we've told them repeatedly, don't do it. The area that is really in question is in the Albertsons Parking Lot, is where the code enforcement was making the issue with us. And I repeatedly told these people, don't bring vehicles to this area.
What do they do? Just bring them over and drop them?
Yes, sir, they have.
That's what causes the problem?
Yes, sir, it is.
Then we have to go out and move them?
When, the last time code enforcement was there, I don't know the exact date.
Well, why did they drop them there?
Because they think they have some ongoing agreement with us that, you know, we can just bring a vehicle and leave it there, and then it's your responsibility.
You say that there are four used car places that are doing that?
Four, four, yes.
Doesn't seem hard to, you know, to tell them what the rules are.
Oh, I have. I have emphatically told them, that's why since we haven't had anything going on, is don't do it. I don't want to see any more vehicles brought here, and I'm telling you that if you do, I'm going to call and have these things towed myself.
Has the situation been corrected, Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good. That's good. Good. All right, thank you. All right, are there any other questions from the council? Folks, anybody like to be heard? Well, no, this is not a public hearing, I'm sorry. I said, this is not a public hearing. I made a mistake. Okay. If there are no questions, Mayor Protem?
Yes, I would follow staff's recommendation to, to continue to monitor with a one-year review.
All right, let's vote on that, please. Post.
Thanks, all you guys. Thanks, Devin.
Thanks very much, Council.
Appreciate it. Real quickly, Mayor and Council, I understand that there was some conversation this morning about the old county courthouse building.
Yes, I was very disturbed about a letter that was written to the editor indicating that it's becoming uplit over there. Well, what's the story with that?
Actually, I'm not aware, or I wasn't aware of that till today, but myself and Officer Tony Garino went by, did an evaluation, took some pictures of the property, and we're in attempt right now to contact the county and get in touch with the proper people and let them know that we would like that cleaned up and taken care of. They're letting all the vegetation and, and grass and everything on the property just deteriorate, and we will definitely address that.
All right, that's why you're a good man.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, items 82 through 90 are on the consent agenda. They're considered to be routine. They're recommended for approval by the Department of Planning and Development, and they have a motion to approve 82 through 90.
Yes, Your Honor, no questions or comments. I make a motion to follow staff's recommendation for approval of all items with all conditions, please.
Thank you. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll go to Book 3. Item 92. This is RQR?
93, please.
93?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, you're right. 93, bless you. 93 is RQR 14207. This will be a public hearing. The applicant is. The applicant is Lamar Advertising. The owner is Rebel Oil Company, Inc. Required four-year review of an approved special use permit, which allowed a 40-foot-high, 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise advertising billboard sign at 1080 South Rainbow Boulevard. This is in Ward 1. The planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. It's a public hearing, which is now declared open. Ms. Lasovich?
Good afternoon, Jennifer Lasovich, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway here, uh, today on behalf of the applicant. Um, we do appreciate, uh, staff and planning, planning commission's recommendation of approval, uh, with respect to this particular sign, and I would just like to, um, make one comment really for the record. Condition number four indicates only one advertising sign is permitted per sign face. Uh, that is not a current requirement in your, your code as it relates to off-premise signs. However, in this particular instance, and in this particular location, uh, we have been asked by Councilwoman Tarkanian to accept that condition, given where this billboard is located, and we will do that. But I just wanted to note for the record, that wasn't me accepting that condition on Lamar's behalf for, forever.
We understand there's no waiver. Very good. All right, um, any questions to Ms. Lasovich? All right, it's a public hearing. Would anybody like to be heard?
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident, I recommend approval, but, uh, I would also remind this council at this juncture, be sure you enforce fairly and equally code enforcement on all, uh, applicants of, uh, code enforcement, uh, pertinence, including businesses and also, especially including developers of high-rise towers. If you enforce the code on some, but not on all, you have not performed your proper duty. And I will attempt to remind you at every single occasion that, that disparity may exist. If it continues to exist, the issue will go out of this forum, into a much higher forum for your benefit and ours. Thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. City Attorney? That was way beyond the open meeting law, so, uh, do we have to strike it, or do we just live with it?
Mr. Mayor, I think we can just live with it.
All right, then we'll live with it. Anybody else want to be heard? All right, then we'll close the public hearing. This is, uh, Councilwoman Tarkanian.
Move to approve with all conditions.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items 94, 95. 94 is VAR 14768. It'll be a public hearing. The applicant owner is Vitaly Sherbo. Request for variance to allow 54 parking spaces where 113 spaces are required on 1.39 acres at 3250 North Bronco Street in Ward 6. The planning commission and staff recommend denial. 95 is SDR 13796. Same applicant owner requests for a site development plan review for a proposed 10,542-square-foot two-story addition to an existing gymnastics school on 1.39 acres of 3250 North Bronco Street. Planning commission and staff recommend denial. These are both public hearings, which are now declared open. Yes, sir.
Yes, Lee Bigelow. I'm representing Vitaly Sherbo on this. Architect, um, when we submitted the, the plan, it was determined that, uh, it was to be, the parking was, uh, for a dance and, um, anyway, dance studio. Um, when we submitted it to, uh, staff, they reviewed it and, uh, determined that this was a, a public recreation facility, which it is not. It's a private, uh, dance, or, uh, gymnastics facility. By the code of the, uh, that was given to us with the one parking for every employee and, uh, one for every five students, we meet the requirements of the parking. Um, if it were a public facility, then it would be required, uh, the one parking per 200 square foot, but it is not. In addition to that, uh, on the, um, proposed addition, the idea or the reason for, uh, the addition is the students that are in the, uh, gymnastics facility now, he has trainees as well as, uh, advanced students, but he also has a gymnastics team. The person, or the purpose of this, uh, facility expansion would be for the team to spend extra hours for the, the training and that. And yes, there is a possibility with that expansion that, uh, it could, uh, accommodate more students, but he, under the conditions now, uh, he has a maximum of 50 students. Uh, with the parking at one per five students, that would allow an additional 40 students, uh, and still meet the parking requirements for the 54. This is, uh, not something that is anticipated or can happen just due to the, uh, layout of, uh, equipment. Uh, the floor area alone takes up 1,600 square feet, and there'd be two of those. And so, uh, with the equipment that's in the gymnastics facility, it would be impossible to get that many people in there. The big issue that came up during, uh, the planning commission, uh, was traffic, not so much as parking. And we have, uh, met with, uh, Flynn Fag at the city and discussed the, uh, traffic situation, and as this site plan shows, we would designate a, uh, stacking area and a drop-off area. Um, that seemed to be the main concern. The other, the other thing that added to the added traffic is there is an existing daycare on the center of Cheyenne and, um, Bronco. And so by containing the traffic onsite for drop-off and that, which most of it is, the majority of, uh, his, um, students and that are not of driving age, so the, it is drop-off by parents and pickup. And that occurs, uh, on, on the hour, uh, after 4:00 in the evening. And so, uh, 5:00, uh, I think he said that, uh, 6:00 is about the heaviest amount of traffic. So with this in mind, we, uh, would recommend approval.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions of the gentleman? All right, folks, public hearing, anyone want to be heard?
Uh, Your Honor, may I, I need to disclose.
Certainly, Councilman Ross.
Um, I need to disclose that, uh, Lee Bigelow happens to be a friend of mine. I've known him for several years. I'm not sure I'm a friend of his. Um, and also my-
What'd he say? Mr. Bigelow, is he your friend?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, good. Everyone's friendly, good.
I'm just, uh, also, my 23-year-old daughter does attend, uh, this gymnasium. This in no way will impair my judgment one way or the other. Um, there's no monetary value in it for me or my daughter, uh, for this to go one direction or another. I just wanted to make that disclosure.
Thank you very much. All right, public, uh, hearing, yes?
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident, just a quick question. What is the compelling reason for the request for a reduction in the number of parking spaces by more than 50%? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
May I answer?
Well, basically, he told you, uh, the parents are taking the kids and dropping them off. That's the reason for it. There we go. Okay, anybody else want to ask a question? All right, be heard on this? All right, we'll close the public hearing then. All right, Councilman Ross?
I anticipated, uh, actually, a lot of moms and dads down here today on this, uh, on this item. Um, I made it clearly apparent that I'm no big supporter of parking variances whatsoever. Um, this is a significant reduction in parking spaces. I am, however, pleased that, uh, you met with city staff and they kind of pointed you in the right direction to, to make this work. The definition and the use that Mr. Bigelow had described earlier is, is right. Um, the current parking calculations are based on usable space of a school or a gymnasium and do not necessarily reflect the amount of space that are needed for, for this type of facility. We've had code enforcement out there many times, um, dealing with, uh, significant issues out there, especially the parking. Um, we have found that the parking challenges are coming from the daycare, which is across the street in the county, not in the city. Um, which, I, I've driven by there several times myself and have, have also witnessed that. Um, I've got 29 letters of support, and there probably could have been more, and they're not just from folks in the neighborhood, but throughout this valley because they use this facility. There were five letters protesting these, these agenda items. Um, I've spoken to some of the neighbors in that neighborhood, and they've, uh, addressed their concerns about the parking situation and traffic and kids running across the street and almost getting hit. Well, it turns out through the code enforcement efforts and through myself driving out there and my own staff members, it's turned out that it's, it's turning into be the daycare that's having the challenge. Um, I'm not a big supporter, like I said, of parking variances. This is a huge reduction in parking. Uh, you've got a unique facility there, however, and, and, uh, it's quite supported in the community. I am willing to, uh, approve, uh, these, these agenda items, the variance and the site development review, um, based on some conditions, um, and I want to make sure we get this right. And Margot, you'll have to help me, and I'll turn the time over to you.
Okay. If I may, Mayor and Councilman, just for the record, the issue of the public, um, use, the public gymnasium use, means that it's open to the public and for a fee that they utilize the facility, as opposed to private for a club or something like that. In this case, the drive-through lane that has been, uh, designed, I think, makes a significant improvement in the project, and they have a large queue in here. If you wish, Councilman, an added condition could be that an administrative review shall be, um, conducted six months after the final approval of the construction allowed by the accompanying SDR.
I, I would, uh, Margot, thank you for that, but I'd also like to address some parking issues on Bronco in regards to no parking signs. Bart, you know, we, remember what we talked about?
Yes, sir, and I'd recommend a condition, a new condition, uh, stating, "Submit a letter to the city traffic engineer requesting removal of on-street public parking on Bronco Lane adjacent to this site. Comply with the recommendations of the traffic engineer."
And can we have, then, let's, let's add that condition as well, and...
Mr. Mayor, are there just two items taken together?
Yes.
I want to comment on item 95.
That will be addressed to this, Bart, that'll go to the SDR.
Yes, sir, that's on item 95.
I'd also like, Mr. Bigelow, I know you've done some significant work on it to make it workable, if you would extend the sidewalk from the back parking lot to the front. The last rendition I saw showed the sidewalk, and I can't see from that picture very well.
Yeah, it's, it's...
Okay, it only goes up halfway in, in the building to a, a side door, am I correct?
Well, what we've done is, uh, this back portion goes over to the public sidewalk. Uh, this portion would go to, uh, employee entrance. They, they don't want the students entering into the actual facility. They need to come in through the front door.
Okay, so...
So, for parking from here would go out to the public sidewalk, over and up to the front door.
All right. Can you speak for Mr. Sherbo, no doubt, because you're here and he is not?
Yes.
Um, I'd like for you to, on, for the record, um, agree with me that Mr. Sherbo is responsible for his employees parking in that back lot.
That was...
So that, that lot is utilized. It's not now.
Right, and that, that has already begun. They've already, uh, designated that as, uh, employee parking.
All right, and Director Wheeler, do we have hours of operation on it as a condition in there? Um, Mr. Bigelow, can you state for the record the hours of operation?
To my knowledge, it's from 4:00 to 10:00 PM. Um, that I'm not absolutely certain.
4:00 PM to 10:00 PM.
Yes. I know that classes start at 4:00 PM. Um, and I'm not sure if it's 9:00 or 10:00 PM is the, the last.
Okay, I'm just concerned about the hours of operation, and, and they're pretty limited.
Yes.
So, so I think that addresses my concern. Um, then with that, Your Honor, um, I'm prepared to make a motion.
All right, before you make the motion... Before you make the motion, the gentleman wanted to be heard on 95.
95, I, I'm sorry, I want to take them together. I didn't know that. Uh, what age group, Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident, what age group will the proposed gymnasium school addition serve? If it will serve at-risk youth and our homeless youth? Approve the request.
Okay, I don't know whether the architect is in a position to answer that question. He is not. Okay. All right, Councilman Ross?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, um, move to approve agenda item 94, subject to conditions.
All right, let's vote on 94, please.
As amended.
As amended.
And as amended, sorry.
Post, please. Motion carries, and 95, please.
And as well as agenda item 95, move to approve, subject to staff condition and also as amended.
And I need to add one more change, if I may, Mayor and Councilman.
All right, please.
On condition number three, to correct that the site plan is dated September 13th, '06.
All right. Let's vote on that, please. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you to see you, Lee.
97. 97 is SUP 14286. The applicant is Michael Goodwin. The owner is GHB Holdings Sahara Rainbow LLC. Request for special use permit for a proposed motorcycle, motor scooter sales establishment, and a waiver of the minimum required gross floor area at 2360 South Rainbow Boulevard. This is in Ward 1. The planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. It's a public hearing, which is now open. Is anybody here on behalf of the applicant? Or the owner? Yes, sir. Why don't you step up and give us your name, please?
Yeah, I'm Michael Goodwin.
Okay, we're happy to hear from you, sir.
How you doing?
I'm doing good. How are you doing?
Pretty good.
Good. How's everybody doing? Okay.
The building we're in is, uh, 54,000 square feet, and the suite that, uh, the scooter, uh, the business is in is 12,000 square feet. And the setbacks from any other building is, uh, I believe it's a minimum 100, 100 feet from anybody around us, and, uh, most of it is commercial.
Okay. Um, any questions of Mr. Goodwin? Folks, public hearing, anyone want to be heard?
Yes.
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas, uh, Boulevard, also doing okay. How will the owner and the applicant guarantee the safety of the motor scooters? It's, uh, recently in national news and elsewhere. Uh, there's been a, uh, a lot of discussion regarding, uh, vast deficiencies in motor scooter products, one entitled Segway, for example, and also the use of motor scooters, maybe improperly by persons who, uh, take them out onto roadways but might not be qualified to do that. So what is the, and it may not be the owner's or the applicant's responsibility to guarantee that, but what is the mindset of the applicant with that regard to that issue?
Okay.
In many...
All right. Anybody else want to be heard? All right, uh, we'll close the public hearing then. Uh, Councilwoman Tarkanian?
I had, uh, a concern to some extent in this because, uh, we've had some motorcycle, motor scooter, um, companies coming in that area, and we've had some complaints from neighbors as to noise when they revved up the motorcycles, uh, particularly in their yard area. Um, we had a condition here that we thought we could add that might, we also have problems of them using areas of residential streets for test driving, and we thought that we had something that might solve that. As far as the condition, I don't think you contacted my office. We didn't have a chance to talk. Excuse me. But, um, we, I did talk with Margot Wheeler, and we think we might be able to do this with a condition. Could you read that, please, Margot?
Certainly, Mayor and Councilwoman. A plan for test drives on non-residential streets shall be submitted to the Planning and Development Department for approval. This approved route shall be enforced by the applicant at all times. This would then allow for a route to be selected, essentially probably on the, on the main This would then allow for a route to be selected, essentially probably on the main street, and then once that's in place and that's enforced, then there could, should probably not be any problems.
All right, is that agreeable?
Yes, sir.
Very good.
I move to approve, as with the condition as noted, with all conditions.
Okay, let's vote, please. As amended.
And the amended condition, yes.
All right. Post, please. Motion carries, good luck to you. Make sure you get, is there a time limit as to when he gets that plan in?
It'll be before they start, if they, before they start operation.
All right, so you'll be in touch with our planning department or with Councilwoman Tarkanian, make sure you get that plan in, okay? Very good. Item Ninety-eight is RQR one-four-five-three-seven. The applicant is Great American Capital, the owner is Craig Marketplace LLC. Required two-year review of approved variance, which allowed eight-hundred-and-seventeen parking spaces for an existing commercial center where eight-hundred-and-eighty-seven parking spaces are required on seventeen point eight acres adjacent to the south side of Craig Road, approximately two-hundred-and-twenty feet east of Tenay away. This is in Ward Four. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval, subject to conditions, it's going to be a public hearing, which is now declared open. Is anybody here on behalf of Great American Capital or Craig Marketplace? Seeing none, Councilman, what's your pleasure?
Ready to move forward, Your Honor.
All right, we'll have public hearing then. Anyone want to be heard on this? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, Councilman.
Thank you, Your Honor, move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
May I please vote on that? Motion carries, thank you. Going to go to one-oh-six?
One-oh-two to one-oh-six.
One-oh-two to one-oh-six. One-oh-two is SUP one-five-oh-eight-five. The applicant is Fabulous Freddy's Car Wash, the owner PKKL LLC. Request for special use permit for gaming in conjunction with the proposed convenience store at the southwest corner of Velcorn Road and Grand Montecito Parkway. This is in Ward Six. The planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions, it'll be a public hearing. One-oh-three is SUP one-five-oh-eight-six. Same applicant, same owner, request for special use permit for liquor sales in conjunction with the proposed convenience store at the southwest corner of Velcorn Road and Grand Montecito Parkway. The planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. One-oh-four is SUP one-five-oh-eight-seven. Special use permit related to SUP one-five-oh-eight-five and SUP one-five-oh-eight-six. Same applicant, same owner, request for a special use permit for a proposed car wash at the southwest corner of Velcorn and Grand Montecito Parkway. Planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. One-oh-five is SUP one-five-oh-eight-eight. Same applicant, owner, request for a special use permit for gasoline sales in connection with the proposed convenience store at the southwest corner of Velcorn Road and Grand Montecito Parkway. Planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. And finally, one-oh-six, SUP one-five-two-three-oh. Same applicant, same owner, request for a special use permit for a proposed convenience store at the southwest corner of Velcorn Road and Grand Montecito Parkway. Planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. These are all in Ward Six, they're all public hearings, they're all declared open.
Your Honor, if I could?
I'm not sure, you're not going to make fun of him, are you?
No. Mr. Genzer?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to make a comment on the mayor's tie today?
Oh, that's completely out of line. I would like to have a hand vote from the folks who are here. I'm going to stand up for this one. I've been subjected to, I've been subjected to obliquy and scorn and derision from the moment I walked in here this morning from my colleagues, because they don't like my combination. All those who think that the combination is very mayoral and appropriate, please raise your hands. All right, thank you very much.
And all those opposed, would you please sit down?
Marshall, if you see, if you see any opposed, take them right out of here, all right?
I will, I will say this, I think my red jacket from the last meeting would go quite nicely with that shirt.
Oh, boy, man. All right, are you, are you getting paid for this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, poor Fabulous Freddy, that's what I...
In regard to the items, Bob Genzer, Genzer Consulting, along with Rudy Starks, who is the architect for Fabulous Freddy's, on behalf of the applicant, we appreciate the recommendations of both staff and the planning commission, we concur with the conditions as proposed, and we would ask for your approval.
All right, any questions of Mr. Genzer or Mr. Starks? Folks, public hearing, anyone like to be heard? All right.
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. Let's see your tie for a moment, please. Thank you. Recognizing Fabulous Freddy for the extensive enthusiastic and widespread activities at Fabulous Freddy's Car Wash, et cetera, and with the permission of the city attorney's office, if by your grace this may be considered something you can live with, I would recommend you stick to the agenda. We've seen your tie, his tie, your shirt, everybody else's shirt and tie, but you thought about Fabulous Freddy, and I approve Fabulous Freddy. Not only his application request, but also his demeanor and his entire appearance. That's the person that this item is about, Fabulous Freddy and his representative, not your tie or your shirt or anything else. Thank you very much.
Okay, would anybody else like to be heard? All right, we'll close the public hearing then. Councilor Ross?
Thank you, Your Honor, I move to approve a gen item one-oh-two, subject to staff conditions.
All right, thanks, let's vote on that, please. Motion carries.
I move to approve a gen item one-oh-three, subject to staff conditions.
Thank you, let's vote, please. Post. Do it again? All right, let's re-vote, please. Okay. Fine, post, please. Motion carries.
And a gen item one-oh-four, move to approve, subject to conditions.
Thank you, let's vote. Post.
And a gen one, item one-oh-five, move to approve, subject to conditions.
All right, one-oh-five, please. All right, we'll take our time. All right, now we're going to post. Mayor Goodman. Very good. Motion carries.
And on gen item one-oh-six, I move to approve, subject to staff conditions.
All right, please vote. Post. All right. Very good. Gentlemen, thank you and good luck to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, one-oh-seven. One-oh-seven is SUP one-five-oh-two-two. The applicant is Montecito Companies, the owner is Montecito Marketplace LLC. Request for a special use permit for a proposed drive-through facility at seventy-ninety-six North Durango Drive. This is in Ward Six. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval, subject to conditions, it's a public hearing which I now declare open. Mr. Genzer, does Robert Schulman have an interest in this?
In this case, yes.
All right, I'm going to have to stay in then because of property interests that I have where I'm a partner of his.
Thank you, Your Honor. The applicant's present, public hearing's open, Mr. Genzer?
Bob Genzer, Genzer Consulting, on behalf of the Montecito Companies, once again, we thank staff and the planning commission for their recommendation, we accept the conditions, and we request your approval.
Any questions of the applicant? Hearing end, this is a public hearing. We'll close the public hearing, Councilman Ross? Thank you, Your Honor, move to follow the planning commission and staff's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions. If you heard a motion, please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, and Your Honor, if I may, I do have one quick message for you from the TBS Men's Club, they're hoping that you make a New Year's resolution to pay your dues.
Oh, boy, I'll tell you. He's quick, pay. SUP one-five-oh-two-eight. There'll be a public hearing, the applicant is Guitar Center Inc., the owner Three Bs Inc. Request for special use permit for proposed second-hand dealer musical equipment as part of an existing retail establishment at eighty-six twenty-one West Charleston Boulevard Suite Number One Fifty. This is going to be heard in conjunction with item fifty-one from the morning calendar, which is discussion and possible action regarding temporary approval of a new Class Two second-hand dealer license doing business at Guitar Center Number One Thirty-two at eighty-six twenty-one West Charleston Boulevard. These are in Ward Two. The planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions, it's a public hearing which is now open. Anybody here from the Guitar Center or Three Bs Inc.? Councilman Wilson, what's your pleasure?
To go forward.
All right, very good.
For approval on each item, consistent with staff's recommendations.
Okay, before we vote on the motions, a public hearing, if anybody'd like to be heard? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, let's vote on one-oh-eight, please. Post.
Please, your vote didn't register.
Motion carries, and fifty-one.
Same motion for approval.
Thank you, let's vote. Post, please.
Wilson and Mayor, votes didn't register. Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. One-oh-nine. One-oh-nine is SDR one-four-seven-nine-oh. The applicant owner is Public Storage Inc. Request for site development plan review for proposed one-hundred-seven, one-hundred-thousand-seven-hundred-square-foot four-story mini warehouse facility on four acres at two-ninety-five South Martin L. King Boulevard. The planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions, this is in Ward Five. It's a public hearing which is now open. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, my name is Timothy Reeves, I'm a development manager for Public Storage. We'd like to thank staff and planning commission for their work and recommendation of approval. We've read the conditions and accept them as written and request your approval of the project.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Reeves? All right, public hearing, folks?
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. Will the proposed four-story facility cause any increase in the rental rates for other storage facilities owned and operated by the applicant? If so, then I request.
Okay, thank you. All right, folks, anybody else like to be heard? All right, we'll close the public hearing then. This is Councilman Weekly.
Thank you very much, Your Honor, I'd like to follow the planning commission and staff's recommendation for approval with all conditions, please.
Thank you, let's vote, please. Not coming up?
Okay, it is unanimous, sir.
Okay, motion carries, thank you unanimously, thank you. All right, we'll go to, new book. Thank you. Okay, we're up to one-twelve, one-thirteen, one-fourteen, one-fifteen, and one-sixteen. One-twelve is ZON one-five-oh-four-five. The applicant is Eve Mazzarella, the owner is four-oh-eight South Seventh Street LLC. Request for rezoning from R-three, which is medium-density residential, and R-three, medium-density residential under resolution of intent to PR professional office and parking to C-one Limited Commercial on point-six-four acres at the southwest corner of Seventh Street and Chef Andre Rochat Place. The staff recommends denial, the planning commission recommends approval, subject to conditions, it'll be a public hearing. One-thirteen is VAR one-five-oh-four-eight. The same applicant, the same owner, request for a variance to allow fifty-five percent lot coverage, where fifty percent is the maximum lot coverage allowed on point-six-four acres at the southwest corner of Seventh Street and Chef Andre Rochat Place. Planning commission ended in a tie vote, which is tantamount to denial, and the staff recommends denial. One-fourteen is VAR one-five-oh-four-nine. Same applicant, same owner, request for variance to allow fifty-eight parking spaces, where seventy-nine parking spaces is the minimum required on point-six-four acres at the southwest corner of Seventh Street and Chef Andre Rochat Place. Planning commission ended in a tie vote, which is tantamount to denial, the staff recommends denial. One-fifteen is VAR one-five-five-nine-six. Same applicant, same owner, request for variance to allow a front yard setback of ten feet, where twenty feet is the minimum setback required, and to allow a corner-side setback of six feet, where fifteen feet is the minimum setback required on point-six-four acres at the southwest corner of Seventh Street and Chef Andre Rochat Place. These are all in Ward Three. The planning commission ended in a tie vote, and that's tantamount to denial, the staff recommends denial. These are all public hearings which are now declared open.
Mayor Goodman?
I think one-sixteen also, that's in another book. Yes, Councilman Wilson?
Thank you, I own an office building within the notice area, and in the interest of disclosure, I've been advised that I must put this on the record, and that my property will not be affected one way or another, any differently than any other property in the notice area, so I've been advised that I can vote on this matter.
All right, thank you for the public statement. I'll read one-sixteen to SDR one-five-oh-four-three. Same applicant, Eve Mazzarella, owner four-oh-eight South Seventh Street LLC. Request for site development plan review for proposed twenty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-thirteen-square-foot office building. Waiver of perimeter landscape requirements, pardon me, waiver of perimeter landscape requirements on point-six-four acres at the southwest corner of Seventh Street and Chef Andre Rochat Place. The planning commission, three-three vote on a motion for approval, ended in a tie vote, which is tantamount to denial, and the staff recommends denial. This is a public hearing which I now declare open. Ms. Lazovich?
Good afternoon, Jennifer Lazovich, thirty-eight-hundred Howard Hughes Parkway here today on behalf of the applicant and the owner. This project is located on the southwest corner of Seventh Street and Andre Rochat. It's just actually east across the alley from Andre's restaurant, which I know, we all know exactly where that is.
Chef Andre's here, too.
He is.
Where's the chef?
Right there.
I don't see him. Okay, very good.
We are proposing, as you can see on the overhead right now, a three-story office building. If I can take you to my overhead.
But Jennifer, if you could explain about the three-story, please?
Sure, I was going to get to that, but I'll just jump right into that. The three stories is a maximum height of forty-two feet, and ultimately, what our third story becomes is, this house currently exists on one of the parcels today, as you can see, it's right, right here. Ms. Mazzarella, that is her office, she has a very strong personal attachment to this house, which is her office, and she wants to keep it, and she wants to retain it actually for her own personal office within the larger project. So, Dean Bryan, our general contractor, has met with your building department, and Eve's idea, which I think is a brilliant one, and one that we have confirmed if your building department can be done, is that we are going to, I should say, someone is going to actually pick up this house and put it as what amounts to the third story of our office building. So, when you look at this picture, you can't really see where the house is going to be, because it sits actually right behind this roofline in an outside courtyard, but because she is so attached to this house, she wants to keep it, and I do think that that's probably the most creative idea I've ever found in terms of doing an office project, certainly in this area, and maybe quite frankly, on any applications that I've ever represented. So, that gives you an idea of how we get to the third level, if you will, of this office project.
Thank you.
Sure. We are asking to go to C-one zoning. That does comply with your downtown redevelopment area lanious plan, as you can see, it's located right here, it is in red, which would allow for the zone change that we're asking for. The height of three stories, we believe, is compatible to what is existing in the neighborhood. Again, here is our site in yellow. Immediately to the north of us is an existing apartment structure that's been there for a number of years, it is five stories. Right to the west of us is, I believe Mr. Jimmerson still owns it, it's the Jim Jimmerson Law Office Building, it's also three stories. Beyond that is the federal building, which is eight stories, and if you cross over Seventh Street, you have the Las Vegas High School, which is also three stories. So, certainly, the project that we are proposing at three stories, we believe, is compatible This is our site plan, and it gives you an idea, this is north. Here's Chef Andre Rochat Drive, a little bit off the screen, and then here's Seventh Street. We do have a couple of variances associated with this project, and it's, I think, appropriate to show the site plan so that I can explain what those variances are. We have a variance for the lot coverage, we're asking to go to fifty-five percent lot coverage, where fifty percent is required, although at least a portion of our project actually won't have a building on the ground, it will be covered parking, again, the building would sit over the top of some of our parking, the rest of our parking is located here, south of our project. We also have a variance for setbacks. Under the code, the shortest side is actually considered your front setback, so although the front of our office project doesn't face Chef Andre Rochat Drive, that's considered our front, and that's required to have twenty feet, a twenty-foot setback, we have ten. Our true front setback, which is along Seventh Street, would be considered the side setback, again, we have another variance for that, to go down to six feet. The key thing I want to point out with that particular setback is that we actually exceed code all the way along here, with the exception of where our door, if you can see, it kind of juts out right here, it's probably tough to tell, but that's where, that's our closest point, so that's why we need the variance to go to six feet. Actually, the remainder of that landscaped area is actually sixteen feet, which does exceed your code requirements by one foot. We do have a parking variance as well, it is a twenty-five percent parking reduction. We believe that the amount of parking that we're provided, providing compared to the office space that we do have in here is more than sufficient to meet the needs of our tenants. There is actually on-street parking, it is metered, but we do believe we can satisfy the needs of our tenants. of our tenants with the parking that we'd be able to provide with this project. When we had the pre-application conference, it was noted that this particular project is in what's known as the Las Vegas High School Neighborhood Historic District. That is on a national registry. It is not listed on any local historic district, and currently, your code, your City of Las Vegas code, does not have any guidelines or design criteria for what can be done in that particular area. We did meet with your staff and your historic preservation officer. They did provide themselves the opportunity for us to meet with them, and we did appreciate that meeting.
Who was our officer?
It was Courtney Mooney.
Okay.
And Mr. Swanton also, from staff's side, was in that meeting.
Okay.
And a number of really constructive comments were provided. But there was a difference in opinion as to how we could build this project and maybe come to some agreement on how we could incorporate some of their comments. So ultimately, we had to agree to disagree and move forward with the project that we have before you today, which we think is very well-designed, does fit into the area, and I think would be an asset to the area. At the planning commission hearing, we had five people speak. They were all in support. We didn't have anybody speak in opposition to the project. I don't know if all of those people can be here today, so I would like to just provide for the record two letters in support of the project. One from the owners of property at 621 South Seventh Street, that's the Kriegers, and then also the owner of property at 424 South Seventh Street, that's Mr. Daniel Ross.
All right, if you'd be kind enough to give those to Ms. Ronimis, and I'd like to take a look at them after you mark them.
And maybe perhaps one important comment to point out about Mr. Ross. He's actually one of -- he's south of us, another two lots down, but he actually has a residential lot there still, and he's met with Ms. Mazzarella and likes this project. So you've heard from a resident, at least in terms of how that letter is, and he does support the project. And then on a final note, although we were not required to do a neighborhood meeting, we did have one. And we did it from 4:00 to 6:00 because a number of properties in this area are businesses, but we also realized we have residents as well. And we had one person come. It's the property manager for the apartment complex north of us, and they expressed support for the project as well. So we've certainly felt like we've worked with the neighborhood in terms of what we want to put here to try to get as much input as we could. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions of Ms. Lazovich?
Yes.
Go ahead, Councilperson Wilson.
With Mayor Protem's permission, Director Wheeler, is there a requirement that the neighborhood preservation board that oversees this area meet with the applicant and provide input to us?
Mayor and councilman, Ms. Lazovich correctly gave the information that while this area is a nationally designated historic district, it is not locally designated. And therefore, the Historic Preservation Commission does not review these projects, nor do they have any jurisdiction over any aspect of the project. And there is no requirement to come before the commission to make changes on properties within this area.
Thank you. I know we met yesterday, Jennifer, and you told me, I think, that you tried to meet with this board, but you were unable to. But now we've learned that there is no requirement that you meet with them. It was just on your own, trying to do everything you could and dot all the i's and cross all the t's. You attempted to meet with this board, even though technically they don't have jurisdiction over this particular site.
If I could, if I could. It was at my request that you tried to meet with them.
Okay. Well, either way, I didn't know that. But that's the character of your attempt to meet with them. You weren't required to, but you did anyway.
I did not meet -- I was requested to perhaps meet with one or two members of the board. It wasn't the entire board. And we did reach out to them. In one particular instance, it was a personal preference not to have a discussion outside the presence of the full board. And in another case, we unfortunately played phone tag. But so the person I did meet with was Ms. Mooney, who is the staff person for that commission, I believe, is correct.
She's a City of Las Vegas employee, though. She's not part of the board.
Correct.
The board that I'm talking about that oversees an area that is just like across the street or down the street.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
It's interesting. One of the letters indicates that there had been opposition at one point in time to make this into a city historic preservation district. And apparently, a council, whether it be this one or another council, took the position that this would not be within the city characterization as a historic district, and that's
I represent the area at the time.
That's absolutely correct, yes.
I represent the area at the time.
And that's the reason that the writer of the letter suggested that he's in favor of the project, and that's what he was fighting for when he opposed the designation of his historic preservation district. One question. In the back of my mind, I have the impression that the old Doc Squires home may be involved in this, or am I confusing something?
Yes.
Pop Squires.
Pop?
Pop.
What did I say, Doc?
Yes, sir.
Doc Pop, okay.
That is 408.
Okay. What's going to happen to that home?
Thank you. This is the home. It's next -- you can see right here, this is the home we would be keeping. This is Pop Squires' home.
You're keeping Pop Squires' home?
No. We'd be keeping, actually. It was formerly owned by Andre.
Okay.
That's the home that we would be keeping.
Okay.
This brown home that's more in the foreground, that you can see right here, is Mr. Squires' I guess former home.
Yes.
And Ms. Mazzarella has offered, at her expense, to relocate that building to another piece of city property. But if that's not something that the city wants, unfortunately, it would not remain.
You know, I made a phone call over the lunch hour to the Southern Nevada Water Authority, which is the proponent of the preserves project. And we have, as part of our centennial, had four cottages moved from -- the railroad cottages moved from downtown on Casino Center and that area over to the preserves. I asked them whether or not they had a space for the Pop Squires' home, because I think it does have historic value, and they're going to be checking into that. I would ask--
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. It is the Pop Squires' house that they are proposing to put on top. It's 408. And that, according to Ms. Mooney's report, that is not the ranch house.
Oh, okay, so--
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
We will be--
I know it is Andre's house.
Well, we will be preserving this home, then?
Yes, sir.
All right, that's what my concern was, because I think it is part of our history.
The report from Ms. Mooney is in your backup, and I'm reading from that, that the 408 is the home that was previously owned by Pop Squires, and it is 408 that they are proposing to move to the top.
Good. That satisfies my inquiry. Thank you. All right, folks, any other questions from the council or comments before I have public comment? All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody like to be heard, please?
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. The Historic Preservation Commission, chaired by Robert Staldahl, who you know from the Centennial Celebration Commission, needs one week from today at the DSC building, as Wheeler knows, at 12:15. It's entirely conceivable that they might welcome with open arms the Pop Squires cottage to be relocated, as you suggested very astutely, to the valley of Las Vegas Meadow Springs, because it is historic. I don't know how many tourists and visitors might be interested in going to the top of that three-story building to take a look at Pop Squires. But they might be very much encouraged to do so if it were in a proper environment, a historic environment. So how many stories is Andre's French Restaurant? I think the closest recollection would be one story. Very quaint, very well landscaped, and very well-known. If the proposed office building, which is massive, is not in conformance with the aesthetic ambiance, the traffic blocking, and the parking requirements of other properties within the neighboring vicinity, but that don't mean the property referenced by Councilman Wilson, but in the immediate vicinity of the subject property. So that's in question at all. Deny all five items. But if you would prefer to allow the city to grow up to match its feet, so to speak, like the Great Dane Dog, just go ahead and approve it. But where is the historic city of Las Vegas? Anybody know? And more so, where is the Las Vegas community? Or is this similar to New Orleans? A phoenix arising from his own ashes. Thank you.
All right, anybody else like to be heard? Mr. Rochat?
Good afternoon. Andre Rochat, 401 South Sixth. This project is very close to my heart since I lived in that house for 24 years. And the fact that they want to save the house, I looked at the project, I looked at the building. It's a beautiful building. I think it'll be good for business. It'll be good for downtown, and I'm all for it. As far as historic preservation, what happened in the neighborhood a few years ago, I myself, with Judge Mendoza, started a petition, and out of 160 property owners, 130 signed against being part of the historic district. So I think that's -- there's no argument there, and I don't see why we should have any problem with historic preservation.
Very good. Thank you. Yes, sir?
Good afternoon. My name is Ted Russell. I'm a resident of Las Vegas. Excuse me. I am passionate in favor of this project. I think it's emblematic of the new Las Vegas. It's so creative. It's a romantic story. When you had shots taken from the roof with the home on top, it would be a wonderful story for national publicity. As far as the issue of the board saying that when the board votes a tie, it's tantamount to denial, one board member was absolutely convinced that it could not be done at any price. Another board member was concerned that it costs too much to be done. Another board member said it was too much uptown to be downtown. And then there was a lot of objection on the high school. Well, we already know that officially, there's no guidance or direction there. And if there were, I don't think it would appertain to businesses, but more likely perhaps residences that had been there at the time of the high school's peak. And that's all I have, but I think it's a grand project.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? All right, we'll close-- Yes, Councilperson Wilson?
I just would like to ask one question, if I could, of Margot. I did receive, and maybe the other council individuals did too, a concern that of the lack of consistency that we have on this historic business. And they sent a letter saying that the Henderson House, located at 704 South Ninth, is on the city's historic property register. Is that close to this one? With 704 South Ninth, because it says that house there is on the historic property register. And it just says that the city should be consistent. And I'm just wondering if we're not -- even if we approve this today, are we going to get the consistency we need?
If I may, Mayor and Councilwoman, that may well be. I think that's the office that was recently requested to be a historic landmark by the owner of the home, or that's now been converted into an office. And the city policy has been, for some time, that if a person comes forward and requests the historic designation, we move forward. But we have not ever put the historic designation on an individual property without the -- if not at the request of the owner. And in this case, obviously, they have a different game plan for that.
And you've had no other people. Today, we're seeing everybody here is for this. And every time you've met, it seems everybody's been for it. So the only negative would be this one that I have received.
Correct.
Okay, I just needed to check that out. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
If I could, I got the same two letters. I was going to ring them into the record. One is from a Corrine Escobar, and the other one is from a Homer Anilian Shell. Their letters are the same. I was going to enter them into the record. I will read the one. It says, "The zone requirements currently in place for the Las Vegas High School neighborhood were meant to protect this valuable historic district. The city recently placed this Henderson House, located at 704 South Ninth, on the city's historical property register. The city should be consistent in their decision to promote the historic integrity of this neighborhood. Please deny the above referenced request. The owner purchased these lots, knowing the current zoning, and should not be allowed to alter this historic site with such massive construction. New construction should not -- should at least be scaled to what is currently in place in the remaining section of the neighborhood." Corrine Escobar, president of Preservation Association of Clark County. I'd like to introduce both those into the record, please.
Thank you. All right, any other comments or questions?
Just again, then, I ask Councilwoman Reese, but you are supportive of this?
Absolutely.
Even -- okay.
All right. Councilman?
Yes. On the rezoning, I don't feel like that it's going to impact the neighborhood in any negative way. We do have a restaurant just to the west of this location. That's on 112. And 113, the variance of the 50% maximum lot coverage allowed. I really feel like with the parking lot that we have, with them covering part of the parking underground, I think will be convenient for the reason to allow that variance on the parking spaces. As we all know, that, as you can tell by the design here we look at, that this is not an inexpensive endeavor. I feel like if they feel that they can do without 21 parking spaces and still be successful, then I can support that also. On the variance for the setbacks, I thought Ms. Lazovich did a great job referencing that and explaining it to us. And on the 116, the perimeter landscaping, I think you can see through her rendering also. We're going to follow that pattern that we've seen on the site development plan on the landscaping. This house on the right here, just because, to me, if anyone wants to take that house and move it somewhere, if you'd move it for them, I could see you doing that. I'm not going to require that. I do want to acknowledge Andre Rochat. I met with him two or three times. We are looking at improving the parking on Chef Andre Rochat's street. I met with Ms. Lazovich and with Andre, talking about his needs, and the applicant is working very diligently with Andre. Andre would like to open his restaurant for a lunch business. I think it's a great idea. And so with those comments, if there's no other questions, I want to thank Ms. Lazovich for her working with me on this project. It is a huge project, and I'm a betting man, and I would bet that that little house is going to be on top of this building. I know Mr. Bryan, and I feel like that he would never put his reputation online if he didn't feel like he could do something like this. So I appreciate Mr. Bryan working with staff. It's not really going to be too visible from the street, but I'm looking forward to going through the grand opening and seeing that house. I think it's a neat idea. I think it is very unique. So on item 112, Your Honor, I make a motion with all conditions, please.
All right, let's vote, please. Post? Motion carries?
And item 113, I make a motion for approval with all conditions, with those reasoning that I put on the record, please.
Thank you. Please vote. Post?
And item 114, on the parking variances, I make a motion for approval also, please.
Let's vote. Post, please. Motion carries?
And item 115, the setback requirement, the variances, I make a motion for approval there also.
All right, please vote. Post?
Again, on the landscape requirements, I make a motion for approval also.
All right, please vote. Post? Motion carries?
Ms. Lazovich, you did a great job.
Thank you. And Chef, how can you have lunch? We have to -- we're busy working around here. Can you get it in and out in 30 minutes?
We'll deliver.
Oh, okay. All right, so the city hall employees could be behind their desk while they eat. Excellent, excellent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andre.
Okay. Mr. Brown, Mr. Brown, killing me. Okay, I'll read this into the record, then I'll abstain. 118, 117, 118, 119, 120. 117 is VAR 15057. The applicant is Scott R. Gearing. The owner is Monterey Plaza LLC. Request for variance to allow 61 parking spaces, where 66 is the minimum number of parking spaces required. 1.88 acres adjacent to the south side of Azure Drive, approximately 170 feet west of Tenay away. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval, subject to conditions. 118 is SUP 15058. Same applicant, same owner. Request for special use permit for a proposed restaurant service bar supper club on the south side of Azure Drive, approximately 170 feet west of Tenaya Way. Staff recommends denial, the planning commission recommends approval, subject to conditions. SUP 15059 is 119, same applicant, same owner, requests for a special use permit for a proposed gaming restricted establishment and a waiver of the 330-foot distance separation requirement from a single-family detached dwelling on the south side of Azure Drive, approximately 170 feet west of Tenaya Way. The staff recommends denial, the planning commission recommends approval, subject to conditions. And 120 is SDR 15055, same applicant, same owner, requests for site development plan review for a proposed 5,517 square foot restaurant and waiver of perimeter landscaping buffer requirements on the south side of Azure Drive, approximately 170 feet west of Tenaya Way. The staff recommends denial, the planning commission recommends approval, subject to conditions, these are all in Ward 6, they're all public hearing, which are now declared open. I see Mr. Brown is representing the applicant, so I have to abstain based on our partners in a property on West Charleston.
Thank you, Your Honor. You've heard the items, are there any questions? Mr. Brown, please.
Jay Brown, 520 Southwest Street, representing the applicant. With me this afternoon is Scott Gearing, who's the architect for the project, as well as the applicant's consultant. We did submit a revised plan, we're still short those five parking spaces, but I believe now it's, we should have had 64 spaces and we have 59, so it's still the five, it's a little different than what Your Honor read into the record. In any event, we did meet with our neighbors who live in the surrounding area, they seem to be very enthused about our project, and we'd asked that you follow the recommendation of Planning Commission and approve these items, and Mr. Gearing and I will do our best to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, this is a public hearing.
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident, appears to be a very attractive rendering. What is the reason for staff's recommendation of denial on all five of these items? That seems rather curious, but there must be a very strong reason. What is the reason?
There's only four items.
Four items, pardon me. And the reason was?
Staff.
With your indulgence, then you need not answer. But if you do answer...
If you could give me time, please?
Oh, yes.
Staff, would you like to answer that, please?
Mayor Protem, with regard to an application where there's a variance and the findings in staff's opinion cannot be made with regard to some physical characteristic requiring the variance, then staff makes a recommendation of denial, and then the accompanying applications are also recommended for denial based upon that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, now, in my opinion, my individual opinion, that sounds rather arbitrary, maybe too technical. I think this project deserves to go forward. I recommend approval of all four items, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to be heard? Yes, sir. Come forward, say your name and address, please.
Terry Pelik, 7109 Rio Grande Gorge Court. I live right across from the property. I just bought the house, it took about a year to be built, they finally finished it, and we just moved in. And they never consulted with me about it, I just heard about it when I got it in the mail. So I'm not too happy about it. I'd like to see the residential nature of our neighborhood maintained. And a bar with gambling and drinking right next to our house would bring in too much traffic, and some of it is inevitable to be of a nature that is not conducive to sustaining a happy family. So I say, party on, party on, just not right next to my house, okay? So if you get stuck with a bar and grill, I would say that the very minimum buffer landscape requirements should be strictly enforced. Right now, we've got Roadrunners, Ravens, and Quail running around there, and I know change is inevitable, but I think it'd be nice to maintain the quality of our neighborhood. So, we've got about 4,200 square feet in our house, three generations of Las Vegans live in there, five adults, two elementary school kids, five registered voters. So, the community we live in right now is house of states three, it's a community that's just being finished. Ours is the only, the third house to be completed. The other 27 of the 30 houses are right now being constructed very quickly by distinctive homes. So maybe those people should be heard some, from too, at some point. So I appreciate your indulgence here, hearing me out, and I hope you'll decline the variances and the special use permits that they're asking for.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Councilman Ross, please.
Thank you. Sir, before you sit down, can you tell me where you live again?
Yeah, right across from the street, right across the street from this property.
Come forward, come forward, Michael.
7109 Rio Grande Gorge Court, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89130. I live right there, right beside it. Look out the master bedroom, and that's what we're looking at. It's a big vacant net wad, and I know that something's going to be built there at some point in time.
Well, I ask you that specifically because I'm very, very familiar with this area, and I don't, I don't see any new houses being built right next to this lot.
Yeah, right here. Here's the subject property.
Way over there?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, they didn't show it in the maps we got, they showed it right across from us.
There's the subject property.
Way over there.
Yeah.
Well, all my indignation, I guess, can be dispensed with. But the map I have, it shows her right across from my house. So...
Well, I'm glad we cleared that up.
So we all right?
Yeah, I am too.
Are we all right?
Anyway, I'll be watching to make sure what you say is true. Do you guys have an updated map I could look at?
Sure, we'll make it available to you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Would you like my address? I guess it's right.
Why don't you write that down?
Yeah, okay, because I'd like to see exactly.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, I appreciate that, and thank you, Mayor Protem. I've got to say, according to my wife, this is actually bringing a service to the community when you're bringing more restaurants out to the northwest, especially this area. The Azure Drive is going, is starting to grow, a lot of the projects are coming out of the ground, and you can see them, and this is just going to be a nice addition. As I stated earlier in another item, not real fond of parking waivers, but this, this parking waiver's not that significant, that would cause me great concern. So with that, your, Mayor Protem, if you'd allow me to, to move to approve Agenda Item 117, subject to staff conditions.
Thank you. You've heard a motion on 117, please cast your vote.
If I may, excuse me?
Yes.
I'd just like to add the condition to this, that the variant, this variance shall be for 59 spaces where 64 are required, so that we get the correct numbers on the map.
As corrected, Ms. Ronamas.
Any questions? Cast your vote, please. Please post. Item carries, item 118, please.
As well as Agenda Item 118, follow Planning Commission's recommendation for approval, subject to conditions.
Thank you, you've heard the motion, please cast your vote. Please post. Motion carries.
And Agenda Item 119, move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
Thank you, you've heard the motion, please cast your vote. Please post.
He's not voting.
And item 120, please.
Thank you, Mayor Protem, and item 120, also move for approval, subject to staff conditions.
If I may, Mayor Protem and Councilman here, just to change to condition number three, compliance with site plan, landscape plan, and building elevation state stamped on November 15th, '06, and change number four, instead of the buffer width of three feet to nine feet.
Wait, don't leave, sir, don't leave, I have, as soon as we take this vote, I have something to say to you.
Mr. Brown, do you agree to the changes of the, Mr. Gary, do you agree to the changes?
Change of date on the plans.
That's all it is.
Okay, fine.
And if you would, after the vote, let me make one more comment, Mayor Protem.
Okay. You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. Please post. Thank you, and I have, just one, I have a question, or Councilman, do you want to show a positive vote on item 117?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Ross?
And Mr. Brown, Mr. Gary, before you leave, this, I hope that Mayor Protem would indulge us for the opportunity to talk about the restaurant, kind of food you have there.
Casa Danwana, which is on Main right by Charleston, same people involved, they'll be opening up this particular restaurant.
Terrific. Thank you. Mayor, I'll turn it back.
All right, thank you, I had to abstain, but Mr. Brown, gentleman has three generations of Las Vegans in his home, and five registered voters? I want him comped.
You got it.
All right. Okay, all right. Forget about the landscaping. Okay, item 121, VAR 15081, the applicant owner is Jacques Joseph Leboth and Lynda Marie Leboth, appeal filed by the applicant from the denial by the planning commission on a request for a variance to allow a 2.75-foot yard setback where 10 feet is the minimum setback required on 0.46 acres at 1830 Rosemary Court. This is in Ward 1, the planning commission and staff recommend denial, it's a public hearing, which is now declared open. Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Ken Vogt, I live at 9901 West Sahara, representing the Leboths. Let me first of all say, the original submission did not, on our part, request a 2.75 setback, it requested a five-foot setback. Due to some encroachments on the original planning, that got changed to 2.75. That said, we've made some modifications to the plans, so that now there is no encroachment beyond that five-foot setback. We are not encroaching any, anything beyond the 10-foot setback in the side yard that would be along Tenaya, and the only setback reduction that we're asking for now is on the south side, which I will get to in a moment. And so there are no further encroachments, and hopefully that will be viewed favorably. I have three letters here, two of which were submitted at the last meeting, I have a third one from the adjacent neighbor, let's show, okay. Can we blow that up a little bit?
Okay, that's centered, right?
Well, we'll get it centered.
There you go, good.
This is the property, right here. The new letter that has not been given, but I have it now, is from the adjacent neighbor. So I'd like to submit those three.
All right, would you hand them up to us after you've through marking them, please?
Now, I do understand, from being online, that there is one dissenting person, but it's not even in this gated community, it's 400 feet away on the other side, I just wanted to bring that up. All the other people in the gated community of Rosemary Estates, there have been no issues with them. Going to the plan to show what we want to do...
I'm going to send these down to the councilman, please.
This line here at an angle to the wall is the requested five-foot setback. And the only place that the building would touch that is right here at the front corner of this new garage. Towards the back of the property, or it's called a side yard, but it's along Tenaya here, there's more footage. I have the elevations, which would show the relationships of the wall to the setback. We do not infringe or encroach on those setbacks at all under this new planning, and that's what I'm asking. In addition to that, the neighbor across the way has built an RV garage that is set five feet from the side property line, in addition to another piece of, of structure in the rear. There was some concern in the original meeting, that they said, what we're asking for is, is a lot of house on the lot, and so I did some calculations, and the house currently is 20% lot coverage, with the addition of the garage, the new garage, it'd be 26%. The other houses, this one here, I couldn't determine, I believe it to be over 30% lot coverage, but another one that I could determine is up to 28% lot coverage. The other ones in the neighborhood are 26, 23 is the smallest. So I don't see that lot coverage should be a big issue. And the site plan that I have... Which I will get here. All right, misplaced it. This is the addition right here to the existing house. And this is the five-foot setback, the reduction from 10-foot to five-foot that we're asking for. The existing 10-foot setback here is no encroachment in, just what the house already does. I'm done.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that you completed your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions in the gentleman? Folks, a public hearing, would anybody like to be heard on this? Let me ask you this, Ms. Wheeler, you heard the representations, are the objections still valid as far as a recommendation for denial?
Sir, I believe, based on the new plans that they have submitted on September 8th, to the best of my knowledge, it appears that two of the variance issues have been eliminated, but there is still one variance, again, for which staff could not make the finding, but there is only one variance issue at this time.
And what is that, which one?
The southern property line, as indicated by the applicant, still is requesting the, the five feet where the 10 feet would be required.
I see, okay, thank you, I appreciate that answer. All right, folks, a public hearing, would anyone like to be heard? All right, sitting down, we'll close the public hearing. Councilwoman Tarkanyan.
Could you point out to me, sir, where the neighbors are that sent the letters of approval? You have two letters of approval from the neighbors, and I know you have some from more distant neighbors, but from these two, where they live?
Yes. The three, can you tell color on this? Okay, the three big green dots are from where the, where the letters are from. Right here is the property, the subject property.
Okay. I wonder, would it be possible, would you mind if we obeyed this just for two weeks, so that we can take, you're presenting a lot of new information to us, that changes something of both the denial by the planning commission and by staff, and by what information I had before, and if all of this turns out good, that would be wonderful, but would you mind, I would like to obey it, if it'd be...
Not at all.
I haven't talked with you previously, but that would be my desire right now.
Okay, not a problem.
Okay, so I would move to obey this item for two weeks?
October 4th.
October 4th.
All right, let's vote, please. Motion carries, thank you. And for what it's worth, Councilman, I'm not going to be here on October the 4th, but I think with the modifications, I would tend to support the applicant, just depending on what your independent investigation shows, that would be my present position.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, 122, 123, and 124. 122 is SUP 15039, the applicant owner is Corestone LLC, requests for special use permit for proposed urban lounge at 103 to 123 East Charleston Boulevard, it's in Ward 3, the planning commission staff recommend approval, subject to conditions, it's going to be a public hearing. 123 is SUP 15038, the applicant owner is Corestone LLC, requests for special use permit for proposed general business-related gaming establishment at 103 to 123 East Charleston Boulevard, planning commission staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. And 124 is SDR 15035, same applicant owner, requests for site development plan review for... Same applicant owner, requests for site development plan review for proposed 4,930 square-foot urban lounge and waivers of downtown, Centennial Streetscape and build-to-line standards, 1.13 acres at 103 to 123 East Charleston Boulevard. Planning commission and staff recommend approval, subject to conditions. These are in Ward 3. They're all public hearings. They're now declared open. Yes, sir.
Wesley Isbut, the owner of the property and a percentage owner in the Corestone LLC, the first applicant for an urban lounge, which, as you may or may not be aware, is a brand-new license that we're very happy and proud to have worked with city staff for quite some time to facilitate this. Some history on this particular piece of land. It was a remnant parcel when Casino Center was redirected and First Street was closed many years ago. It was of some controversy. Several years ago, the city was as so kind as to sell it to the Arts Factory at that time. The Arts Factory has sold the parcel to a brand-new entity called Corestone, which the Arts Factory is a partner in, with Enrique Tenoco, the owner of Tenoco's Bistro. And we're very excited. This is a unique construction. It's one of a kind. It'll be a beacon in the night for the potential high-rises that are built around us and people driving on the street. It has an indoor and outdoor aspect to it with a glass surrounding. The landscape requirements have been met and enhanced beyond that. I can only ask your approval and say how proud we are to be here today, asking this request.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Mr. Isbut? Yes, Councilmember.
Just a question. Is there any safety mitigation built in along the Charleston corridor? Is it elevated at all, or...
We have a setback off of Charleston due to the redirection of Casino Center right there at Charleston. I know that there has been a lot of talk about what is happening as far as like a bus turnout lane and how that's being worked. The protection aspect is, there is no entrance to this off of Charleston. You have to come around to East Boulder to enter. So we don't anticipate any pedestrian for our purposes. As you know, because of the festivals that happen there, it's a very busy intersection. And your concern is valid in the future for other aspects beyond what we're doing. But I don't see how this, how we're impacting it in a negative manner. We're actually forcing people to come around the backside.
I'll rephrase the question. I would be more concerned on just how busy the vehicular traffic is on Charleston. And apparently, the setback would allow that safety component to be built in. No, I think it's a wonderful project.
Are you referring to potentially a car out-of-control type of situation?
Or just an intersection and just, it seems to be a proliferation of these type intersection and traffic. So I ask, I'm sure the design team has addressed that, so...
Okay. All right, any other comments by the council? I'll reserve mine. Public comment, please.
Dick Guyer, D60, Hilton Head Court, President of the Las Vegas Arts District Neighborhood Association. I come here, as I have before, in support of a development within the Arts District. This will give us, when it's built, which we hope will be the fall of next year, really the first bar actually within the Arts District that's dedicated to people enjoying themselves. This bar will also have a little facility for music and with that new license, just five gaming machines. But its importance as a part of the magnet which is being built in that area, the Arts Factory itself, Sculpture Park, and that will be on Boulder, other developments that are coming, and the high-rises that are next door, it's going to be an amenity to the people who live there, and I think will increase actually the value of being in the Arts District because you have the opportunity to eat the food from Mr. Tenoco, Chef Tenoco, and enjoy an evening at this bar. So the Arts District Neighborhood Association stands behind this and looks forward to your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guyer.
I'm Ted Russell, resident of Las Vegas. I don't know whether it's going to be a jazz club or not, but I am entirely jazzed by this architecture. Architecture is both an art and a science. This is unique, innovative. It will be a magnet for more investment and more appreciation of that vital artistic district. I can't thank you enough for bringing it to us.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident of the Arts District, and the first member of the local public to stand in front of this council, this podium, to very strongly and enthusiastically endorse the creation of an Arts District in the City of Las Vegas. But the Arts District of the City of Las Vegas must be a public participant Arts District. We'll talk about that at length, some of it perhaps in a different forum. But my questions on this item today are very simple. Who are the owners of Corestone LLC? Is there any relationship between Corestone LLC and the Corner Stone Company? Or is that a misspelling? And finally, does any member of the planning commission have an interest in the Corner Stone, or Corestone, but the LLC? And with that, I would recommend approval, because the deeper you get, the better I like it. Go ahead and approve it. And after that, I will then research all of those items. You don't need to respond. Those are just questions from the public.
Your Honor, if I could...
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I think he's referring to Dick Truesdale.
I'd be happy to get to address that. We believe that the Arts Factory in this particular corner is a core aspect of the city. And when myself and Enrique Tenoco and Michael Clark, who owns a construction company that built Tenoco's and is his current partner, the three of us are the partners of Corestone. We sat down, we thought about what it meant to the city, we came up with the name Corestone. We did the research ourselves, found several hundred cornerstones. We had no idea of who owned any of those companies. We chose the name blindly because of our own dreams, and it really is that simple.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I have to say this. Wes has been with us since the beginning. He was one of the pioneers with the Art Factory and one of the visionaries as to what this part of our community was going to become. And he's been a pain in the rear end, there's no question about that, over the years, but always with the right motivation to try to create something in this district which will have a great value to the cultural core of Las Vegas. And I think when we approved this concept of the urban lounge, we had this very project in mind. We didn't have the drawings in front of us, the architecture, didn't know that Tenoco, with his culinary genius, would be there. But it was with that idea, that kind of energy, that the concept was devised. So I think it's going to be great. I really do. This is not just going to be a first Friday visitation place. This is going to be one of the first places down there in the Arts District where people who like the arts will be able to come and sit around and get a real good meal and have a drink and have some social intercourse there. And I am very, I'm delighted with it. Delighted with it. Mayor, put that up.
Thank you. I have a different opinion of Mr. Isbut. I met with him when this was in my district before, when he was first getting started down there at his location. And I always found him very enthusiastic and really caring, and I've always enjoyed working with him.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor?
On item 122...
No, I just wanted to add that I second what the mayor says, and it's absolutely beautiful. And it is such an absolutely great addition for that area. You should be very proud of yourself.
On the special use permit on item 15039, I make a motion for approval with all conditions.
Let's vote, please. Post, please. Motion carries.
And on this, item 123, I make a motion for approval with all staff conditions.
Please vote. Post.
And...
Motion carries.
Item 124, I make a motion for approval. And again, Wes, I would have enjoyed working with you on these projects as before. I think it is a great project, and I'm going to enjoy coming over there and protecting this facility.
Thank you.
If I may, before you vote, Public Works... Bart Anderson of Public Works. I'd like to recommend an additional condition be imposed on item number 124. And that condition is dedicate appropriate right-of-way at the southwest corner of Boulder Avenue and Casino Center Boulevard for a loading zone prior to the issuance of any permits for this site unless otherwise allowed by the city engineer. In addition, coordinate with the city engineer's office regarding the realignment of Casino Center Boulevard prior to the issuance of any permits for this site.
Is that agreeable?
I believe so. It's agreeable with me, but I know there are extensive plans on the Sculpture Park right there, so I don't know how that fits in with that. I mean, that's a more global question than I can approve or...
Well, certainly, it's my understanding that my staff has spoken with you on this item.
I'm in full agreeance with putting that in. I have no problems with it. It makes sense for our business. I mean, I...
And it certainly is specifically, you know, to assist your business. So I can't say anything other than that, but we would recommend the condition.
And we're happy to do it. I'm just going to add that one fine day, you may change your mind, and we'll change our mind, and we'll agree together to make it something better. But when it's built, it will be there.
Very good.
And then also on the site development, the site development, site, would you mind working with Mr. Anderson and see if there's some way we could install in your landscape buffer there on Charleston and Casino Center, maybe put some...
Some ballards, some protective ballards and some...
Well, just the pillars like this every three or four feet or something to where...
I can tell you, we're so good, they won't make those ballards look like art.
That's it, that's it. That's good.
It's wonderful. It's a beautiful project.
There actually is a very large sculpture there right now that I'm sure with a little bit of some help from some engineers, it could actually be that ballad you're talking about.
Okay. Those conditions added, your honor, make a motion for approval, item 124.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. 125 is SUP 14974. The applicant is John W. Johnson. The owner is Obannon Plaza LLC. Requests for special use permit for proposed automobile rental establishment at 2219 South Rainbow Boulevard. This is in Ward 1. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval, subject to conditions. It's a public hearing which is now open. Yes, sir.
Timothy Preston, representing Avison Budget Car Rental Group. And we would just like to ask that the project be approved with the stipulations based or from the planning commission.
All right, thank you, sir. Are there any questions of the gentleman? Folks, a public hearing. Would anybody like to be heard? All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing then. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
We had an additional condition that we wanted to place on number, item number 125, and that pertained to, pertain to the number of car spaces. And the reasoning is because we have a really terrible time on that street with cars. I think we have promiscuous car lots, if you want to know the truth, in that area, because you can have 10 cars one week, and then the next week you have 200. And so we want to be just very, very careful in setting the lines of the perimeters. So would Margot please just read the additional condition?
Mayor and Councilwoman, on this item, we would recommend deleting condition number two as it's no longer necessary. And an additional condition that could be added would be that a maximum of five spaces may be used for use of rental vehicles. Any plan for designating the spaces shall be approved by the Planning and Development Department.
Is that agreeable?
Yes, I believe those are the same conditions that we've had on our previous two projects in the city, and we're fine with that.
Very good. Thank you.
Then I move for approval.
All right, let's vote, please.
As amended.
As amended.
Let's vote. Motion carries. I think that the councilwoman, when she was talking about promiscuous car lots, she was referring to Volkswagen rabbits.
Oh, gee.
Does anybody like my tie? Okay. All right, good luck to you, sir.
Thank you for your tie.
Thank you. All right. 126 is SUP 15008. The applicant is Sonic Atmospheres. The owner is Red Rock Plaza LLC. Request for a special use permit for auto parts, accessory installation, and a waiver to allow installation bays to face the public right-of-way at 5191 West Charleston Boulevard, Suite 170. This is in Ward 1. The staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval, subject to conditions. It's a public hearing which is now open. Yes, sir.
My name is Jason Bojikian. I'm the owner of Sonic Atmospheres. What I was asking for here is a, propose to open a car stereo and accessories installation, retail and installation. The issues with the shop door in the rear that faces the alley here, which is a public right-of-way. The concern is with noise transmission across the alley, the neighborhood to the, to the south here. I do cater to more the high-end vehicles of, had extensive experience with Porsche and Ferrari. And all the installation and work will be done, excuse me, inside the facility, along with a, there's a distance of 80 feet between the rear of the building and the landscape buffer of trees, and I believe there's a 5-foot perimeter wall on the edge of the property. I've been in the industry about 15 years, and I have never seen any concerns with neighborhoods with a noise problems, anything like that. So therefore, I ask for your approval.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any questions of the gentleman? All right, hearing done. Folks, a public hearing. Anyone like to be heard? Be happy to hear from you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing then. Councilwoman Tarkanian.
My understanding is it's just one bay, one bay door that would be coming down. The item says bays, making it plural.
No, it's just one bay door, 10 by 10.
One bay door, 10 by 10. Well, then, I would, and it would be kept, and one of the conditions was to keep it closed at all times unless vehicles are entering or leaving.
Correct.
And that would cut down the noise. I would move for approval, except I would want that item to read installation bay to face the public right-of-way, not installation bays.
All right, that could be amended.
So I meant that accordingly. I move for approval with all conditions as amended.
If I may...
Thank you, yes.
That would be actually, condition number four would be roll-up door is to remain closed at all times when vehicles are not entering or exiting the installation facility. And the roll-up door is to remain closed at all times when vehicles are not... I would, I'm sorry. So that would be delete six and change number four to singular.
Right, basically, they're just saying it's one, one door.
Correct.
Very good, thanks.
Thank you.
Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. 127 is SUP 15016. The applicant owner is Janice C. Tricolo and Carmen J. Tricolo. Request for a special use permit for a proposed habitable accessory structure at 5341 American Ranch Court. This is in Ward 6. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval, subject to conditions. It's a public hearing which is now open. Is there anybody here on behalf of the Tricolos?
Carmen Tricolo, 5341...
Oh, I'm sorry. Boy, oh boy. It's a tie.
It's a nice tie, by the way. Carmen Tricolo, 5341...
I'm ready to vote, let's...
5341 American Ranch Court, and we don't have any objections to any of the conditions set.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mr. Tricolo? Folks, public hearing. Anyone like to be heard?
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. Approve it, sigh. Well, that's what you had. Again, itemized, sigh. Approve it. Thanks.
All right. Anybody else like to be heard? All right, we'll close the public hearing then. Councilman Ross.
Thank you, your honor. Mr. Tricolo, I would like to motion that we approve this agenda item, subject to conditions.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you still like the tie?
Never again. 128 is SUP 15037. The applicant is Club 601 LLC, the owner of City of Las Vegas. Request for a special use permit for a proposed habitable accessory structure at 5341 American Request for special use permit for a proposed tavern limited establishment at 601 Fremont Street. This is in Ward 5. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval. Subject to conditions, it's a public hearing, which is now open. Gentlemen.
Good afternoon, everybody. Lee Zucker, appearing on behalf of the applicant, Club 601. And we agree and are happy with the planning and staff's recommendation for approval.
Okay, can you tell us a little bit about it, please?
Basically, we're going to bring some life into the entertainment district with music and some drinking, and hopefully some happy people attending there. We're going to have a pizza establishment there as well.
Very good. And when do you plan to be open?
As soon as we can. If it was up to us, we'd be open tomorrow. But in reality, we hope to be open at the end of January, February of next year.
Very good. Be happy to hear from you.
Happy to be here, sir.
All right, very good. Could you give us your name, please, for the record?
Richard Maris, 30 Collington River Drive, Henderson.
Clear. I'm sorry, I...
601 Fremont, pardon me.
Good, now you're talking. Okay. Any questions of either of the gentlemen? All right, folks, a public hearing. Would anyone like to be heard?
Says in the agenda, this Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. It says in the agenda, applicant Club 601 LLC, owner, City of Las Vegas. I don't know whether that makes sense or not, but I ask the question. Who authorized the City of Las Vegas to own a tavern limited license business establishment? I don't have to answer it all. As far as this goes, I say approve it immediately, not sooner. If you want to get help, I'll help you open. You can open tomorrow night if you wish. Thanks.
Anybody else like to be heard?
Hi, I'm Ted Russell, resident of Las Vegas. I've been watching them and with them every step in the process till now. I'm delighted that they're coming. They enjoy a particularly good reputation in Austin. There was some kind of a press event where, oh, it was the Centennial, and somebody indicated the mayor that they were from Henderson, and he responded to the lady, Henderson? I've never heard of it. Is it somewhere near Texas? Well, this is next, near Texas, and it's awfully good. I'm glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
Yes, Stephen "Captain Truth" Dempsey. I kind of lean towards, Tom may have brought up a cogent point there. I would like a clarification on why it says the owner is the City of Las Vegas. Is that a typo, or is there some explanation behind that that the people could be privy to?
All right, Dr. Selby, would you like to explain that, please?
Yes, Mayor. We purchased the building from Clark County with the intent to have it redeveloped into nightclub, and these gentlemen will be the future owners. Right now, the title is in the city's name.
Very good, thank you. Okay, any other members of the public? All right, then we'll close the public hearing, and this is Councilman Weekly's call.
Thank you very much, Your Honor, and this stems off of the redevelopment report that we received earlier today by Mr. Adams. Your Honor, this is going to be a great project. Emos is a very reputable night spot in Texas, and I think it's going to be a great amenity to downtown Las Vegas, and we welcome these gentlemen. And with that, I'd like to make a motion to move for approval with all conditions, please.
Very good. Let's vote, please. Post. Motion carries. Good luck, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Sooner the better.
Thank you.
Okay. 129 is SUP 15440. The applicant is Howard Bach. The owner is, is this, has this been abated? No, we're still, okay. The applicant is Howard Bach. The owner is Chetac Development Corporation. Request for special use permit for a proposed pawn shop with waivers of the minimum distance separation requirements from a residential use and from a financial institution specified at 2230 Paradise Road. This is being heard in conjunction with this morning's agenda item number 52, which is discussion and possible action regarding change of location for a pawnbroker class two secondhand dealer license and pistol permit from 128 South First Street to 2230 Paradise Road. These are in Ward 3, and the staff recommends denial. The planning commission recommends approval. It's a public hearing, which is now declared open. Mr. Kemper.
Yes, good afternoon, Your Honor, members of the council. I'm Chris Kemper here on behalf of Mr. Bach. I do want to say, Your Honor, that Mr. Genzer asked me if he could help me on this application, and I politely declined, saying I don't need your kind of help today. But I am very pleased to represent Mr. Bach. I met Mr. Bach when I was representing the Golden Nugget in their expansion. And as you may know or recall, Mr. Bach owned the pawn shop and the liquor store on First Street right across from us. And but for his willingness to relocate his businesses, that expansion could not have been approved. And I do have to tell you that he put his personal interests aside because he did have a lease in place, and he felt very strongly that redevelopment of this area is good for all of Las Vegas. And all he asked of us is that we help him find locations for his pawn shop and his liquor store somewhere else in the city. He asked me if I would be willing to assist him in that regard, and like I just told you, I told him I would be very pleased to do so. The application for the liquor store and its related item has been held for 30 days. We're working out some issues on that, so that the only thing before you today now is item 129, and then the morning agenda item 52 related to the pawn shop. We very much respect the fact that because there are some waivers involved, staff has to recommend denial of this particular application. But as to those waivers, we're talking about one waiver where it's 100, we are 160 feet from a residential development where 200 feet is required. This is on Paradise. The residential we're talking about is an R4, not that that, you know, affects the fact that it isn't residential, but we're not talking about adjacent to or near single-family detached homes. So it's 160 feet where 200 is required. And the other one, we are 958 feet away from another financial institution where 1,000 feet is required. And if we were able to measure it from door to door, we'd be well in excess of 1,000 feet, but your rules require that it be measured from property line to property line. So just a couple other points, if I could. That we were advised by the landlord of this particular site, I have no personal knowledge of this, but you might, that there was in fact a pawn shop located just west of this particular location that closed down. And so consequently, what we're doing is not adding a pawn shop, but essentially replacing a pawn shop that was previously in this area. And I think it's also important to note that Mr. Bach, in his 31 years of being in the pawn shop business, has never been cited for anything by any agency at any level. He prides himself on being a quality citizen, a law-abiding citizen, and as we know from his willingness to participate in our redevelopment plans downtown, a very good Las Vegas resident. And we appreciate that. There were 114 notices mailed, not a single protest, not a single protest at the planning commission. Again, staff was very kind in their denial. We always respect and appreciate their opinion. The planning commission recommended approval unanimously, and we would respectfully request your approval as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kemper. Any questions of Mr. Kemper? All right, folks, it's a public hearing. Yes, ma'am.
I'm Catherine Borg, 2201 Santa Paula Drive. I'm a resident and property owner. I actually didn't know, I didn't get a notice for this particular item. I got a notice for the packaged liquor store. And I really would strongly ask you to deny both, and I can comment on the next one. I think that's a more appropriate time. We are also...
But that is not going to be heard today. That's been abated. The liquor store has been abated.
Okay, thank you. So I'll just talk about this one. Neither are the type of businesses that, we're also in a redevelopment area, and there are a lot of people in the neighborhood who don't feel that these are, I don't feel this is the type of business. I, if one moves away, I don't want another to move in. I want to see some change in the neighborhood. And also would comment that the city is about to spend a great deal of money to beautify St. Louis, the St. Louis corridor with the median that's going to start soon. And this is not the type of business that I would like to see near my home. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else like to be heard?
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. Mr. Kemper spoke eloquently about the applicant and the applicant's attributes that are commendable. And in my opinion, individual opinion, there may be no better location for this particular business, except right where it's indicated. Is that the vicinity of the corner of Paradise and Sahara? In the, maybe several blocks, what, south of St. Louis? And a few blocks west of what's referred to as the commercial center? That's an appropriate location by all means. I strongly recommend approval of this item. Thank you.
All right, would anybody else like to be heard?
Hi, I'm Ted Russell, resident of Las Vegas. It would be hard to overemphasize the importance of the expansion of the Golden Nugget. Mr. Bach's altruism and support of downtown redevelopment is public record and common knowledge. As far as the concern of the resident in the area, I can sympathize there, but on the other hand, the balance is in favor of Mr. Bach, merely in my opinion, because he has done something so important for downtown Las Vegas. He's proven himself a quality citizen, the highest quality businessman, and I'm sure that it will be an improvement over the old pawn shop and not any deterioration or depreciation from prior circumstances. That's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else like to be heard? All right, then we'll close the public hearing. Mr. Bach, would you like to say anything?
No, I think he's fine.
No, he isn't. You're trying to hide him there, and I'm not going to allow him to be hidden.
Your Honor, if I may too, it might help if I could show on the overhead exactly where it's located, so that the woman might have some...
She should have some peace of mind, I believe, yes.
If we could go to the overhead before, and I'm never afraid to have Mr. Bach say anything, if you could zoom in on this, please? A little more. There we go.
There you go.
Thank you. This is Sahara right here. Everything across, as you know, is H1. This is Las Vegas Boulevard. Everything here is C2. It is right on a corner. This is Paradise. It is right in a corner, clearly a commercial area. This is C1. It's that restaurant, the restaurant bar in that location. And the R4 we were talking about is here. Everything across the street, not only is this Paradise, but everything across the street is already zoned C1, and all the way down here is C1. So I echo the, the last gentleman's comments that this is exactly the kind of location, and Mr. McGowan, as he noted, exactly the kind of location where that use would be appropriate, so. All right?
All right, thank you, Mr. Kemper. Mr. Bach?
Now, I just want to appreciate your presentation, Chris, and I want to assure the council that we'll continue the same operations that we've had previously for the last 31 years. We've never had a complaint, and I don't believe you'll have a complaint in the next 31 years. Thank you.
Thank you. I, we appreciate the fact that you're working with us on all of these things, and we want you to do well financially, but at the same time, we know that you're trying to cooperate with us, and just from the council to you, we thank you for that, because you're making our life a lot easier. And I thought you were applying for a massage parlor license when you were in that area, but...
There are a few in that area.
I understand that. Okay. Thank you. Okay, bear pro tem.
Yes. First of all, I want to thank Councilwoman Tarkanian for her work on this project, getting First Street vacated. I know that Mr. Bach was very instrumental in getting First Street vacated for the Golden Nugget. I appreciate that. Also, the young lady that spoke, I also had concerns about the liquor establishment. With this here, and I've always said, if I won't put it in my backyard, I won't put it in your backyard. I feel like, you know, Santa Paula, I really support the St. Louis Beautification Project. I think it's going to be great for the neighborhood. I really believe that Mr. Bach, what has been spoken of Mr. Bach today, what he does in his operation is, is second to none. I wouldn't be afraid living next door to something like this here. Mr. Bach really, really runs a good, a good shop. I've been in his place over the years a number of times, visiting with Mr. Bach. I represented the area before, and I know that we addressed some of his concerns about the stage it was on, First Street. We worked with him on signage and stuff like that. So I have had a, a working arrangement with Mr. Bach in the past. I've always appreciated his honesty, his upfrontness, and he is a man of his word, so I feel quite comfortable in putting this store at this location. I don't think we're going to have any problems, problems at all. So, Your Honor, on item 129, I make a motion for approval with all conditions, please.
Very good. Let's vote on that, please. Post. Motion carries. On item 52, again, I make a motion for approval with all staff conditions. Thank you. Please vote. Post. Motion carries. Good luck to you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, members of the council.
Chris, thank you very much. I appreciate working with you.
It's our pleasure, and thank you, Councilman.
Okay, we're going to 131. This is SDR 15042. The applicant is Keep Memory Alive Foundation. The owner is City Parkway 5, Inc. Request for site development plan review for a proposed 62,616 commercial development consisting of a medical research and treatment building, museum and activity center, and waivers of the Parkway Center built-to-line requirement and exterior materials requirements on 1.9 acres of 22 South Grand Park, Grand Central Parkway. It's in Ward 5. The planning commission and staff both recommend approval, subject to conditions. This is a public hearing, which is now declared open. Gentlemen?
I might show at 7448 West Sahara on behalf of the Keep Memory Alive Foundation. Over the past several months, we've had several, if not many, meetings with staff to iron out some of the complexities of this project. I wanted to thank staff for their help in this issue and getting us here before this council today. That being said, we have no objections to staff's recommendations. I have here Brian Zamora and David Rodriguez of the world-renowned architectural firm Gary Partners. They have a few slides of the building if the council wishes to see them.
I want to see them, and I'm sure the council does too.
Great. And Brian, I'll turn it over to Brian to make a brief presentation.
Hi, Brian Zamora, Gary Partners. Due to the complexity of the building, I wanted to show a few images to justify our waivers. First move. Here's the site plan. We've worked diligently with Newland Companies and the city to resolve any coordination issues, and we were, we were kind of caught between two master plans in the phasing of our own project, and we feel it's a valuable asset, and we've fully coordinated our project with Newland Companies, and it will be a great asset to the master plan. This is a Axon metric view of the building. The building is comprised of two sides, comprised mostly of stainless steel and plaster. We've asked for a material waiver so that we can bring these materials all the way to the ground. This is a primary elevation view along Bonneville. You can see the building is very sculptural in nature. Again, stainless steel carried all the way to the, to the ground. We've also asked for a waiver of the setback requirement so that we can pull the building back further from the corner of Bonneville and Grand Central Parkway so that it could create a buffer to a high-traffic, high-visibility corner, and also so that better viewing angles as a gateway to Union Park. And this is an interior photo of what's called the Activity Center, which is primarily a fundraising space whereby all proceeds of this space are used for Keep Memory Alive nonprofit for all brain disorders. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from the council? All right. Anybody from the public want to be heard on this?
Yes.
Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. What is the exact purpose of the building? What is the exact purpose of the building? What is the activity?
It's an Alzheimer's facility. They're going to be doing research and raising money.
I'd connect the Keep Memory Alive and the artistic sense of this. It's very avant-garde, and I suppose that's the trend today. And in that respect, it is apparently the cutting-edge of avant-garde, which is redundant. And there's apparently enough room inside to conduct the activities. They're fundraising activities of some kind. And I don't need to get into asking questions about how the firemen would treat this when they put a ladder up beside such a building. Maybe more of a ski run than an easy recovery, but I'm sure you can cope with all that. The important thing is, this appears to be a very important project, particularly in the view of the mayor. And I think it's worthwhile to proceed with this, posting all this, not the only one of its kind, however, in the city. Because things like this sometimes end up being referred to in history books or comic books as white elephants, you know, or purple elephants or something like that. And that's not the case with this. I think the significant thing about it is the activity, the content, not the appearance of the shape, where it appears to be artistic, but the value of the content, the activity that takes place. And I will look at that with very close scrutiny as time goes along. I recommend you approve the item and also look carefully. Thank you.
Would anybody else like to be heard? Have you picked up anyone?
Hi, I'm Ted Russell. My family, in its history, was very severely afflicted with Alzheimer's. This is what I would call a very large jewel in making Las Vegas a world-class city. It so moves me. It's beyond even a dream come true. I'm just so thankful that we're so highly blessed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else, please?
Yes, Stephen "Captain Truth" Dempsey. My background is healthcare. I think that if possibly the people that are worried about this would do a little research on the internet, they'd find out what many people that I respect say is causing Alzheimer's and how to get rid of it. I heard a part about the fundraising, and then I saw the building. Is it the most appropriate type of structure? You're going to take people's money. I'd like to know, is this a comparative cost building to an ordinary building? I mean, what, is this pure show to try to raise the money for the building? Or what are you trying to do? First of all, I think Alzheimer's should be totally obliterated in the next year or two, but we keep searching for drugs to give to people rather than correcting the problem. And I think that those that worship at the altar of Big Pharma are going to have that problem probably forever. But I just couldn't help feeling uneasy when I saw the building and then talking about raising money, and I think Tom referred to it as ostentatious. That would be my only concern regarding it. Thank you.
Anybody else like to be heard? Okay. Mr. Zamora, welcome to Las Vegas.
Thank you. I would like to possibly address-
No, there's no need to. Please, don't even go there. Please don't even think of it. This is-
I do feel it's a fully respectful building.
This is, wait, you don't have to justify, please, you don't have to justify anything that you're doing here. This is the project that's taking us to a whole different level as far as being a world-class city. We're going to have the finest doctors in the world, as I said this morning, associated with these cures for neurodegenerative diseases. We have the world-class architect in Frank Gehry designing a building that people from all parts of the globe are going to come and look at and marvel at, and it's going to be in our downtown. It's huge, okay? So we're not going to let anything detract from the greatness of the project.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Wiggly?
Thank you very much, Your Honor. I'd just like to say, Brian, how you doing? I had the pleasure, and I won't belabor this because I know several of us have other appointments we need to get to, but I was very blessed and fortunate to have had the opportunity to travel to Gary's studio and to have seen these brilliant minds there assembled. I mean, it was absolutely amazing to see men and women your ages. I thought it was a group of older people designing these buildings, but, I mean, to see a room full of blocks and materials and to see how all you guys just sat and think. I mean, I know Captain Truth, he just stated he didn't understand the concept of the building. When I first saw it, I think I was kind of the same way. But when I traveled to California and I went and had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Gehry in his comfortable setting and to see you guys like worker bees in this beautiful studio and what you guys do, I mean, I was just absolutely thoroughly impressed. And, you know, Captain Truth, listening to some of your comments, I'm not going to give a lot of credence to it, but I will say, because you felt like I kind of did when I first saw it, this is really a blessing for this community because Mr. Gehry is well renowned. And for us to have a structure like this on our site here in the city of Las Vegas, this is definitely going to be something for sore eyes to see here in our city. And Brian, I think you guys are phenomenal, and, I mean, if anybody ever wanted to see some of the most brilliant, diverse young men and women in the country, they need to visit the Gehry Studios. And I'm proud of this, I really am, and I'm just honored to be on this council to even be a part of this project. So, Your Honor, with that-
Yeah, Councilman, before we go on, we have on the screen, this will be the treatment and research side of the facility. This will be, if you're facing from north to south, that's what you'll see, and these just won't be blocks. There will be glass spaces where people will be able to look in and actually visualize what's taking place on the premises there. On the other side of the building, that's going to be this massive hall, and it will be used for lectures, will be used for fundraisers, so that people will be able to rent the facility. They'll be able to have weddings and social functions there, and the monies that they'll spend, the first $20,000 will go towards Alzheimer's research directly right into the pot. We're going to have a museum of the mind, which is associated with the Smithsonian, which is on the right-hand side, and Wolfgang Puck will be doing the catering in the area there. So it's awesome.
It's pretty awesome.
It's just awesome.
Yeah. It's great design.
All right, motion, please.
With that, Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion for approval with all conditions, please.
Thank you. Let's vote, please.
And thank you, guys, again, Brian.
Thank you.
Post. Motion carries. And one last thing, there was some reference this morning by Scott Adams, our director of business development, that there would be a soft groundbreaking on October the 24th. I was up with the Alzheimer's folks. I think they're going to cancel that, and they're going to go with the hard groundbreaking in January, the real McCoy at that time. And they're just not going to have two groundbreakers, they're going to have a meaningful groundbreaking when they're going forward with the project.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, fellas. 132 is, I plead it, misronomous, please set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings, Centennial Hills Architectural Review Committee, and dangerous buildings for nuisance litter abatements. Thank you. This is the time for citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come up, give us your name, and let's put the three-minute timer on. Thank you.
Dorothy Barnes, Las Vegas resident. I'm still here complaining about these programs. They use military intelligence software to implement. I've asked them, I demanded in the last meeting that they remove my name from all such programs that support illegal drug dealing and transfer, countries that are bringing illegal drugs into this area, those type of programs where they are allowed to use disabled people like myself to sponsor and stifle their program. I do not care to sponsor them. They are using me. Every day my name stays on this program. I'm used to support something that's threatening my life, my very survival. And if that's going on in Las Vegas, I could go to another city. If my name is still on that program, I'll have the same problem in another city because I came from a city where they was having it in Shreveport, Louisiana. I lived in Washington, DC over two years, the nation's capital. I yet had a problem with them. Many times I went before the mayor of Washington, DC and Louisiana and went before the police department, asking them to correct this problem. It's not a mistake when they continue it. They're doing it, they're greedy. They're doing it, they're killing me to live off me. They like a pack of wild animals tearing at a piece of meat. That's what I'm looking at them. I told the police, these people are not looking like human beings to me because a human being doesn't hurt another human being when they actually realize it was a mistake. We didn't mean to do this. It's continuing. I had to postpone major surgery to try to deal with these people because I don't want to have to come out of the hospital sick, and the doctor said it'd be six weeks before you'll be able to do much. I don't want to have to work with these people. They're not my children. Mental health, what are they doing on Ellis Air Force Base? Are they out there trying to remove my name by getting these people to tell the truth? Because the lies is what's keeping me in there with them. Every lie they tell puts me under their management of these crazy folks that sponsoring these programs. It's senseless, it's out of control. I need to know who's responsible for these people and who's responsible for getting my name off their program. They can't let me out here and show me the area where they're planning, because I know there's an area out there on Ellis Air Force Base where they're planning me into this type of thing without my permission. They do not have my permission. They will never get my permission. They've hurt me, they slandered me, they've killed people in my family, they've hurt my children and grandchildren. What do I owe these crazy folks that want to live off me? God bless America. Who else is going to be hurt like this? It's at my door today, but whose door is it going to be at next? It's senseless. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
I'll be succinct. Tom McGowan, Las Vegas resident. About a year ago, thereabouts, this city went on public record and declared itself to be the sister city of New Orleans, Louisiana. That's commendable. There was even something done about housing assistance for some of the evacuees, survivors of Katrina. My understanding is that that might have been reimbursed to the city by perhaps federal grants of some kind. So it was a net cost to the city. I introduced a proposal here called Project NOLA, N-O-L-A, which means New Orleans, Louisiana, and it was for the recovery of up to 250,000 survivors of Katrina to be able to return to New Orleans, not as third-rate, underclass, poverty-stricken, socially-dependent wards, but as trained, experienced, fully self-esteem, attributable, responsible, constructive citizens to their home. And the important thing is, I brought up at the time, was not only here, but in general conversation, a city is not structures. A city is the people, and the city of New Orleans is the people of New Orleans. If they're not there, I don't care what you build there, it's not New Orleans. And what's going on here in this city while you're all very seriously occupied, I'm sure, well-intended with what you're attempting to do, but if you look at the larger perspective, where are the people? I asked earlier, when are the occupants going to be here? Because you're involved in turning the pond over. You're upgrading socioeconomically, so to speak, but not everybody's going with it. Teachers, for example. They know a little better, I think. Some of them do. And they don't see anything else here that really attracts them. You've got a city just to the north of here, North Las Vegas. Michael Montandon and his council brought up a very interesting topic very recently, and it looked a lot provocative, non-binding, of course, but it has to do with the phasing out, I guess, or the limiting of adult businesses. Some people think, gee, that's not a good idea, but others think maybe it is a good idea because this is no longer playland. This is a community. 1.2, 1.8 million people, more coming every day. Two-minute limit, okay, fine. You cannot read the Pledge of Allegiance in two minutes. That's obvious. So I'll say this to you. New Orleans is going to be revived on its own ashes like the Phoenix, and that's what's taking place right here in Las Vegas, whether you realize it or not. How you do this and whether you include the public and the people in Las Vegas will tell you whether what you're building is Las Vegas or something foreign. And take my advice, pay attention to it very soon and without relent. I'm talking about all of you, not just one in particular, every single one of you, and your bureaucracy. Okay? You're about to lose this city. If you lose its people, it's over.
Next, please.
That's from a member on the council. Stephen "Captain Truth" Dempsey, candidate for state assembly, District 14. I would like to confirm for the record that Tom was given two minutes. After you told him or instructed the clerk to give him three, he was given two. It was definitely two. I don't know if your watch was fast.
It was three minutes. It was three minutes. You have three minutes, too.
Okay. Yeah, I have the same, too. Okay. I'd like to apologize for not being here last week. I had prior commitment, and I know it was a pretty interesting meeting. I've got it on film, and I'll be responding to that in the days ahead. But I did have a question today. It has to do with, for each of you, will each one of you or any of you be brave enough to stand up against this form of governmental tyranny? You have to ask yourself, where do you draw the line? And when do you get involved? You can be mistaken. Perhaps I was mistaken. Perhaps my watch is slow. I thought it was two minutes. I'd have bet that it was, but I'd have been wrong before. A friend of mine that I respect very much, Michael Savage, has a show on K-DON, and I know where he draws the line. That's the quote for today. It was one day last week. He says, liberals are fascists. They try to force you to adopt their distorted view of reality. I'd like to repeat that, just so nobody gets confused. Liberalist, liberalists are fascists. They try to force you to adopt their distorted view of reality. And of course, we know who I'm making reference to there. It's in your materials. Here's a picture of him. He's testifying in district court the other day. It's you, Big O. Testifying before Judge Denton. Well, he didn't buy it. I haven't read the whole article, I haven't seen what was discussed at the last meeting. But I'd like to give you my initial take between the lines of what I read in this newspaper article. When our illustrious mayor stepped into federal district court, swore under oath that this court should not take any action, between the lines, he said, my friends have beaten some people up, they've robbed some people, they've hospitalized some people, and they've even murdered a few, but the political contributions are so good, Judge Denton, let them stay open. That's what he said. And that's what makes me come down here today, Big O, to ask for your resignation or demand your resignation, or that you voluntarily enter a substance abuse clinic of some kind so you can get back in touch with reality, because you're out of touch with reality. Nobody on this council wanted you to do that. You took it upon yourself because of the envelope, because of the political payoff? They all want to know, or they all should want to know.
Okay, you've had your time.
They all took their oath, and they all want to know. Maybe somebody will step forward and involuntarily commit you, Mayor Goodman.
You had three minutes.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. It's always good having you down here. Anybody else want to be heard? All right, thank you, everybody. The meeting's adjourned.